We'll call this regular meeting of San Marcos City Council to order. Today is Tuesday, April 2nd, the year is 2024, and the time is 6:00 P. M. Mr. Vino, would you please call the roll?
Yes, Mr. Prather, Mr. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Garza.
Here.
Mayor Houston.
Here.
Mr. Gonzalez.
Here.
Mr. Gleason.
Here.
And Mr. Mendoza.
Here.
We are all present.
Okay, and our invocation this evening will be given by Deacon Robert Gutierrez from St. John's Church.
Let us bow our heads. As we gather this evening to give thanks to our Heavenly Father for our continued blessings, we must acknowledge that it is our solemn responsibility to adhere to His commandments, to love Him with all our heart, mind, and soul, and to love our neighbor as Himself. As Christians, we are held to a higher degree of compassion, forgiveness, understanding, and love. So it is with this thought that we should ask our Lord's assistance when making decisions that affect our relationship with Him and our neighbors. So let us pray for all our city employees, especially for our elected officials. May they ask for the wisdom and the courage to make the right decisions based on a better quality of life for all citizens, and may the blessing of Almighty God, the Father, the Son, the Holy Spirit descend upon you and stay with you forever. Amen.
Amen. All right, now it is time for the pledges of allegiance, United States and Texas.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, a sincere republic for which ascends one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Honor the Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to the seed of Texas, one state under God, one indivisible.
Thank you. And we have our citizen comment time period next. City Council hears citizens' comments at work sessions, workshops, and regular meetings. Those wishing to speak, there is a sign-up process. If you wish to speak online, you will need to email, I'm sorry, sign up prior to noon. A call-in number and link are provided. To speak in person, you may sign up, or if you get here before 5:45, you can sign up at City Hall. Speakers may speak once during the citizen comment time period and may not yield time to others. If you speak now about a public hearing topic on tonight's agenda, I ask that you not repeat exactly the same comments again during the public hearing on the same topic. You have three minutes to speak when you state your name. A timer is displayed on the screen, and you'll start in the green. When the timer shows only yellow, that means you have less than 20 seconds. When the timer is red, your time to speak is up and a bell will ring. The mayor and council will endeavor to ensure that meetings are conducted in a courteous manner and an atmosphere free of defamation, intimidation, personal insults, profanity, or threats of violence. We have a number of people who are here to speak, so I'm going to call out several names. Those of you who are in person, if you could go ahead and line up over here behind the podium, will be helpful. We have Julian Escobedo will be first. Julian here. And Amanda Smith would be second. Is Amanda here? Okay. And then we have Linda Coker, Isla Reese, and Darla Munoz, who will be remotely after that. If you'll step up to the podium after you state your name, your time will start.
I believe I am second. Is the person in front of me here?
Julian Julian Escobedo, I'm not seeing, so I think, I'll check again before we finish, but it looks like you get to be first. Thank you for the consideration.
Thank you. I'm Amanda Smith. I'm a resident here in the city of San Marcos, and I'm here to urge the city council to pass a critically important resolution that is necessary to uphold the values of human rights and dignity that are held by the residents of this city. Over the last six months, we have been forced to watch the world's first livestreamed genocide. And on top of suffering the horrors of having to watch image after image of women and children being slaughtered for a crime they didn't commit, we have been slapped in the face by our state and federal governments when they have provided political support for this genocide that is contrary to our values, and when they have used our hard-earned money to financially support it. It is not acceptable that the state government, that Governor Abbott, that the federal government, that President Joe Biden, is allowed to provide political support for the ongoing genocide in Gaza, to use our hard-earned tax money to financially support it, while here in the city of San Marcos, we have teachers that are not being paid fairly for their critically important work, first responders, while we have students who are living hand-to-mouth, forced to take out an incredible amount of student loans that will financially disadvantage them for the rest of their lives, while at the same time their hard-earned tax money is used to support a genocide in a foreign nation. It is your responsibility as our local representatives to send the message to the state and federal governments that they do not have our permission as the residents of the city of San Marcos to commit these crimes, to use our money to fund these crimes in our name. You must pass a ceasefire resolution here in this city now, or you have failed in your duty as our representatives. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Linda Coker, who is joining us remotely. Is she on, Mr. Vino?
Yeah, I'm on.
Okay. Proceed.
Linda Coker, San Marcos, Texas. Sorry, I'm not there in person. Okay, there was a time when speaking before city council was an exercise in polite civil discourse. People would be in the lobby mingling, talking, almost a cocktail party atmosphere, but when it was time to give your citizen comments, people went in, lined up, and had three minutes of comments disagreeing with possibly the last person they hugged, then back out to the lobby where conversation started and camaraderie began again, at least until everyone was run out because of the noise. I do not understand why that ended. As for myself, I admire the heck out of anyone that shows up to voice an opinion of any kind. I, for one, am always nervous as I'll get out during those three minutes that go so fast and so slow at the same time. Standing up here or sitting here, knowing each word and gestures being judged is a very scary thing. But now we have new scary things to worry about. Lately, there's the threat of retaliation, the pressure of social media, and intimidation coming from who knows where. The irony is that it is with people you possibly agree with on 98% of other issues, but one false step and bam, the world can turn upside down. And disagreement isn't just disagreement, it has become a vitriol barrage that is hard to comprehend. My ask for this slow, fast, three-minute unfold, one, I am asking that other civic-minded citizens remember that disagreeing is part of the process. Not one of us is completely right or completely wrong. Matters of the government are never that simple. The fact that we stand here putting our heart on our sleeves should be admired and supported. We have the honor of participating in a process that so many in this world would literally die for. My second ask is that you mayor and city council try a little harder to hold people to standards of civil discourse, that when words become threatening or insulting, they be stopped. By not doing this, by allowing intimidation to occur, there is the risk that walking up here and the anxiety of voicing an opinion is to great apparel. In other words, the fear of not being able to exercise my First Amendment rights. I know it is a cliche, but there really is nothing wrong with agreeing to disagree. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Isla Reese, who's joining us remotely.
Hi there, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening, my name is Isla Reese. I am on the executive leadership for the tenants advocacy group, and I'm here today to voice my opposition towards the Lindsay North Street Student Housing Project. And as you hear each agenda item related to its development, I urge you to consider an opposing perspective of rent-by-the-bed student housing. As a Texas State alum by myself, my experience from leasing from rent-by-the-bed complexes have been anything but typical. And if you were to ask any current resident of student housing, they would likely share tales of foundational issues, mold, pest infestations, water problems, and various other maintenance issues that complexes are unwilling to address. And while some may argue that these problems aren't exclusive to student housing, but also exist in residential housing, I don't disagree with that. But in this case, my main concern is halting any additional initiatives that might worsen gentrification in the San Marcos area, particularly by constructing more student apartments without resolving the existing issues within these current complexes. Additionally, I am against the displacement of current residents in a neighborhood that already provides affordable housing. Rent-by-the-bed student housing operates in a manner that exploits its tenants, and this is evident even in the leasing process. According to the Texas Apartment Association Student Housing Sample Lease, the as-is clause stipulates that tenants are not entitled to view the actual unit they will occupy. Instead, they will sign a contract after seeing a pristine model adorned with new furniture and immaculate cleanliness that is untouched by previous occupants. Upon moving into an actual unit, if tenants encounter broken furniture, damaged fixtures, or remnants of prior occupant's dirtiness, they lack contractual recourse. Instead, they must meticulously document every issue within 40 hours of moving in or risk being held financially responsible for these damages. This is one of the many terms within student housing contracts that are predatory and manipulative. But let me end this off by saying that housing is a human right. Alternatives that we would like to suggest include proposing a five-year moratorium on rent-by-the-bed student housing. This allows us to collaborate on addressing the unmet needs in our community. We should also restart the city subcommittee on student housing to ensure that renters have a say on these projects. Additionally, implementing a variety of housing options for low-income residents and an increasing investment code enforcement are worthy considerations. Thank you for allowing me to speak tonight.
Our next speaker is Darla Munoz, but before she starts, she'll be followed by Elizabeth Bishop online. Then we have Said Moshe Faken, I'm sorry, I'll do better next time. And then be Maxville Baker and Clay Chip Smith. Oh, and Darla is here. Nice to see you. Okay, you're next.
I'm Darla Munoz. We have a huge problem in this town right now. We have developers taking over our downtown and putting up tall, ugly buildings, and now we have Texas State buying up property and pushing out non-student residents while reducing our tax rolls. And isn't it sad that San Markins are now labeled non-students in our own town where we pay taxes? So I ask you, members of city council, what are you going to do about it? Are you going to fight for the preservation of the city of San Marcos or continue to allow the university to take over our spaces? I have been speaking with some longtime residents of San Marcos, and I have several quotes I'd like to read to you. I'm just the messenger. The college runs this town. Whatever the university wants, they get. The college controls the city council. The building will stop when the university says. The city council are all lackeys for the university. I mean, this is what people are saying around town. You need to think carefully before you cast your votes. Where do your loyalties lie? Who are you here to serve? Texas State or the residents of San Marcos, both permanent and temporary? You know the university has plenty of money to redevelop dorms up on campus. It's time to rock the boat. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Elizabeth Bishop, joining us online.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you very much. Thank you for granting me this opportunity to speak. My name is Elizabeth Bishop. I've lived in San Marcos for more than 15 years. It's my honor to teach at Texas State University, and I come to speak to you for two purposes. The first is in response to the prayer which opened our conversation this evening. This was a Christian prayer which referred to a Christian community. One of the affairs which is very much on my mind is that I am a historian, and the third oldest Christian church, which is the church that was standing in Gaza, has been destroyed. I think that this is a matter of importance to all members of a faith community wherever they may be. The second reason for which I bring myself before you this evening to speak is because of my concern for this university here where I teach Arab history, as well as the four universities which stood in Gaza, one of which has been completely destroyed. I hear by journalists' accounts, this has not been verified by my professional association. I also read journalists' accounts of assassination of university professors, deans, and presidents in Gaza. Just as the loss of any individual member of a community is important to the community as a whole, I bring these affairs before us with the understanding that San Marcos is concerned for the well-being of the university, but by extension, the well-being of universities elsewhere. I understand that I may not yield my time, but again, I thank you for making this testimony possible.
Said, it's next.
Members of city council, mayor, I'm talking on behalf of a ceasefire resolution.
Your name, please, sir. Your name, please, sir.
I'm Said Moshe Fagigan.
Thank you.
So more than 30,000 civilians are killed in Gaza in a most brutal way. 20,000 of them are women and children, and 7,000 of civilians are just missing under the rubble. 1.9 million of Palestinians are displaced. It is 85% of the whole population. What is going on in Gaza is the annihilation of the whole population. This is a genocide. While Israel is mandated by International Court of Justice to take immediate and effective measure to enable the permission of urgent need basics, basic service, and humanitarian aid to Gaza, shows its complicity by blocking the human aids. And just yesterday, they strike the work-centered kitchen aid workers and killed all of them, including an American citizen. So on March 25th, UN Security Council ordered an immediate ceasefire. It's not happening. The hospitals, the civilians are targeted. So members of the city council, while residents of San Marcos, we are funding this genocide with our tax money without our consent, what's your response? What do you want to do about it? Do you want to be silent and just pretend that it doesn't happen, and it's not our money that funds it? It's not our bombs that are killing the innocent people in Palestine, or you want to stand up and speak up? What do you want to say in the judgment day to the Lord about your action today in this era? I want that you have the courage to stand up for the justice and for the truth and do what is right to do, and don't concern about the politicians and their dirty games. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Maxville Baker, who joins us online.
Hello. Yes, I am here to speak today about, y'all had in the draft agenda that the San Marcos Civics Club received, there was an item about the bylaws for boards and commissions. We see that that did not make this actual meeting, but I do see that you're still appointing members to boards and commissions. The San Marcos Civics Club has tried to work with the city through open records requests and email communication regarding the sort of disjointed nature of a lot of the information available about our boards and commissions, things such as where the vesting ordinances are located, the rules and powers and responsibilities of those boards and commissions, as well as basic information about, you know, for instance, which neighborhood commissioner is my commissioner? What zone is my neighborhood in? Those maps and things are difficult to find through the city's website. So we have reached out to the city and sincerely hope to maybe have a meeting with somebody. This is a formal request for that, to sit down and talk through how that information could be more readily accessible so that all that stuff isn't in a million different places. For instance, it was only the Animal Services Advisory Board that had not only the meeting time, but also the location in the initial description that you find when you go and search the city's website for information about boards and commissions. All of the other ones, you effectively have to open an agenda and look at the top of that, and sometimes those meeting dates and times can change. So, you know, our goal as the San Marcos Civics Club is to bring awareness, access, and transparency to issues like our boards and commissions, to further empower our neighbors to engage with those different organizations and neighbors about those specific issues. Very briefly, I want to talk about the Lindsay Street project. I actually used to live in the Balconist Apartments that was, at the time, kind of suspected to be on the university's radar to buy up and turn into a student complex. Then we saw that get developed as The Point, which we just saw the university purchase for student apartment, student housing complex. I don't think it's very off-base for community members to be concerned that this new development on Lindsay Street will take a similar path. And as far as our conversations with Shannon Mattingly, a former city planner and one of the, you know, people on this development, there's no way for us to really, through conditional use permit or other legal devices, ensure that that sale doesn't happen. And so I'm not, I think it's fair to have that concern that whatever is built there as a benefit to the tax base might not be a definite benefit. I think through open records requests, the public might find it interesting between communications between the city, the president of the university, and the developer to find out what's really going on. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clay Chip Smith. Is Clay Chip Smith here? Okay, we'll go back around, and we had Alcha. Okay, then we will go to Lisa Marie Capaletta, who joins us remotely. And after that will be Leann Staff, followed by Ayman Ashan, Shelley Akry, Paige Michelle, Zainab Abdul-Rahim, sorry, Yancy Arivalo, and Ellie Doyle. Next be Ms. Capaletta.
Hey, good evening, y'all. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capaletta, and, you know, one thing I want to explain to you guys is that it's very important how you conduct yourself ethically in terms of your business and political dealings. If you vote to flood out a neighborhood, can you call yourself a leader? If you change the rules to serve the needs of your campaign donors who slip you cash donations, are you virtuous? If you go against 6,000 residents who participated in citywide initiatives for years for the COMP Plan, the Historical Resources Survey, neighborhood plans, and Code SMTX, are you serving your constituents? Now I want to talk about the trauma and the impact of public safety with flooding. It is empirically proven here in San Marcos that engineers are wrong when they claim that something will not flood. Flooding causes water damage, mold, and electrical hazards. Flooding causes respiratory issues as well as infections. By knowingly supporting a development, one is essentially disregarding the safety and human health. Flooding has long-term economic impacts and consequences for a neighborhood, and Blanco Gardens and the crime wave is an exemplar case study. Properties that are repeatedly flooded lose value over time, and it is difficult for residents to sell or rent their homes. Additionally, this impacts the tax base for a city, and supporting such developments will flood out a neighborhood as a violation of the principles of social responsibility. Voting for developments that harm others is not only selfish, but it goes against the basic tenets of our ethical behavior. It is our moral obligation to boycott businesses and unseat elected officials who actively lobby for flooding. Now I want to talk about the COVID money that taxpayers paid for and my concerns of equity. There has been very little report out at the county and the city levels, and many businesses, part of a special class, were awarded money when others, who were small businesses, were not aware of this money. Additionally, a lot of us are concerned when we look at the Paycheck Protection Act established by the Small Business Administration and dispersed by the Department of Treasury, as well as the Greater Partnership San Marcos, who awarded companies like Boss Tech Venture over $10,000. Behind me, you can see some screen captures. This one is very concerning because you have over $174,000, and there were 35 employees awarded from Frost Bank, and it was wiped clean. The second screen capture, you can see suddenly the employee count went up to 41, and $175,000 was forgiven, when smaller businesses were not awarded the same amount of equity. And this is one of the individuals who has been coming up here, and it begs the question, what are the financial interests and the ties to the Greater Partnership San Marcos and the chamber when we talk about developments that impact human safety? Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
Our next speaker is Leann Staff, who joins us online. Leann Staff, are you there?
Yes, hello. Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, fellow citizens and city council. I don't want to be super repetitive, but I just wanted to emphasize the importance of San Marcos joining, the number of other cities across the nation and the world to support a ceasefire now. There's no good reason not to or justify being complacent or silent in this atrocious genocide. With the numbers of innocent civilians being murdered growing daily, this is becoming more and more urgent by the minute and the second. This is clearly not an act of self-defense, and anyone who claims it to be so is terribly wrong or misinformed. I can say, as a Jewish American, I have been fed propaganda growing up in Sunday School and a number of reasons to support the state of Israel, but I was too young to understand the reality of the situation, and I'm still learning as I speak. The Israeli government has been so malicious in attacking innocent people, simply just trying to get their basic needs met, and are unable to do so while being pushed out of their homes and life. The excuse of getting hostages returned does not even make sense as they have killed their own Israeli people. I don't think it's right that the citizens of San Marcos are even knowingly using their tax dollars to support these war crimes and even building weapons in our own town. And this needs to stop immediately, ceasefire.
Our next speaker is Ayman Ashan, and if each of you will be sure that you state your name at the beginning of your three minutes.
Hello, thank you for letting me speak. My name is Ayman, as if like at the end of a prayer, Ayman. Today I wanted to talk about the supporting a ceasefire resolution I will be reading from an Instagram post by the Jewish Voice for Peace. They say, "Let us be clear, the atrocities committed by the Israeli military in Al-Shifa Hospital are the direct result of the US government's continued support. Today, the Israeli military ended its two-week siege on Gaza City's Al-Shifa Medical Complex, the largest hospital in all of Palestine, leaving it in absolute ruins. The military left destruction in its wake, murdering over 400 people, executing civilians, kidnapping, and torturing hundreds of medical workers and patients, and destroying what remains of the hospital. Many of the Palestinians killed by the Israeli military were tied up and run over by Israeli bulldozers, unable to defend themselves. Israeli soldiers also executed Palestinian prisoners while they were handcuffed." Israeli soldiers also executed Palestinian prisoners while they were handcuffed, some with their families forced to watch. Hundreds of Palestinian bodies were left discarded around the complex, unburied. The Israeli military carries out these atrocities against Palestinians because, because it is protected by the U.S. government with full backing from the U.S., using our tax dollars, may I add. The Israeli government is brutally and forcibly imposing the goal of Zionism, creating a Jewish ethno-state on the premise of maximum land with minimum Palestinians, which requires the ethnic cleansing of Palestinians from their land. These atrocities are not limited to Al-Shifa. Last night, the Israeli military attacked Al-Aqsa Hospital, killing at least four people. The Israeli military is able to destroy the majority of all healthcare in Gaza. Why are we destroying healthcare? Why are they destroying healthcare in Gaza? Due to the impunity the U.S., why are we granting them impunity? While the Israeli military was attacking Al-Shifa, the Biden administration approved more weapons to Israel. Mass-organized violence has been the Israel's state tactics since 1948, over 75 years ago, when 750,000 Palestinians were ethnically cleansed during the Nakba, using the very same tactics we saw at Al-Shifa Hospital. They say, "We unite against state-sponsored killing and ethnic cleansing. We demand an end to the U.S.' continual funding of atrocities. As the genocide against Palestinians escalates, it is critical that we stand firmly in our anti-Zionism and oppose the ongoing Nakba perpetuated by the Israeli state. I ask that the San Marcos City Council choose to struggle for justice over silence and complicity." Additionally, I just wanted to reiterate that I read this from the Jewish Voice for Peace's Instagram. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Shelley Akri, to be followed by Paige Michelle, Zainah Abdul-Rahim, Yancy Aravalo, and Eli Doyle. If y'all could line up, if you're not already out here. Shelley Akri.
Thank you for having me. My name is Shelley Akri. I'm a resident of San Marcos, Texas. I'm also a healthcare worker, and I'm here today to speak to you guys. I ask that you please listen to my words, please sit with them, and just allow yourself to process what I have to say. So, as a healthcare worker, I, I implore you guys to please ask for a permanent and immediate ceasefire in Gaza. What's happening currently is completely atrocious. For the last six months, I've been witnessing not only what's happening to the citizens, but what's happening to the healthcare workers, and it's, it absolutely guts me. As someone who was born and raised in Texas, I don't know if you guys are from Texas, but if you've either been here for a long time, or, or are from here, I would think you would imagine and be able to understand, if you had a farm you'd inherited from your family, who had been, had been in your family for generations, and then immigrants come and kill your neighbors, kill your crops, kill your animals, kill part of your family, and then tell you that you have to go live in a tent elsewhere, and they're going to take your land and your home, would you be okay with that? I don't think so. I don't think so. I wouldn't be. I wouldn't be. And that's what happened in 1948. Almost a million people were displaced into what is now Gaza. So, we can see how that's playing out past that. On top of that, billions of our tax dollars are being sent over to Israel to support this war, and I feel that that should be distributed among our community in different ways. We shouldn't be sending our tax dollars to support a foreign entity, when in fact, someone who's a healthcare worker, I can't even contract with the state of Texas if I choose to boycott Israel. Essentially, I can't stand on my moral foundation and still work for our community in the state of Texas to help be a support for our community. Now, I don't really know what you call that, but to me, that feels treasonous. And on top of that, I feel like there's, there's just an aura, a sentiment, to where people feel like they can't speak out about this, and I want you to just sit with that. If you feel like your voice is being held back, just think about that. Think about that, because you should be able to speak. And I implore you guys for a ceasefire now, because this famine is not something that has happened through natural disaster. This is completely man-made, and if they can get all kinds of giant equipment in within the recent days to build a port for Gaza and transport that all the way through, there's absolutely no reason they can't transport those trucks with aid in through and get them in as well.
And your time is up, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
Our next speaker is Paige Michelle. Our next speaker is Paige Michelle. She's in orange behind you. You're, you're, we're almost there.
Good afternoon, mayor and council members. My name is Paige Michelle. I actually signed up online to speak during the public hearing, and while not the citizen comment, but I will use this moment to let you know that I'm here to register support for the Lindsay and North Street development project for several key reasons that I will expand upon later during the hearing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Zainah Abdul-Rahim.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Thank you. So, my name is Zainah Abdul-Rahim. I wanted to start off by saying hello, or Salaam alaikum, which in Arabic means peace be upon you. I have a feeling a few, a few people that have come up here have already voiced that. This is a core part of the Muslim, the Arab communities that exist around the world, that exist in Palestine, and importantly, in this context, exist in the San Marcos community. We are here to represent students, we're here to represent Arabs, Muslims, people from all different walks of life, to say that we want to advocate for peace, we want to advocate for something that we haven't been able to see in the state of Texas, and we believe that there's no better place to start than the city of San Marcos. Now, I started off with, you know, a little basic speech, but I'm sure you all are tired of hearing the same things over and over again. I would like to say that my connection to San Marcos started off similar to most, most others that you'll find walking up and down the streets of LBJ on a Saturday night. As a student of Texas State University, this university and its community is diverse, and thus, the San Marcos community demands attention for the international causes and issues that affect it. When I served as a citizen diplomat to Japan in 2023, I did my best to display our country's commitment to the rights we claim to uphold, democracy, liberty, and justice for all. When I travel to Morocco this summer, again, as a citizen diplomat, I hope to have faith in that what I am doing is honest to the character of myself and to the character of my country. So, please, speak for this people of San Marcos and say, "No more to what's going on in Gaza, no more to what's going on around the world, no more to what's going on in Gaza because of our country. Say no to antisemitism, say no to Islamophobia, say no to racism, and say yes to peace. Introduce and pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you, and Salaam alaikum."
Our next speaker is Yancy Aravalo.
Hi. Hello. My name is Yancy Aravalo, and I am a resident of San Marcos. I am also a member of the Palestine Solidarity here in San Marcos, Texas, and I am here in support of a ceasefire resolution for Palestine. I had the opportunity to meet with Mayor Jane Hewson to discuss a ceasefire resolution. She seemed supportive, but worried that a ceasefire resolution would cause division in our community. She wasn't sure what little old San Marcos could contribute to the world by passing a ceasefire resolution in support of Palestine, to place us on the national map with 70 other cities in the United States who are in support of Palestine and against genocide. She wasn't sure how relevant we are to the situation. But we all know, as you've been hearing, that the U.S. supplies Israel with $3.8 billion in taxpayer money, and it's even more relevant, because we all know that Governor Greg Abbott actively supports Israel and the Israeli army. In Texas, $298 million in taxpayer money funds Israel's weapons. Cities in Texas should be actively and vocally opposed to Abbott on this. You are turning a blind eye to the ongoing humanitarian crisis known as Israel's occupation and displacement of Palestine and its people since 1948, a blind eye to the killing of children, women, men, elders, entire families. It's so easy to dismiss this issue because it's, because it is happening over there, far from home. But what are we, as a society, as individuals, doing to put a stop to genocide? I'm here standing up, speaking, asking you to support a ceasefire resolution. What are you doing? And by the way, Jane, if you don't want to sit up there and listen to people saying the same thing over and over during the three-minute comment that they are allowed, if they sign up, then I suggest you just quit, or just pass a ceasefire resolution. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Ellie Doyle.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes.
My name is Eli Doyle.
Sorry.
It's okay. I had something planned, but I think one of the things that I'm thinking about is, if we feel like we're getting tired, if you're hearing people talk about a ceasefire resolution and that feeling repetitive, imagine the repetitive sounds of screams, and bombs, and cries from your babies that are starving and dying, because us, here in San Marcos, are sending about $941,000 of our taxes directly to Israel to commit these atrocities. That amount of money, and that's being calculated by the U.S. Campaign for Palestinian Rights through just open and available tax records, that amount of money could instead be used to help 111 households with public housing for a year, could help 327 children receiving free-year loan-costed healthcare in our community, could employ 10 elementary school teachers, 2,680 households with solar electricity, so that we're not contributing even further to climate collapse, or 24 students, Texas State residents, with their loan debt. That could get canceled. So, if you think that we're not directly involved, we absolutely are. Our hard-earned money is killing people, and I urge you, please, to support an immediate, permanent, and sustained ceasefire resolution here in our town. It's essential for our humanity. Thank you.
I'm going to go back around to those who were not here earlier, and that was Julian Escobedo is a person here, a Chip Clay Smith, and Alcha, who I believe would have been with Smith. Okay, then that concludes the citizen comment portion of our program, and we will go on to the consent agenda. Council, I need to poll two, five, and six. Is there anything else? Two, five, and six, I think. Yes.
Mayor would like to make a motion to approve all items besides two, five, and six.
Mr. Prather's making a motion to approve one, three, four, and seven, and we have a second by Mr. Gleason. Mr. Vino, let's vote.
Would you like to use a voting system, mayor?
Oh, we're using buttons tonight, yay!
I'm voting yes on everything but three.
On three, okay. And Mr. Gonzalez is absent from the vote.
The motion passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Garza voting no on number three.
Okay. And as we generally do, we will address the polled items after our public hearings, so we will move next to item eight.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-15, approving an amendment to the preferred scenario map of the city's comprehensive plan to change the designation for approximately 1.139 acres of land generally located southwest of intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street from existing neighborhood to high intensity downtown, including procedural provisions and declared effective date, and consider approval of ordinance 2024-15 on the first of two readings.
Presentation by...
Mayor, before we get into the presentation...
Oh, yes, go ahead.
...a brief comment. Our last meeting, I abstained from this discussion item or this public hearing out of an overabundance of caution due to my wife's employment at Texas State. Since then, I did a request for the San Marcos Ethics Commission to make a, a decision if this was a conflict of interest, and they did find it unanimously that it was not a conflict of interest. So, I will be weighing in on these next public hearings and voting on them.
Okay, thank you for that clarification and explanation.
Good evening, mayor and council. Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This request is part of a larger project for a proposed purpose-built student housing complex along Lindsay Street and Comanche and North Streets. The red line on this graphic indicates the entire project. This is the subject property for a request to build student housing, as well as a request for additional height, which are items 10 and 11 on the agenda. A zoning change request to Character District 5 Downtown, item number nine, is indicated on the map with a blue hatching. A portion of this land is within the downtown high-intensity area, and another portion that's in orange is currently an existing neighborhood on the comprehensive plan preferred scenario map. This first presentation focuses on that land highlighted in orange, under the blue hatching, an area where a preferred scenario amendment is required for the applicant's requested zoning district. Next slide. The subject property is just over one acre and is on the southwest corner of Lindsay and North Streets. There are three properties subject to this request with four structures existing on site. Next slide. The property is located within an existing neighborhood adjacent to the downtown high-intensity area on the current 2013 comprehensive plan map. While identified as an existing neighborhood, I do want to point out that the nearest single-family residential is west of Moore Street, and that this area, east of Moore Street, is mostly zoned for multifamily and mixed use. Next slide. Existing neighborhoods are areas identified primarily as residential, where they are expected to follow compatible growth patterns. The proposed change to reclassify this land to high-intensity, and specifically to expand the boundary of the downtown high-intensity zone, if approved, this site would then be expected to support compactness, pedestrian and bicycle accessibility, and call for public spaces for social interaction. We'll talk about zoning a lot more on the next item, so when considering this preferred scenario amendment, council should also consider the other potential zoning options, which could be allowed if this change were made, which includes everything except conventional or single-family zoning districts. Next slide. This area, while not located in a historic district, is the location of multiple historic structures. The city has adopted the Historic Resources Survey and regularly uses it to review development applications. The structure at 419 North Street is classified as a high-priority resource, and the structures at 409 and 413 Lindsay are classified as medium-priority resources. Due to these designations, if any current or future developer or owner wished to demolish the structures, they would be subject to the demolition delay ordinance, which we spoke about at our last meeting, but could result in a potential delay of demolition. That way, we would have the opportunity for the property owner and interested parties to find a way to potentially relocate those structures. The applicant has indicated a willingness to relocate the structures, and we will discuss that more under the conditional use permit, which is item number 10 on the agenda. Next slide. I went through these at our last meeting, but I will do it again for the audience. The San Marcos Development Code includes criteria for approval of a preferred scenario amendment, and we've included those in the presentation. Where you see the orange question mark, it means that the request is neither consistent nor inconsistent with that criteria. The green checkboxes are consistent, and we found that there were two criteria that were not applicable, but of the six criteria for approval, staff found the request consistent with three. Next slide. To summarize, staff found the development compatible with surrounding uses, a land use goal of the comprehensive plan, because this is an area of multifamily development adjacent to downtown. It's compatible with the adjacent Texas State University, which is a housing goal of the comprehensive plan, calling for student housing in appropriate locations. It's consistent with the criteria for orderly growth, because infrastructure exists in the area, and development would provide housing within walking distance to services, amenities, and the university. And it would be an improvement for public infrastructure, since the development will trigger at a minimum streetscape improvements. Next slide. Following the development code process, city council has now seen this item three times, and this evening, we will be holding a public hearing and seeking a vote on an ordinance to amend the preferred scenario map. Next slide. I'm going to take a moment just to address a couple of questions from the message board related to this item. First was a question about high-intensity, and I keep saying downtown high-intensity, and just wanted to note that the... and just wanted to note that the Development Code does not treat high-intensity areas different on the Preferred Scenario Map, but the twenty thirteen Comprehensive Plan named those high-intensity areas. So we have a high-intensity downtown, we have a high-intensity midtown, which is over on Thorpe Lane, and then there's one called the Triangle on the other side of I thirty-five. Second, the applicant is requesting high-intensity on the Preferred Scenario Map so they can request the Character District Five Downtown zoning. Of course, we're going to talk more about zoning on the next item, but I wanted to clarify that that's the reason for the request. Staff and the applicant discussed multiple zoning options, and Character District Five and Five Downtown are the only districts that can accommodate their proposed development, specifically the purpose-built student housing conditional use permit. And then finally, Mayor Houston, I got an answer to your question about the cause of the flooding in the parking garage...
Thank you.
...at the property next door, and it was, in fact, the issue with the pumps that caused that garage to flood. The water was not coming out as it was supposed to.
Right, it was below grade, and, okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am. So based on the criteria for approval in the Development Code, staff recommends approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission unanimously recommended denial, so a vote of six council members is needed to overturn the denial. If council votes to deny this request, I will be prepared to talk about how that affects the other items on the agenda, and there are a handful of maps, as well as the developer's concept plan in the presentation, if we need to reference them during the discussion. But at this time, I will conclude my presentation.
Okay, next will be our public hearing, and I will call out some names in order so y'all will be ready. Ian Roberts, Shannon Mattingly, Ed Terrio, Matt Kenyon, Joe Erdelak. Uh, those will be the first few. So Ian Roberts will be first. This is a public hearing. We need you to state your name and your address, and if you'll notice, it's the same timer as in citizen comment. You have three minutes. Uh, when you only have twenty seconds left, you'll be in the yellow.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, good evening, Mayor, councilors. Uh, my name is Ian Roberts. I live at one-one-one Peacock Trail that's in Butta, Texas. I work for Kimley Horn as a civil engineer here in our local San Marcos office. Uh, I'm just here to speak in support of the project and answer any questions that you may have as we go through the next four and nine items.
All right. Thank you for being here. Shannon Mattingly?
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Um, Shannon Mattingly with the Drenner Group, twenty-seven oh-five B Cave Road, Austin, Texas. Um, tonight, we have three representatives of this application. Um, Ed will be after me, and then Matt will finish up and talk a little bit more as he is the developer of the project. Um, as many of you know, I've been a planning director for almost thirty years, and I've worked in multiple cities across the state. Um, I know we've heard that quite a bit in these discussions, and, um, you know, over the years, as we've worked through comprehensive plans and, um, and new zoning ordinances and all of these different things, one of the things that we always talk about is where are things compatible? Do they meet the Comprehensive Plan? Do they meet the intent of everything that's around them? And I think that's really important, and, uh, Ms. Hernandez mentioned that in the last, um, discussion, is, you know, as we're going through the new Comprehensive Plan, um, you know, is there opportunity for these areas to, to continue to develop everything around this property, um, all the way over to Moore Street is currently zoned for multifamily? Um, there is no single-family residential homes that are not being used, um, on this side of Moore Street. And, um, you know, the developer has really, um, tried to listen to the planning commission, listened to the neighborhood, and get out into the community and talk to people as much as he can. Um, he's tried to find some concessions and tried to make sure that what he's doing on the west side of North Street is compatible and does fit more with what is happening around him and what's happening with the university. And I think that that's really important is, as we talk about compatibility and we talk about densities and, you know, making sure that West Street is more compatible with the neighborhood and more compatible with the multifamily that is already surrounding it, and also noting that that property is already able to go to multifamily, recognizing not as dense but also allowed to go to four stories at this time because that property is zoned MF twelve and MF eighteen. And I think that's one of the key things, is just making sure that we're not proposing projects that are encroaching into the neighborhood, but they are consistent with a denser multifamily. And by changing this site, um, to the west where we're asking for the Preferred Scenario Amendment, one of the things that, uh, Mr. Kenyon is going to talk about is the different concessions and, you know, dropping the height and doing a more traditional multifamily project and not doing a rent-by-the-bedroom project unless there's, you know, somebody who would like to move into one of them that says we'd rather have a rent-by-the-bedroom versus, um, the other. And so I think those are some really important things to note. Um, he's not looking at doing any more impervious cover than eighty percent. He's looking at doing four stories. He's looking at doing, um, you know, something more traditional that would fit better on that western side and keeping all of the other density to the east where it would be surrounded by projects that are already taller and already more dense and immediately across from the university. And as we've mentioned, you know, several times, that the university has bought the po-, or the vistas and sanctuary lofts, not the point. Just wanted to clarify that as well.
All right.
And thank you for your time, and we're available to answer questions.
Our next speaker is Ed Terrio.
My name is Ed Terrio, and my address is one-twenty Lakeview Circle in Lockhart. I'm here tonight representing Matt Kenyon on his Preferred Scenario Map Amendment and the associated applications that are before you tonight. From a good planning perspective, we're, we're in full agreement, uh, with the city staff on their unconditional recommendation for approval as presented tonight. The staff has recognized, as we have, that the request reflects adherence to good planning principles, such as the reduction of urban sprawl, the increased walkability to school, to work, shopping, and entertainment, the reduction of vehicular trips, the reduction of student housing occupancy that currently exist in the single-family neighborhoods, and the appropriate transitions of land uses. I've worked in the planning development field for thirty-seven years, and during this time, I, I have seldom seen a willingness on behalf of a developer to seek out and listen to the valid community project concerns, and then to propose concrete solutions that are enforceable and binding on the project. I think this is a rare opportunity for the City Council to help establish a good and appropriate project while communicating to the larger development community that this level of dialogue and commitment is the blueprint for successful development in San Marcos. Thank you for your time, and we're available to answer any questions that you may have.
Our next speaker is Matt Kenyon.
Good evening, Mayor, City Council. My name's Matthew Kenyon. I'm the developer on the project. I live at twelve hundred Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, seven-eight-seven-three-five. Um, I'm here tonight, I've, I've been to a lot of neighborhood meetings, um, I've been doing this project, I've been working on it for over five years. I've been to P and Z meetings, I've been to several council meetings, and I've heard a lot of, uh, I've heard a lot of concerns for these projects, um, you know, on the east side, on the west side, and I want to address some of these concerns. Like Shannon mentioned and Ed mentioned, um, I know that I'm a developer, but your concerns are important to me, and I've worked hard to try to figure out a solution for many of these. Not every development's perfect. I won't say this one's perfect, but I, I've been able to make a lot of concessions, and I want to run through those quickly with you. Um, first of all, the historical houses on the, on the west side, um, I know that those houses are historical to the people in San Marcos. Um, I was able to hire a real estate agent. We have an LOI from a developer to move all three of those houses. We also have a backup LOI in case that falls through to move those houses, and they'll be moved within the city of San Marcos. Um, I'd further like to say that if those houses, if, if all of that falls through, I know that I need to give six months to the historic district. I'm willing to give one year to the historic district in order to find a place for those houses. Um, I know that rent-by-the-bedroom has always been a problem, uh, in San Marcos. I don't know if it's a problem. It's always been a very hot topic down here. Um, I've conceded to not only doing rent-by-the-bedroom on the west side, but also on the east side. We can do rent-by-the-bedroom, we can do conventional leases. I'll leave it totally up to the students or the tenants. Um, if it's on the west side, it's multifamily, so the tenants over there can make their own decisions. Um, flooding, I heard last week that flooding was a very hot topic here. Um, I am not a flooding expert, but I have hired Ian Roberts from Kimley Horn that just spoke. He is an expert in this, and he's here to answer questions if you have any tonight. Um, I've heard the fact that there's no need for more student housing, that it's all full or that it's all empty, and there's just, that we just don't need anymore. Uh, a gentleman, Joe Erdeljack, who's going to speak next, has gone through and shopped each one of these properties. He's recorded the people that he talked to at each project. He's recorded the percentage that they're occupied now. He's recorded the percentage that they're occupied already for next year to prove that there is a need. I know that parking has been a very, very hot topic down here. Uh, last time I went to P and Z during COVID, someone asked me to do an independent parking study. I did that. Um, it cost several thousand dollars, and, oh my God, and, uh, it came up with...
And your time is up. Perhaps someone else can pick up the rest of what you have to say. Our next speaker is Joe Erdelak. I'm sorry, I know I didn't pronounce that right. My apologies.
You're not the first one, Mayor.
Okay.
Erdeljack, my name is Joe Erdeljack. Thank you all for having me. Um, as Mr. Kenyon has stated, I was hired by him to go over... Do y'all have a list?
Oh, did you give us your address?
Oh, sorry. Fifteen-two-zero-seven Origins Lane, Lakeway, Texas.
Thank you.
Um, I gave to the clerk, um...
Yes.
...a little spreadsheet. Do y'all have that handy?
We do, thank you.
Um, so like Mr. Kenyon has stated, I spoke to each and every, um, comparable, um, project on the... Sorry, I'm just going to shoot it. Um, so for the Aspire, if you see, the current occupancy is at ninety-seven point two percent, and that is what's current for right now. For next year, they're at seventy-four point four percent, and that's for the fall semester. For the Point San Marcos, they're at ninety-seven point eight percent, and for next year, they're at ninety-six percent already. It's five months early. Um, the local, ninety-nine percent current, ninety-three percent for next year. The Linden, ninety-eight point one percent today, eighty-seven point four percent next year. The Veal Lofts, ninety-nine point one percent as of today, um, for next year, eighty-five point nine percent. Um, for Chatham Street Flats, they're at ninety-seven percent for this year, sixty-seven percent for next year. And as you all know, the vistas and sanctuary lofts were already purchased and off... They're off, they're done. So you add, you add all the average, you're at ninety-seven, ninety-eight percent currently, and then for next year, they're already at seventy-nine percent for next year. So there's a serious need for housing, and thank you for that.
Okay, our next speakers in order will be Andrew Salem, Austin Greshell, Abby Riekelme, and Linda Coker, who's remote. Uh, next would be Andrew Salem.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Andrew Salem, and I'm a student here at Texas State University. Tonight, I'm here to talk to you all about the desperate need this city has for quality student housing in proximity to the Texas State University campus in the downtown San Marcos area. It is no secret that this area is the area that almost every student that goes to this university would like to live in. The area houses almost every academic resource the university has to offer, and is also home to an active nightlife scene, restaurants, coffee shops, and other local businesses that rely on the patronage of students to keep their lights on. That is why I find it baffling that there is not more quality student housing options offered in this proximity. This proximity is home to pretty much all student activity, and that's why I support this development, because this is a step in the right direction for enabling students to live within walking distance of basically everything they could not only need but want. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Austin Greshell.
That's Greshell, thank you.
And for everyone, we need your name and your address.
Hello, my name is Austin Greshell. I live at two-fifty Hummingbird Way in, uh, Martindale, Texas. Today, I'd like to talk to you about two basic issues, the lack of student housing in San Marcos regarding the supply and the lack of affordable student housing in San Marcos. In the world of economics, these go hand in hand, of course, by the simple law of supply and demand. As everyone knows, there's a great shortage in the supply of student housing in San Marcos, especially near s-, campus where students desire to live. Every project on the west side of I thirty-five is always near, a hundred percent occupied. So the demand is very high, and the supply is very low. This gives all the power, the market power, to the developers, allowing them to increase prices consistently each lease period. Because there is such a limited supply of housing and such a great demand for these few units, developers are able to increase the price every year, and students have no option but to pay for these increased prices. If the city allows developers like Mess, Mr. Kenyon, to build more student housing projects, this could have the opposite effect on the housing market. There would be too much supply and not enough demand, which is a great thing for students because developers will lose their market power, making it harder for developers to raise prices so the supply is greater than the demand. The opposite actually starts to happen, and developers end up competing for the limited supply of students available to lease for apartments, which usually means they have to throw in additional incentives, such as free parking or free months' rent, and reduce rental rates. Let me give you an example. If there are five new housing projects built in the next year, and the occupancy rate in each of these dropped to seventy or eighty percent, it would cause the developers to start making concessions to attract students away from their competitors. This would benefit the students by providing affordable housing and a better home life for many students. Further, it'd benefit the city by adding a dramatic increase in property taxes for the city and for the schools. The only one that would suffer in the instance is the developer. They still have to pay the same property tax whether their development is seventy percent or a hundred percent occupied. On top of the extra money the developers have to put in for concessions fighting over supply renters, for these reasons, it's hard to understand why the city is so concerned about additional student housing, is building more student housing in great locations around the university. It makes the city and residents happy, the students happy, and, of course, San Marcos residents by adding property tax. The only way, the only one that could potentially suffer by overbuilding student housing is the developer. Again, I'd like to stress, this is obviously great for students, as is affordable housing for students in San Marcos. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Abby Riekelme.
Riekelme, thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. My name is Abby Riekelme, and I live at one-oh-two Moss Cliff Circle here in San Marcos. When I was deciding where I wanted to go to college, the most important thing to me was having easily accessible resources on campus. That is why I chose Texas State. When I was a freshman, I quickly realized it was nearly impossible to access campus resources because of our current transportation system. The Texas State Shuttle is always packed to the brim and never the quick, easy, and accessible mode of transportation it's advertised to be to students. So when I was a sophomore, my top priorities while looking for housing was being close to campus and honestly never having to ride the shuttle again. To my surprise, there were very limited options, and that is why I'm here today. With limited housing close to campus, the Texas State Shuttle has become essential to most students. I know I speak for many when I say that having to ride the shuttle to campus makes students not want to go. This development would not only provide a more convenient way for students to get to campus, but more importantly, a safer way to, for students to enjoy the amazing resources that Texas State has to offer. Thank you.
Our next speaker will be Linda Coker online. Following her, I have East LaRice, Darla Manios, Jared Chamcia, uh, Clay Chip Smith, and Alcha Smith. Jared Chumsey, uh Clay Chip Smith, and Alcha Smith. Ms. Coker online.
Hello? Yes. Can you hear me?
Yes.
I'm Linda Coker. I live at one fifty-three Tallo Trail in San Marcos. I'm sorry that I cannot be there in person, but I am in Austin at the Texas Historical Commission's Real Places Conference. I am speaking in support of the Lindsay North Street Project. My knee-jerk reaction is to be against any student housing being built, especially by the bedroom. I am always concerned about the historic buildings, so I went and walked the area twice. And I must be honest, the area does not maintain any feeling of the neighborhood it once was. It is completely and irrevocably un- 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 versified. I know the ages of the houses, but there's no portion of historic significance left. And while some will disagree, old does not always equate historic. Here are some of the reasons that I feel this way. One, we need the tax resin- revenue. This year has been brutal for our taxes. Two, the area will not be impacted by the proposed building heights. The aspire apartments have already ruined that area because of the massive, the massiveness of that building. Three, building apartments that are not by the bedroom with marketing to university staff and faculty is greatly needed in that area. I think having two areas, multifamily, and by the bedroom makes sense. Four, the developer has offered concessions beyond that that planning normally ever sees, including the movie, moving and saving of the houses. And a willinge- willingness to wait a year to move them is just mind-boggling that he would offer that. There is little or no heritage integrity left in that neighborhood. That ship sailed long ago. I know that I run the risk of being ridicu- ridicu- ridiculed by supporting this project and I know that I am likely to be threatened for supporting this project, but I stand by my opinion that it is the right project for the area. I want to thank you for your time. I appreciate how difficult the decisions you must make are and the pressure that you receive the th- from the community must be unrelenting. Please vote in favor of the proposed changes required to move this project forward. Thank you.
Our next, next speaker is East LaRice.
Hi there. My name is Ayla and I live at fourteen fifteen Craddock Avenue. And I wanted to talk about a number of things. I think in particular, a lot of the comments that I'm hearing people are saying, it doesn't really add up to the information that we have. And that information is up to date as of fall twenty twenty-three. And everyone's talking about the complexes that are like right around campus, but no one's talking about the complexes when you go a bit farther out. There are forty-five rent-by-the-bed projects in San Marcos. And the further you go out, the more vacant they are, but nobody really seems to be talking about that. And so I know that we don't know a lot about rent-by-the-bed in general, and so that's why TAG has created a presentation that we are still working on because we're focusing on the leasing language, which if you look at the Texas Apartment Association and just read into like a few of the terms, it is extremely predatory towards its tenants, students, and non-students alike. And so I also wanted to tell a story about a neighborhood in Austin called Blackland that I learned about recently and it is very similar to this situation. So UT in the seventies was trying to expand its university into a low-income neighborhood. And the neighborhood was uh majority black residents, people of color. And they fought hard against UT to preserve the history of that neighborhood. And for years, they've been fighting and they actually won. They've been preserving the history as of today on that neighborhood and preventing the gentrification and displacement of its residents in that area. I really encourage you to look up the Blackland CDC in Austin and learn about that history because it is very similar to us. And the lesson that I took from that is preserving history is essential and that means not moving it, you know, not demolishing it, but keeping it and restoring that history for many of us to see uh decades la- later because it, it doesn't deserve to be moved or demolished. That would hurt the lesson it's trying to teach us. And that's really all I have to say, but I encourage you all to think about, I guess, this project a bit more seriously. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Darla Munoz.
Darla Munoz, eleven twenty-eight West Martin Luther King Drive. I'm not educated in urban planning or property tax laws, so, or law, so I just want to express my layman's interpretation of this request. I see it as a domino scenario happening here. The developer needs the PCA, PSA to make the area high intensity, first domino. To then rezone the land to CD five D, second domino. To then request the alternative compliance to raise the limit to seven stories, third domino. But if we work backwards, we see that he has stated he won't go beyond, uh, he won't go to seven stories on this side of North Street, so he doesn't need the alternative compliance. He also doesn't need to rezone to CD five D because he's not going to five stories. And they don't need all the other alliances that five D will have, which we will discuss in the next agenda item. So now as I see it, he doesn't actually need this first request for the PSA. I appreciate his concessions for this part of the project, but I'm concerned with how legally binding his verbal commitments are since the paperwork for the request has not actually changed. My concern is if you vote to approve, you are voting for his original request. So I hope that you can clarify this for us. A second domino scenario I see is what is to stop the next developer from wanting a PSA for the next piece of property down Lindsay Street or Berlitz's Street. And then they can cross over Mary Street and even change the preferred scenario all the way to Moore Street. What about growing across Moore Street and into the historical district? I'm sure there are developers who would love to buy the old Lemar School property and put up a seven-story complex there. So Scott Street and Blanco Street and Belvin Street, y'all better watch out because the dominos are falling and they're heading your way. Please don't push over this first domino and approve the PSA. There has to be a mutually beneficial way to allow the property owners to sell their land, the developer to build his housing, and yet still protect the neighborhood from future high-intensity development and inevitable ownership by Texas State. Go ahead and build some apartments, but do it, redevelop it using the um preferred scenario and the zoning we already have there. I also want to suggest that a brand-new apartment complex right across the street from the university is not going to be affordable. The further away you go, the more affordable it is, so that argument really doesn't make sense. Thank you very much.
Our next speaker is Jared Chumsey.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Uh, thank you for your time. My name is Jared Chumsey. I live at one one four Lady Bird Lane, San Marcos, Texas, um and I'm a volunteer with the Tenant Advocacy Group. Um, I'm speaking to you this evening in opposition to the Lindsay Street uh house, student housing proposal. Um, I think TAG wants to take a moment to be very clear. We are not against uh students finding housing in San Marcos. Uh, we are not against building more housing in the city. Uh, in fact, we re- re- recognize that Vision SMTX estimates twenty-five thousand to fifty thousand new unit, units projected by twenty fifty. Um, but it's largely up to council to determine what that housing will look like. Um, it's critical that we're building the appropriate type of housing and in the appropriate place. There is a s- there is a serious uh housing shortage for students and residents alike. It is the reason why incoming freshmen have no place to stay and have to stay in hotels. Um, and it's also the reason why rents have increased by forty percent pre-pandemic levels, um according to um community impact. Now, according to Texas State's Housing Department, there's roughly twenty thousand students that live in San Marcos. Of that twenty thousand, just over seven thousand live on dorms uh on campus. That leaves roughly twelve thousand to thirteen thousand students who live off-campus in the city. Rent-by-the-bed complexes have uh twenty thousand beds available, according to our estimates. That means that purpose-built student housing in this city is overbuilt by over eight thousand beds already. Yeah, maybe within the immediate vicinity of the university, it's a little bit uh tighter, but there's plenty of student housing uh throughout the city. Um, there is uh no demonstrated need for adding to that list. Uh, so there is a student housing crisis. There is uh, this is a problem that's actually unique to incoming freshmen because the university is accepting more students than it can accommodate, which is, which sounds like a Texas State problem to me. Um, the majority of which, um, sorry, the ma- the ma- the majority of sophomores, juniors, and seniors typically live off-campus anyway. Um, and by the way, um, I understand the concerns about using the Texas State Shuttle system, but it does get students to and from campus um with relative ease. Otherwise, they wouldn't continue the program. Um, and I even take the shuttle to work every day. I work at Texas State. Um, so maybe there are some complexes in which they don't have enough shuttles, but that's a thing for Texas State to solve. Um, and so let's call this project what it is. It's a private, for-profit dorm with very shady leasing language. And uh I look forward to discussing this later this evening if necessary. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Clay Chip Smith, followed by Alcha and then Lisa Marie Capoletta, Paige Michelle, and ending with uh Joan Byrd.
Clay Smith, address is four three four North Comanche. You may recognize the street as being next to the development, um, at least the third part of the development, the Lindsay Oaks. My wife and I run a prayer hall at that location. And that uh prayer hall brings in uh many students several times a day. Public speaking's not my thing.
That's okay. You're doing fine.
Let me go back to the beginning of my talk, which is, I greet you with the greeting in our community, which is Assalamualaikum, a greeting of peace and security. I send peace and blessings on all the prophets from Adam, Abraham, Moses, David, Jesus, and Mohammed. And I welcome their teachings of good manners and such that I see exemplified in this body and all around the beautiful city of San Marcos. This is the month of Ramadan. We're fasting during the day. I'll break my fast here in another uh, about another half hour or so. We're having seventy to a hundred kids from Texas State University at our prayer hall every evening to break fast. It's a great time. Y'all are welcome to come over and uh just look at the, type in sunset time on your phone and come right over. That's when we break our fast. We don't worship the sun. We just use it as a clock. Um, I love this project. I think it's fabulous because we get a hundred kids there for uh Fri- for Friday prayers. Uh, we get kids there uh in the morning, at six in the morning for morning prayers. We get them there at nine or ten o'clock at night sometimes for evening prayers. We get the afternoon prayers. Kids come over from the engineering college, the business school right there, just five hundred feet away from us. Um, my bottom line is, you get one chance to build a big building. I'd rather see it be as tall as you could possibly imagine doing under, under whatever rules you can conceive of because that'll give me more opportunity to get my students in that housing, walking distance, so they don't have to travel far. And if they're parking at y'all's parking lot, I don't have to have parking. You're just walking over to my place. This is a win-win for us. Um, I just, I just love this project. I think it's great. Um, my wife had signed up to speak and if I have one minute, uh, I'll, I'll speak on her behalf to translate for her.
No, you've got twenty seconds.
Twenty seconds. Her say, her message is, half the distance is twice as safe. That is, if you're walking a short distance over to the mosque, it's much safer than a long distance over to the mosque. And so as a woman, we have families all that want to be there. We got four of them in Lindsay Oaks right now. Thank you very much for your time. Appreciate your support. Appreciate you looking at this. Praise God. Thank you.
Uh, our next speaker is Paige Michelle, followed by Joan Byrd. Uh, last.
Yeah, I made an error earlier. You're next.
Got it. Okay. Well, good evening, Mayor Houston and council members. My name is Paige Michelle. My address is twenty twenty-four North View Drive in San Marcos. I'm here representing the San Marcos Area Chamber Board of Directors. And after studying and evaluating the presentations and discussions held on this project, the chamber is inclined to offer its support. And for all the agenda items, there are four key reasons for supporting this intelligent development. One, housing availability. The chamber is committed to advocating for diverse housing options throughout our community, recognizing that expanding the supply and range of housing choices benefits all citizens. Although apartments alone won't introduce additional diversity to our housing supply, this would be the only high-density complex in the downtown area that offers conventional leases for individuals and families. And the developer's openness to reimagining this project beyond the traditional student apartments and the concessions made during recent discussions with the city really amplify this impact by offering new options beyond the student demographic. Two, tax revenue for the school district, the city, and the county. This project will yield a substantial increase in property tax revenue and it presents an opportunity to replenish property tax income recently withdrawn from our tax rolls within the vicinity of the proposed development, enabling the city to sustain vital programs. And the prospect of infilling with a comparable project in the same area to mitigate this recent loss of income to our school district and the city is a key reason to support this. Three, transportation. The chamber also upholds the principle of enhancing mobility efficiencies. And this project presents a chance to elevate housing density in an area that is extremely conducive to walkability for employees to go to jobs in the area, for families and for students. And four, the character of the surrounding area. So we've studied and viewed this project as matching the existing usage and character of the immediately surrounding area. Like Linda Coker said, the historic value in that block, that ship has sailed. This would allow for infill of previously underutilized properties and match the character of the properties around it. So the chamber encourages city council to consider these four key reasons and that would make this project a success for our community. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Joan Byrd. Is Joan Byrd here? Is Joan Byrd online? At this point, I need to ask, is uh there anyone else in the chambers or in the lobby who wishes to speak far against or about? If so, if you'll approach the podium, we will need your name and uh your address. If you would say your name clearly because you didn't sign up and we're gonna have to, to write it down for our minutes.
It's a pretty ordinary name. My name is Edward Johnson.
Okay.
I live at three eight one seven Venezia View in Leander, Texas. And although I live in the Austin area, I would sort of like to introduce myself as a kind of still a resident of San Marcos. I grew up here. Um, went to elementary school, middle school, junior high, San Marcos High School. My family still lives here. My father owned a small business here for forty years. Recently sold it. My mom was a librarian at Crockett Elementary School for close to that same amount of time, close to forty years. So I'm familiar with the town. I'm not an out-of-town developer. I have an out-of-town address, but I spend half my time here. Um, so I'm familiar with the community and the neighborhoods within it. And I am trying to find some standing to suggest to the city that I think that the developer's location is really perfect for student housing. Um, I would encourage the city to acknowledge that um population growth in San Marcos is inevitable. Um, largely attributable not just to business, but to growth in um Texas State enrollment. And I think the city has a chance to control that. So I know we're concerned about, you know, what's the appropriate neighborhood to uh consider as we take up all these issues this evening? Um, well, I think if you can put student housing across the street from campus, I think some people have literally counted that it's sixteen steps away. It's close. So the architecture has even been, preliminary designs have even been to look like. Very much compatible- much compatible with Texas State architecture. So rather than try to, so this project could potentially accommodate up to nine hundred students. It's a great place to do that with some neighborhood concerns, I think everyone might acknowledge. But to try to spread those students out anywhere else is gonna affect five or six neighborhoods, and surely there's some people that could attest to that. Before I run out of time, I'd like to touch on a few soft points. This proximity and walkability, um, it reduces traffic, cars, buses, both. That comes with a reduction in pollution. That comes with a reduction in carbon footprint. The developer has gone above and beyond what I think would ordinarily be required with regard to parking. I will reiterate that this also um offsets on um ad valorem tax rolls, uh student housing projects that Texas State is taking it upon themselves to do. Uh, so you get some, some of that returned. It seems that most of the community supports this. Why not give students that walkability? I will also tell you that I own a real estate development company uh in Austin, and I've done a lot of large student housing projects. Thank you for the time you've given me.
All right. Next person who wishes to speak far against or about this project, approach podium and give us your name and your address, please.
Uh, good afternoon, Mayor Houston, council. I think most of you know me. My name is Miguel Arredondo, and I live at two hundred Patricia Drive here in San Marcos, Texas. For those of you who don't know, I am a fifth-generation San Marcos native, proud product of our San Marcos C I S D public schools and Texas State University. And as someone who matriculated through our public school system, proudly attended Texas State University, lived in student-purpose housing, and now lives in a predominantly low-income, single-family neighborhood, I think I can speak to the experiences of both Texas State students in particular and as a lifelong resident of our community. And I think this project as proposed, the way that it has evolved over time, is a perfect example of what it looks like when a developer is willing to work with the community, willing to work with stakeholders, and actually be responsive to the concerns of the neighborhoods directly adjacent to the proposed project. And I think that's great. I think it sets a standard for us as a community moving forward of what we should ask for from all developments, especially student housing. In addition to that, and as a former and soon-to-be returning San Marcos C I S D School Board trustee, first, I'm not speaking on behalf of the school district, but from my experience on the board, six hundred thousand dollars in increased tax revenue can do so much for our public schools. It can provide salaries for ten new teachers, salaries for thirteen new parent liaisons, salaries for fifteen new teacher aides, and in a community in which more than sixty-four percent of its students are economically disadvantaged, it could provide over two hundred and eighty-five thousand school breakfasts and lunches to our public school students. I understand that you're being asked to make difficult decisions tonight, as you do most nights that you serve, and so I'd like to thank you. I just ask that you approach this project and this discussion with an open mind, and that you utilize the experts and the professionals who are in the gallery who can speak to the concerns that the community presented, and I'm going off script here because it frustrates me when folks come up here and assert that students who rent don't pay property taxes and that they shouldn't have a voice in this community. As a renter and as someone whose family has rental properties, renters pay property taxes. Their landlords calculate that into their monthly rent, and so to say that some citizens in our community have more of a right to speak because they've been here forever like myself, or they have less of a right because they've only been here three or four years as students, is quite frankly insulting as someone who has called this community home for their entire life. And so I hope as citizens come up here and approach this dius, you take all of our comments seriously, whether we've called this home, we've called this community our home for our entire life or not. Thank you.
Anyone else? Ms. Capoletta is next.
Hey, y'all. Good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I live at thirteen twenty-two Belvin. Thank you to all the students who've been speaking out month after month against this project. Your voices are truly valued. Statements from the comprehensive plan that directly contradict the Lindsay Project on page fifty, goal H and, goal H and three, protect and enhance natural, cultural, and historical resources of all San Marcos communities through the neighborhood stabilization, thoughtful growth, and compatible development. H and three point one, implementation of transition zones, buffers, and other tools to ensure compatibility between buildings and neighborhoods. H and three point three, adopt a preservation plan to guide the protection, preservation, rehabilitation, and adaptive reuse of existing historical residences, resources, historical and cultural resources of minority communities, of which many of these in this area. Number, page sixty-eight, residents expressed a strong desire to minimize the impacts of new development on established neighborhoods, historic, cultural, and environmental assets. Finally, the new plan identified in the area of the west side of North Street is an area to be protected with incompatible infill and placed in the historical, in the historical overlay. Additionally, I want to note that it's called the preferred scenario for a reason. It's the preferred scenario. The traffic will be dangerous for children, pedestrians, cyclists, and increased car wrecks. The parking will spill over to neighborhoods. You have in your inbox the city's own data that says there's plenty of student housing. The reason why this is not in historical areas by design because city staff have refused to implement the historical resources survey. Additionally, this area has not been outlined in the Heritage, Heritage Neighborhood Plan, and that is the spillover of the domino effect that is imminent, and that is why the, the city staff have completely gerrymandered this area. There's a reason it was a seven to zero vote, because it will spill over flooding into the neighborhoods. Uh, it's not just about a pump. It's about that it's all concrete, and all of the P and C commissioners who you appointed voted for that. Renter neighborhoods deserve the same respect as other neighborhoods. The homeowners have participated in Code S and T X, the Historical Resources Survey, the comp plan, and the neighborhood plans, and their input deserves to be valued. Remember all the times that Andrea showed you the sticky notes and all those power points of input? Why would we prioritize, prioritize special business interests of the chamber and the greater partnership San Marcos when we have accomplished so much as a community? Additionally, if any of you are serious about equity, then you will treat this renters' neighborhood the same consideration and dignity and respect as single-family neighborhoods, and you will protect the homeowners who live in these historical boundaries, and it should be expanded to be a neighborhood. The parking infrastructure is devastating, and it will have noise and impacts to human health as well as public safety. The developer and the council stress that the importance of the neighborhood is not single-family, but this implies that neighborhoods of renters do not have the same rights or consideration of single-family neighborhood. What does this mean, that their voices don't count? Please vote against flooding. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing. I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve, Mayor.
A motion from Mr. Gleason.
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prather. Just to make a note that we will need, uh, before we vote, uh, the Planning and Zoning Commission denied this, and so this will take a supermajority, which Ms. Hernandez is six, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
They'll take a supermajority in order to uh pass this. So that, just letting you know what the facts are. Questions, concerns, comments?
I think I heard, I heard it best when someone said this sets the standard uh of future developments, and um, you know, we, we heard from the leader of a mosque, the next-door historians, the Chamber of Commerce, even the sorority next door sent a letter of support. We've had a, an outpouring of support for this project. I think this is a great project. I think, like I said, this developer has set the standard or on the um kind of projects we want to see that come to San Marcos. So thank you for working through the process, for investing in our community, and uh for adding more housing for our town.
Okay, council, if you'll just let me know that you want to speak, and then I will call on, call on you. Who's, anyone else want to speak? I've got some things to say, but I'm happy to wait till last, or go ahead if y'all want some more time.
I, I can go next.
Okay, then, okay.
Are we good?
Mm-hmm.
Um, this is probably for the uh developer. Do we have any guarantees that this property will not be sold to a nonprofit in the next fifteen or twenty years? And the reason I, I, I say this is I don't want to take it off the tax rolls, since everybody's talking about how much money we would make and so on.
Again, my name's Matthew Kenyon. I live at twelve hundred Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, seven eight seven three five. You know, I, I anticipated this question was coming. I heard what you said last time. You spoke at council. I'm not sure. I consulted my attorney um in town. It's a complicated question. It depends on what it looks like. I also consulted my financial institution. This project is going to cost somewhere in the neighborhood of a hundred and fifty million dollars to build. I obviously don't have that. I'm gonna have to go out and borrow that money. And so the problem runs, the problem that I run into is that if something happens and they, they said if something happens like COVID, or if something happens to you and you die, or if you go bankrupt, now we inherit your project, and we also inherit your problem that you said you, you wouldn't sell it to Texas State. And what if Texas State is, or another nonprofit, as you're saying, were the only buyers? Now, now I've created a problem for them, and so um they did, they did give me some leeway. They said uh they were comfortable that I could carry this project um for five to seven years on my own accord if I had to. So they said if you want to go ahead and guarantee that you will not sell this project from today for seven years, then if you want to risk that on your own financial accord, go ahead, and I'm willing to risk that. But that's as far as I can go out. If I could, if I was wealthier, maybe, I could, you know, I could go more.
If you were able to do that, how would you do that?
So I, I, you know, the uh, I think it would be, and the, your attorney's sitting right here, um, so I would probably look to him on how this would be done. I'm not an attorney. I'm assuming that um, like all the concessions that I'm making, and I'm making a lot of concessions, you're going to want these concessions to run with the land, right? Not with the developer. So if I go out and sell it to my buddy tomorrow, then uh if it runs with me, then he's no longer under those concessions, right? So if, but if it's on the land and I sell it to him, those concessions run with the land. And in that case, so I, I think we'd want to figure out how to put it on the land that it couldn't be sold to a nonprofit in seven years, but I'm, again, I'm not an attorney.
Right, right. Today I went by there and I sat out there for an hour and a half or so, looking at the traffic, you know, the movement of the traffic.
Okay.
And uh I saw the, a lot of that traffic that was going the opposite direction, uh wasn't going through town, was going back through that neighborhood.
Okay.
And then I can just imagine if those apartments were up, you know, nine hundred rooms, you said?
It's, it's, we, well, you know, originally I wanted to go seven stories and seven stories. It's now four stories and seven stories. I think we're closer to six, six hundred and six fifty.
Did, did, did y'all have a chance to analyze that, to see?
I did.
What the impact was. I, I, you know, there's a lot of people going down the, those residential homes.
And, and I realized that, and I, I believe I, I spoke with the mayor at one point, and she's uh maybe had made a suggestion, or someone, maybe it wasn't her, someone had made a suggestion that I do a traffic study. I did that on my own accord, and I said that out to council last night, and it's, it's uh student housing projects in general don't cause traffic problems because only, I don't remember the exact number, somewhere around forty-five percent, fifty-five percent of students even move their car during the week. And many of the students either work before school, so they're gone by six o'clock, or many of them work as waiters or bartenders at night, so they're gone later. So the time span that they're moving their cars, the, very few of them move them between seven o'clock in the morning and nine, and traffic hours later in the evening. So it didn't seem to present much of a problem.
Well, there's another apartment complex that's similar to that, and what I seen, and when the complaints that I hear is on Saturdays and Sundays, or there's a game or something, that neighborhood is really filled up all the way down Barbara Drive and the other street, Conway. People are using the restroom late at night, they're loud, the trash that they leave behind. It's concerns like that that I'm worried about. You also mentioned that, or someone mentioned, this is gonna be affordable. Explain affordable to me.
Okay, so I, um. I don't know.
Because my affordable could be different than your affordable. Most likely it is.
Right, and I, you know, I will tell you, I'm not gonna stand up here and lie to you. Interest rates are at nine and a half percent right now.
Right.
Construction costs are at all-time high. If anyone thinks that anyone's going to build affordable anything right now, it, I, I think it's gonna be a stretch, you know? I, I'm willing to talk about putting, you know, I suggested I put three or four, possibly up to five, affordable units into this project as another concession, and I'm willing to do that. I'm, I'm willing to do it. Probably not on the student housing side. I'm willing to do it on the multifamily side, you know, because I heard some of the people that, and these are some of the people that live, I run the Elms right now, and I run Lindsay Street, and I do know most of the people that live in mine, and some of them have single children. And I would probably be willing to locate them into my new project for some number of years um at a discounted rate, maybe equivalent to what they pay now in order to help them to get back on their feet, but.
Yeah, well, that brings another concern. If they do have a family and they live there where you propose this project.
Yes.
The traffic with families there, you know, it's, it could be kind of dangerous, in my opinion. Well, you never gave me a price on affordable, and probably you.
Yeah, you know, all I can tell you is that um our project will be equivalent to the market rate in San Marcos.
That's fair.
Yeah.
And, and I'll be perfectly honest with you. I uh, this is a real tough decision, and I see both sides, and they're pretty much, you know, there's pros and cons.
Yes.
But, you know, when, my platform, when I ran, I, I, I said that I would protect our neighborhoods adjacent to residential.
Right.
And uh, you know, I, I tried to live for that as much as possible, but.
Could I, could I make one point?
Yes.
That I, that I just learned myself, and you know, if you, if, when you cross North Street, the property that we're talking about on the west is zone multifamily. The project next to it is multifamily, and then you go beyond that, there's several single-family houses there left in that before you get to Moore Street.
Right.
However, that is all zoned multifamily, so that in the future, those will likely be multifamily, you know, as well. So it won't, if, this, this won't just be one multifamily project up against residential all the way to Moore Street. At some point, we'll be multifamily.
Yeah. Well, as I think one of the persons in the audience, uh, I'm sorry, I forgot, Munoz, maybe, uh, she mentioned the domino effect.
Yes.
And we've seen that so much in San Marcos. But uh, you know, I appreciate you coming out here and just being as, as honest as you are.
Yeah.
And uh, you know, let's see what happens, sir.
You know, if I could say one thing to that domino effect, and um, I, I understand how that works, I do. But the reason that I was even interested in that property on the west side is because I have a pro, there's an opportunity to build a dense product on that side and park it entirely on my side, right? And so, but if you give up, if we miss that opportunity, that property on the west will never amount to much. It's odd-shaped, it's very, very difficult to bu- build a parking garage on that property. I've, I tried to build a parking garage on that property because I wanted to do parking over there. I wanted to make it two separate projects, and I wanted to do it in phases, but it won't work. The, the, the way that it has to work is all the, all the parking has to go on my side, and the units can go on the side, on the west side.
Did she have a chance to look at the master plan for the university, to see what their boundaries are, where they plan to grow?
I do. I, I have looked at that, and uh the university is building a seven-story dorm almost directly across the street from my project. So it's, it's not that, it's not that my seven stories on the east side, hopefully seven stories on the east side, is going to be the highest building. The engineering school's sevens, is seven stories. Their new dorm is seven stories. The Aspire is fourteen stories, so it's um, it's a growing neighborhood.
And I agree with you. I, I appreciate it. Thank you very much, Mayor. That, that's all I have.
Okay, next?
I I said a lot the last time I was up here, we brought this up. So I've looked at so many sides of this. I has been speaking with students, I've been speaking with neighborhood commissioners, I've been speaking with developers and people who are in favor of this that are part of Chamber and just anybody around town who wants to know what's going on. Like Mr. Gonzalez, I also ran a platform of protecting that I said for single family neighborhoods because that's really what we don't have HOA protections for. Things like that. I'm talking about, you know, those bowl communities that I always talk about, like a broken record. All the ones that, when you drive down from campus on LBJ on the way to Seguin, you see how we dip down so, so far. So we can talk about flooding. As we all know, everything roans down, rolls downhill, water and uh, gaga. So we wanna protect these neighborhoods that we try to fight so hard for because these are citizens that have worked generations just to own a little small home that's probably worth two hundred thousand dollars right now, just to make it. And talking to these community members over and over again, not just about this topic, but since I've been in office and planning and zoning, it all comes back to, again, students need to be where students are at. I don't like that comment. It comes across as a bit ignorant, but I understand where they're, where they're getting to. You want people to be able to live and stay next to where they're most productive. Same thing is you wanna have like a, if you have a big outlet mall like we have here, you want people to live next to it so they can drive or walk back and forth to it without using carbon emissions and all the other things that we're so worried about here in this new age. The students deserve options. We've heard about it from over and over again. This is a large population that's here. Whether they're temporary or not, they are here now and they do pay taxes and they're a significant part of our population to help our small businesses run. It's important that we listen to them and provide them access to where they need to be. It's also important to provide not just the students, but the professors. Let's even say graduate students that are gonna be coming here. The university has became a research facility, which is huge. So we're gonna have all different kinds of people that are coming in here. I never feel right about denying anybody a place to live, and at the end of the day, that's what this is. It's not saying, well, they deserve to live here or not, or this is a nice place. It's a place for somebody to live. We're talking about six hundred bedrooms. That's six hundred people. We don't put them here, they're gonna distribute themselves out to the neighborhoods, these single family neighborhoods that we keep hearing complaints about where there's too many cars or there's parties happening or whatever. Whatever discrimination words we can put on, because students are causing all these problems. We need to provide them an area to be students. Again, we keep talking about the culture of this area. Anybody who's grown up here in San Marcos has seen that area change throughout the years. I mean, we wanna talk about Thornton House that's on the property. That house used to be surrounded by some beautiful houses, a nice little neighborhood, and now all it is is concrete, open lots and dorms. It's gonna happen. This is the area it needs to be at. My main concern here is I have to look at all these sides is how do I become a thorn in Texas State's side? At the end of the day, how do I keep Texas State from owning this property right here, right now? My solution to that is not just giving it to a developer or having developer do what they're gonna do, but to make it something that Texas State will not want to purchase later on. We make it four stories. They don't want a four story building. It's gonna cost too much money to demolish it or add to it. It's beneficial for us here as a citizens. We can keep that conventional or keep it away from Texas State. That's my primary concern, is how do I do that? This seems to be the only option right here, right now, that's available for us. We've all seen what Texas State can do. You can go to that property tonight. Look across the street and there's a parking lot that's over a block in size. It's not a parking garage, it's not sublevel. It ranges in tiers. They only go five or six feet from one to the other. That's horrendous. The last thing we want is for Texas State or anybody to purchase the property and make it a giant parking lot. So worst thing we can do for the environment, worst thing we can do for anybody that deserves housing, property taxes. Right now, even though it's blank into some little horrendous looking buildings in the center there or some old property that got burnt down, we're still getting money off of this. Texas State purchased it, which the fact, I shouldn't say the fact is, but we all know it's gonna happen in the next couple of years. Whether it's ten, fifteen, twenty years, it's an ideal place for them to purchase it. If it's a beautiful property for their purchase, but until then, we can get tax dollars. We heard one of the trustees speak about this, a former trustee and possibly a, a new trustee. They understand our school system and the needs of our children. I challenge everyone here to talk to a high school student and have them tell you that they're safe or they feel like they're getting the best out of their education because we cannot provide for them that they deserve to have. We talk about the future of San Marcos and obtaining that or sustaining our culture. We are damaging our future by not giving them these things. Money isn't very important for our school district. And I think we need to consider that part. Whether it's temporary for five or six years, it's still there. That's about it. Sorry, Mayor.
No need to be sorry. This was your time to stay. No, that's your, your time to speak. That's fine.
I'll go next, Mayor. All right, um thanks for everyone showing up and participating in this. Uh you know, we have, we do a lot of things up here and discuss a lot of things and make a lot of decisions. We don't get a lot of input. And uh so I appreciate the outpouring of, from both sides of these issues. Um it's extremely important. I'm gonna be in support of this and I too um ran on a platform to protect the neighborhoods and I think I've proven that in my votes on P and Z on council, that I'm willing to stand up for that. And uh if I felt like this was an encroachment on the historic district and that this was gonna impact that neighborhood up there, I would be voting no. This is not that. This is next to the university. This feels like the university. It's a hodgepodge already. The historic district marker is at least a block and a half away from this. I'm gonna be in support of it and, you know, I I hate that it's become so controversial for us to discuss and, you know, um I'm gonna get a little philosophical here. I come from part of the country from Illinois where they have, they're, they're regressing. They're losing people. There is no growth. There is no opportunities. Growth is a challenge, but it's one of the things I enjoy about this is it creates a unique challenge of what can be for the future and it creates its own segment of problems. And they can be very, very difficult and there can be ramifications to that. But I would much rather be in this position where people wanna live here, people wanna move here. We're creating opportunities for people than being a part of the country where no one wants to be there anymore and they're moving away and there are no hopes and opportunities and dreams for people. And I too wanna see the students out of the neighborhoods. All right, it's one of the biggest complaints we all get from every single neighborhood in this community. It's why are the students here? Why is the university growing? And I can't think of a better place to put them, right? I I wouldn't be supporting this if this was a couple of blocks to the west or even a couple of blocks south. There's no way I would support it. But I can't think of a better place to put everybody than right across the street from the university where they're gonna build a seven story dorm. And as far as the tax rules go, man, we've gotten kicked in the teeth this year. You know, um the economy, sales tax revenue, the loss of those apartment complexes, that's not gonna be the primary reason I'm gonna do it. I'm gonna vote on it because it makes sense to me for the location, right? The project makes sense to me. And so the net benefit of it financially is, is, is just, is just a, a bonus to me. I'm not voting on it for the tax dollars, but it is an addition, especially when we're hurting. So um I have, I'm gonna let everybody else speak and I have one question for staff when we're done with this, but um I'm just throwing my support for this. And then I do appreciate the concerns from the neighborhoods. Um we have seen some projects that um have not, have not been, have not done the neighborhoods well. And, you know, this notion of flooding, I wanna touch on this and um it gets bannered around and thrown around and it's used as a weapon as far as I'm concerned, and I don't appreciate it. Um I was personally affected. I still am affected by it. Um I lost everything, twice. And so if I thought this was gonna flood somebody up, no way in hell would I vote for it. And I don't like, I want the community to hear me clearly on this. Don't weaponize flooding. We know it's a reality. Those of us that went through it, it's real. And I appreciate the input that people are concerned about it, but use it in reference of where it's a reality. Not just 'cause you don't like a project, because it's hurtful for the people who have lived through it. It's hurtful for the people who may go through in the future, and it's not a reality. This is not an open lot. This is all concrete with structures on it. If you build it five stories, it's not really gonna impact flooding any more than if it was one story. So I just want the community to understand that you're not getting anywhere with me when you try to throw that in my face. It's plain and simple. And I think it's hurtful to the people who are still reeling from it and are dealing with it. So um I'm gonna let the rest of my colleagues um speak their piece on this, and then I'm gonna have a question for staff. Thank you.
Over here, anybody?
I'm, I'm, I'm okay if you wanna go ahead and ask the, the question.
Yeah, the, the question is more of, of an infrastructure um comment question. Burleson Street really doesn't have a sidewalk. I kinda walked around up there and I, I talked to the owner, well, my wife talked to the owner, Joe's and, and I, and I there, there's just some infrastructure kinda issues there, a mobility a little bit. Burleson doesn't really have a continual sidewalk all the way down, and it really needs some upgrades. So you know, I don't know what we can do is, is when aligning this project, if we could potentially have that looked at at the same time to improve the walkability of that and the mobility of it at the same time and do it all, all at once. You know, if there's gonna be construction going on on the corner of Mary, i- i- uh uh is, is that something staff could potentially look at at the same time and?
Potentially. The development will be required to improve the streetscape, which would include sidewalks at the edge of their property. And then we would just have to look at what our sidewalk gap program is calling for in this area and see if it's possible for us to align that construction.
Yeah, that, that would be great because that's really the only thing that jumped out at me when I walked in is that it's not contiguous. It's just a little weird up there with the sidewalks. Couple of the lots are kinda funny and I know they're only gonna have to go to the edge of their property. But what I would request is that if we can potentially line that up and look at that gap uh program at the same time to do all the infrastructure all at once and really help out the walkability up there. So that's the only thing I have, Mayor.
That's a good question.
Um I wanted to ask um Matt, that's one. Um if you could explain the other ways that you have altered the project. I know we got a long email about it. But I was wondering if you, if you could succinctly like list those out, if that's possible, just for the sake of everybody else.
And I'm going to list them as part of our upcoming items. It's, they're not necessarily related to the preferred scenario amendment. So if you wanna hear them now, that's fine, but I wanted to let you know it's part of my speaking points for zoning and conditional use permit.
Could you explain if there's a list of items that are being suggested to be different from the original plan when it was in front of Planning and Zoning Commission? And how we will be addressing those, because that was one of my questions. So it's kinda the same. We're both wanting to see what, what, where is this list? How is it, how is it formalized? How will we know what we're voting for when we're voting on it?
Yes, ma'am. In the conditional use permit, item number ten, I have listed the conditions that were recommended by the Planning and Zoning Commission. And then I have a separate slide in the packet that references the developers' requests and concessions or something like that is the title where um they're actually requesting modification of a couple of the items that P and Z approved. And then I have a bulleted list of, I think it's four items that we received from the developer at the last meeting. And then I also have a, a notepad in my pocket that I've been keeping track of the things he's talked about today that we haven't talked about. And for those concessions, as we were talking about them internally as staff, I know the developer offered restrictive covenants, which is something we can talk about with zoning. But we're actually proposing them as conditional use permit conditions because those are things that were, are easier for us to enforce and would be there on the face of that permit.
Right, and, and, and I'm not arguing with that at all. My concern is that's an item ten. And we're gonna be asked to vote on item eight, and I'm gonna need to see what those are before I can vote on item eight. However, uh uh Mr. Gary and I talked about all of this. Since everything was posted on agenda, it's all transparent about what we were going to be talking about today, or at least the topics. That I believe it's gonna be okay to talk about those things that we'll be voting on under item ten. And to talk about them now because it's relevant to, is, am I close, Mr. Gary?
Yeah, yes, Mayor. Uh uh the way I view it is, it is a, a single project and it is first and foremost a land use project, which has to do with compatibility with surrounding areas. Uh benefits and disadvantages to the, you know, the community downtown area. So I think all of the related items, uh things that may happen on those items are germane to the both the zoning and to the PSA uh matters that are before the council. So I think they're all germane.
Thank you, 'cause we, we wanna know, but is that, take care of your concern? We're, we're gonna find out here in a minute. Okay, um, Mr. Scott, did you wanna say anything or I'll go next? Okay, um, I am in a little bit of a quandary, but first of all, it makes sense for this to be a student housing area, this, this whole project. It is literally across the street from the university. So I get that. The west side of Lindsay is going into their single family structures. Maybe some have been converted into duplexes. I'm looking for a compromise as we get from the more intense to perhaps less intense. And so I was asking, is there something else? I'm having a real hard time with calling this five D because I don't think west of Lindsay is downtown and I really don't want to extend downtown to it. Not real comfortable with the east side, but we're halfway there, so I'm willing to go the, all the way there. So I had looked at and, and um Ms. Hernandez did exactly what I asked. She has provided a side by side comparison. Thank you for this. Sorry I missed it the first time. There's only one thousand three hundred and thirty pages in this packet. Uh but you did exactly as I asked and thank you for that. So I was looking at, I had kinda forgotten about ND four, 'cause I don't know if we've had anybody ask about ND four. But ND is neighborhood density. The neighborhood density was to take you from the character districts, which are the new, more dense um zoning categories that we have. We put in the land development code in twenty eighteen, I think. And into other areas. So I was looking at perhaps the ND four, which, would that even require a PSA?
A change in zoning to neighborhood density districts does not require a preferred scenario amendment in
This area?
In this area. But there are a variety of challenges.
Let me, let me finish up and, and then we'll go back. We'll pick up exactly where you left off. Because what I was looking at that is, if that was considered for student housing in the beginning, I agree, it does not work for student housing. But now that we're talking about more traditional housing, and I thank you, Mr. Kenyon, for recognizing there are faculty and staff that wanna live near campus also, and not all of them have a car. So I think that this would be very welcome to a, a portion of the three thousand people um that work there. Um so that was good. So if we're not talking about student housing and we're talking about three bedroom, now we're kinda easing into what ND four is. So that was my question is if that, the, the difference is he was looking for, I believe, four stories. This will be limited to three.
Correct.
And parking would be by the unit, not by the bedroom, which gives a little bit of ease in that. So I was looking at that thinking that might be a good option instead. And I understand that there's some other um, uh complexities. And so if you would go through those now, I think now would be a, a good time to do that.
Perfect. So I'm, I'm working off some notes and I was actually drawing pictures because I was trying to figure out how does this work in a different zoning district?
Thank you.
And we were looking at the neighborhood density four. We also looked at neighborhood commercial and CM um and possibly even character district four because that came up last time.
And, and five, that's not five D?
And we could do character district five potentially as well. Um so specifically talking about the neighborhood density districts, I think the biggest challenge that the developer has is the three story maximum building height. And in character district five, you can have five, ask for seven, he's offering four. But when you get to three, it reduces the number of units that you can have and, and the numbers essentially don't pencil out. But in addition to the three story, when you're looking at the types of buildings that you can have in the neighborhood density districts, you would be permitted courtyard housing, which looks like traditional multifamily housing around a center courtyard. So again, I drew my little picture. I said, okay, if we put the courtyard in the center, we would also have to break this property up into multiple blocks. Not an architect, not an engineer, but I said, well, maybe we could get three lots and the courtyard on that, that kind of, you know, weird angle shaped property. But then you run into the challenge of the units per lot cap, which uh the courtyard housing type has, and that's twenty-four units per lot max. So if my very crude math works and they could get three lots, the maximum number of units that they could have is less than seventy-five. And I think the developer is looking at potentially a hundred or so in making their numbers work. We were just kind of you know, talking through some very basic numbers. So it's really much lower than what they would be able to accommodate financially. And then you're also dealing with much larger setbacks when you get into the neighborhood density districts, so all the buildings are pushed back.
Which means less buildable area. But that was the whole idea of ND four was to have that more neighborhood um style.
Correct.
So um I'm glad that we had this conversation. Uh Mr. Kenyon or any of your folks, is there anything that you would like to comment on ND four? You'll need to come to the microphone, of course.
Matthew Kenyon, twelve hundred Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, seven eight seven three five. Um yes, and I, and I talked to Amanda at least once. Um, yes, and I and I talked to Amanda at least once, probably a couple of times last week. We worked through, we tried to figure out something else.
I thought you probably had, but I just wanted to to hear some other reasons.
Believe me.
I know.
I tried to do anything to get around this preferred scenario amendment and there just, there's nothing comparable. And what she suggested works great on bigger lots. If I had five acres over here, 10 acres, the courtyard housing works wonderfully and I could I could make it work. Uh, this lot's only one acre.
Okay.
And so in order to make it work financially, um, I had my architect draw it up at least 10 different ways. And we we could not, I mean, I know theoretically you can get 74 or 75 units on there. We could get a maximum of 55. So it was less than half of what we had hoped to put on there.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Thank you.
But I'm glad we looked at this and 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 know why that's not an option. Is it just doesn't doesn't work financially for you, darn. Okay, um, on the five, instead of 5D, since I've got a real issue with downtown on the other side of North Street and half of this block, or not even half of this block, what about CD5?
We would still need a preferred scenario amendment to approve a character district zoning.
Yeah.
Classification, so this would need an affirmative vote first.
Okay, so maybe I'll ask those questions on the next item.
Yes, and that would be considered a less intense zoning district and you are able with the the consent of the owner to approve something less intense. So maybe I'll stop with them in anticipation of these questions and talk through that.
Okay, so right now what we're talking about is item 8, which is to go from existing neighborhood to high intensity regardless of the downtown designation, correct?
Correct.
Okay, but once we get there, it doesn't necessarily have to be 5D. It could be five in the grand scheme of things, that may not be where we land.
Correct.
Okay, anyone else? I guess we will vote. And we're voting using our buttons. I'm still open to other creative thoughts on this one. Okay, we've been here for two hours and 13 minutes. We usually take a break at an hour and a half, so we're going to take a break now. So council, as long as I have four here, I'm going to start up at 8:30 by that clock. 8:30. Earned for my break and I need to state that the item 8 is not disposed of. It didn't pass because it needed six votes and it didn't get six votes. But in order to actually be denied, there would need to be a motion to deny and that would have to pass, et cetera. I'm going to put that on hold for right now, I'm not going to ask for a motion to deny. I'd like to move on to item 9 and then um work on item, the resolution to item 8. Mr. City Attorney, may I do that?
If there are no objections from your fellow council members, you could essentially park it, park this item temporarily and come back to it if that's the will of the council.
Then we will pick up with item 9, Ms. Trevino.
Yes, receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against ordinance 2024-16 amending the official zoning map of the city in case number ZZ-23-19 by rezoning approximately 1.931 acres of land currently located at the south side of Lindsay Street between North Comanche Street and North Street and southwest of the intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street for multifamily-12 district, multifamily-18 district and multifamily-24 district to character five, District 5 Downtown district or subject to the consent of the owner nevertheless intense zoning district classification, including procedural provisions that provide an effective date and consider approval of ordinance 2024-16 on the first of two readings.
Presentation time.
Mayor and Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This item is for the rezoning of approximately two acres, which was partially associated with the item we were just discussing. Subject property is along Lindsay Street, near North and Comanche Streets, across from Texas State University. Uh, this could, this presentation might get a little bit confusing. I had wrote a if they approve the last item and if they deny the last item script. So I'm gonna mesh all of those together and try to give you as much information as I can as you're making your decision on this item and and the previous item.
Thank you.
The properties currently developed with rental properties east of North Street are the three historic structures. I'm sorry, next slide, thank you, are the three historic structures we discussed in the last item. And the other two properties are currently multifamily, next slide. The existing zoning on these properties is multifamily 18 and 12. The properties could be redeveloped under the current zoning classifications. However, the applicant is seeking development standards associated with character district 5 downtown or CD5D. And I'll note that the property we were just discussing on the west side of North Street is partially MF18 and partially MF12. So that does add to the complication of trying to potentially put these together if they're not rezoned as one district to make a single complex versus developing them on the lots as they exist today. Um, we're going to talk about the handful of concessions in a little bit. Um, but let's first go to the next slide. The two hashed areas that are in purple are within the downtown high intensity zone on the preferred scenario map. So we are able to consider a zoning change request to character district 5D. If city council approves a preferred scenario amendment, which we just said is kind of sitting on the table right now, then you would also be able to consider character district 5D. Or on the next slide, please, table 4.1 says you can actually approve any character district. So we had talked about potentially character district 5 instead of 5D and the applicant will confirm that they would be willing to consider character district 5 on that land west of North Street. Uh, my notes about if the preferred scenario amendment is denied, we kind of talked about this in the last agenda item. Um, but council does have the ability to approve something less intense than what the developer has requested and any district besides commercial, heavy industrial are less intense. So we can look at any of those districts. The challenge, as I mentioned in the previous presentation with going to a neighborhood density district, are the building heights, the dimensions of lots, setbacks and things that go along with those less intense zoning districts. I also wanted to note that purpose-built student housing is not a conditional use. It's not permitted in a neighborhood density district. So if we're going to consider the conditional use permit, which is our next item on the agenda, and we would have to look at the multifamily as it exists today or the character districts. Uh, 5 or 5D are the only districts where purpose-built student housing can be requested. Okay, let's go to the next slide. This slide summarizes the character district 5D, CD5D zoning at a very high level, but I wanted to emphasize the applicability of our new downtown design standards. They were recently updated in our development code and city council participated in getting those adopted. We have not had a project that were subject to these requirements since they were adopted. So this would be the first if the developer builds under character district 5D. And at this point, Hayden, if we could move ahead to that slide that we talked about in the conditional use permit presentation, there are a handful of conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended as part of the CUP approval. And the applicant is requesting, one, to remove condition number four, which is dealing with students paying an additional or tenants paying an additional fee for a parking space. And the other condition relates to the amount of parking provided per bedroom. Under character district 5D, parking is considered per bedroom. Staff is recommending with the CUP that parking be provided at point zero, 0.85 spaces per bedroom and the applicant's requesting 0.7, 7.5 spaces per bedroom. If we look at the character district 5 without the D, we lose the downtown design standards and the parking becomes a per unit parking calculation, which changes the numbers potentially significantly for that property on the west of North Street. And then I had listed the additional conditions that the applicant proposed at our last meeting. And the city council can, like I mentioned, ask for those to be placed in restrictive covenants. But staff is recommending them as part of the conditional use permit. So one would be that the building height for the land east of North Street, the the land we were discussing in the last item, be limited to three stories in height and the number of bedrooms be limited to three units or three bedrooms per unit max. That three bedrooms per unit max aligns with our traditional multifamily. You cannot go over three units per bedroom unless you have a purpose-built student housing CUP. And then also, the statement was made that they could, that we would require conventional leases on the land east of North Street. What I heard the developer say in their presentation with the last item was that it would be the tenant's request. So we may need to consider how that is worded. Um, but the developer has always been willing to offer conventional leases. That's actually a condition in the conditional use permit that was approved. So it's something that they have talked with us about in the past. And then also, they previously brought up the limit for impervious cover, where 100% impervious cover is allowed in character district 5 and 5D. They would be willing to limit the land east of North Street to 80%. And then just to add to that list, a couple of things I heard this evening were instead of a six-month waiting period for the demolition delay, that they would be willing to offer a one-year waiting period in case any of their agreements fall through and they need to find someone else who would be willing to help them with the relocation of those buildings. So that would be an increase based on what code requires. Um, and then I'll let the developer speak again if he wants to, to the potential restriction of not selling for five to seven years. I did hear that, I wrote it down, but not something I had I had put on the slide. So those are some things that we would be considering potentially as part of the next item. We can talk about them now if you'd like. And then if we can hop back, Hayden, to the environmental analysis slide. The properties are in the Edwards Aquifer Transition Zone, but there are no other environmental constraints. So this means that they have to consider a certain amount of rainfall that will come across the property and design for that, as well as storm water treatment levels that are higher than other parts of town that are not in the transition zone. Next slide. The city is the utility provider and the applicant will be required to comply with the city's development code, which includes the improved streetscape standards that we talked about previously. Next slide. The San Marcos Development Code includes criteria for approval of a zoning change. You saw the color scheme previously, where there's a question mark, it's neither consistent nor inconsistent. A green check mark is consistent and a red X is inconsistent. We found that one of the criteria was inconsistent and seven of 14 were consistent. On the next slide, to summarize, if the preferred scenario amendment is not approved, then the change to character district 5 or 5D would not be consistent with criteria 1. If the preferred scenario amendment is not approved, we cannot approve a character district on that property. So that's something that we'll have to think about as we're having this conversation. The uses permitted in the character district 5 or 5D zoning district are compatible with surrounding uses and character. There's not, however, a substantial reason the property cannot be redeveloped. It can be redeveloped, but we talked about the challenges with the split zoning district and the smaller lot sizes that exist. And the applicant is seeking to build one cohesive building on the property with a little bit higher density. And as we heard him saying, as we'll see in the the concept plan that's in the packet, they're providing their parking actually on a separate lot, which staff actually preferred that that layout because then you don't have the headlights of the cars, the horns and the sirens honking closer to those residents that live in those smaller structures. It's kind of wrapped within the the structure and it would actually butt up to the adjacent property's parking garage. Next slide. There are sufficient services in the area and staff did not find that the uses in CD5D will have an adverse impact on this already multifamily area. Next slide. For the last two criteria, the the project must follow all city codes as it is being developed related to flooding and other ordinances which are in place to protect the public health, safety and welfare. Next slide. Based on the criteria for approval in the San Marcos Development Code, staff recommended approval of the request. The Planning and Zoning Commission took two votes on this project because they did not recommend approval of the preferred scenario amendment. They also did not recommend approval of the zoning change request for the area west of North Street. And in order to to overturn the denial on the zoning, we would need to approve the preferred scenario amendment first and then approve the zoning change with a super majority of six votes for both of those items. And for the area that is east of North Street, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval. So a simple majority is required. And if the vote on any of this affects the next two items, I will try to take notes and keep that in mind and make that part of our presentation as we go forward. There are a lot of teeny tiny little pieces of this puzzle and we will figure out how they're going to go together throughout our conversation this evening. And that concludes my presentation.
Okay, then I will open the public hearing. And I'm looking for my list. I had it right here. Can I borrow your list, though? Oh, thank you. For item 9, uh, we will have Ian Roberts, Shannon Mattingly, Ed Terrio, Matt Kenyon and Joe Erdeljack will be in that order, same as before. Um, as always, public hearing, name and address.
Uh, good evening, Mayor.
And three minutes.
Yes, ma'am. Uh, my name is Ian Roberts, live at 111 Peacock Trail in Buta, Texas. Uh, again, I'm a civil engineer for Kimley Horn that works here in our local San Marcos office. Uh, I just wanted to get up and speak a little bit to kind of the drainage concerns that were brought up by some members of the public earlier. Um, I think Mr. Gleason did a good job kind of summarizing the the existing conditions on site that that will play a major part in any types of increases to runoff that these projects might generate. Um, stormwater flows are generally created by impervious cover. So the more concrete you have, regardless of its building or parking lot or what have you, the fact that you're covering the native soil, that's what creates the increases in stormwater runoff. Uh, the existing properties are nearly 100% impervious cover today. So regardless if there's the existing buildings, or we go five stories or seven stories, the amount of runoff that's going to be generated shouldn't see any major increases. And I do think that bringing the development forward, all it really could do is provide an opportunity to even better manage the stormwater runoff that's created by the properties in their existing condition. So I think all we can really do with the development is improve the situation. I don't see it getting much worse than than what the public might be experiencing today. So that's all good, thank you.
Our next speaker is Shannon Mattingly.
Um, good evening, Mayor and Council. Shannon Mattingly, during her group, 2705 B Cave Road, Austin, Texas. Um, I'm going to be brief, um, because I know we've talked about a lot of this and Ms. Hernandez did a great job of summarizing and meshing it all together. But, um, you know, the the important important things for us is that, you know, a couple of things. One, there is CD5 currently on part of our site on the east side. Um, it is surrounded by multifamily. So you've got the CD5 L-shaped piece and then you've got two small pieces. And so that would kind of complete that CD5D section as you go west of North Street. Um, again, there is um property all the way over to Moore Street that is already zoned for MF18, MF24. Um, moving forward, I I'll let the applicant come up and talk, but I know there was some discussion about CD5 versus CD5D. I think we went with CD5D because that's what was already on the adjacent property. I don't know that it is a huge impact to us whether it's 5 or 5D, um, recognizing that there's concerns with continuing that D across um, across North Street. And so a CD5, I think, would be um, would be fine as well. As Ms. Hernandez mentioned, as we get to that CUP process, if the council desires to move forward, then we could add all of those restrictions that we've talked about onto the CUP or into a restricted covenant, whichever is the preference of the council. I don't know that um it matters to us one way or another as long as it gives the ability to have that stay with the land, so it gives you the insurances going forward. And the other thing I would just say is, um, I've been in San Marcos doing planning uh, in this area and in New Braunfels before here for a really long time. And um, the fact that there has not been a huge amount of um people against the project in the neighborhood. I I mean, I think that multifamily is is going to move in that direction. And obviously, over the years, at some point, we said, this is where we want multifamily. This is where we want people to be. And the impact of people parking in the neighborhoods, um, people using the transportation to get, um, you know, to get onto campus makes a huge difference when you're right across the street and you have parking that's available to your site and you're able to walk across. Instead of trying to find a place to park for anybody who's gone on campus, you know there's never a place to park on campus. And so in order to do that, if you're driving in, you're having to find someplace. If you don't. don't, don't want to get a permit or you aren't able to get a permit. And having a college student right now, I'm learning how hard that is to get permits on campuses. And so, anyway, we hope that you will support this project. If you have any questions, we'll be available to answer those. Thank you.
All right, our next speaker is Ed Terrio.
Mayor, I'll, I'll go ahead and handle that.
No, okay. Okay, we passed, and, Matt Kenyon, I'm sorry. Oh, okay.
Again, my name's Matthew Kenyon. I live at 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, 78735. I'm good, can I wait just a second here to, uh...
Yeah, I'll give you the extra time on the end.
Can you stop the clock for me?
I'll, I'll, I'll give you the extra time at the end.
All right.
Oh, we restarted, so you're good.
I'm not a very fast speaker anyways, so I apologize. Okay, so what, what you're looking at here on this map is, you can see that North Street divides the two properties. What I want to talk about first are the properties on the east side. There's, there's one little property on the corner right there, that's a, that's a student housing project that I own and run. I own all the properties on the east side. That's called the Elms. I run that one. The other one is called, I call it 435 Comanche. I think it's called Lindsay Street Apartment. Lindsay Oaks, thank you. And, and anyways, I, and so what, what Amanda was referring to earlier is that I own that property, CD Five D, that's in the center of those two. So to try to do a development where part of it's CD Five D, part of it's, you know, zone MF-18, part of it's zone MF-12, it makes a development there almost impossible. So I hope you'll agree that, that, with me, that zoning those, or that, you know, zoning those to all CD Five D makes sense and that it just makes, it's, it's almost impossible to develop without it. So I would ask you to please zone those CD Five D. They're the only two properties in the downtown district, and I believe that they weren't zoned CD Five D to start, just because the properties were already built. They've been there 40 or 50 or 60 years. They're very, very old properties. A little confused on where to go here on the, on the zoning on the other side, on the west side, except to say that, you know, I, I'm okay with this, with the, with the CD Five on, on that side. I, I would be acceptable, acceptable to doing that. I just had one question for Amanda that I, that I don't know off the top of my head, and if I could ask her, I just, I don't know what the setbacks are on the CD Five. Do you, does anyone know that? Or is Amanda still here?
Speak to the council and I'll address that later.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so that's really all I have, is that I'm, is that I'm okay with CD Five zoning on that side. And I have here the, the changes that went on, but are we going to address those later? The concessions that I made? Is this zoning only right now?
We'll address them sometime, and if we need to call you back, you know we will.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Joe.
Nothing further, ma'am.
Okay. Our next speakers are Andrew Salem, Austin Groeschel, Abby Rikelme, Isla Ruiz, in that order. Are they still here? Is Andrew here? Austin here? Abby, Isla, Darla Munoz? Did you want to speak again? Okay, it, it would be your turn, because I think the others have gone home. Followed by Clay Chip Smith, Mrs. Smith, Joan Byrd, Lisa Marie Capoletta, those who didn't sign up, we'll, we'll get to you. But Ms. Munoz is next.
Okay. Yeah. Darla Munoz, 1128 West Martin Luther King Drive. I realize the zoning of the property between North and Comanche is very mismatched, so I'm going to let you all work that out. For now, I'm focusing my comments specifically on the property west of North Street, which was the previous agenda item. The request for zoning change for this piece of property was denied by Planning and Zoning in a unanimous vote. At the neighborhood meeting on February 29th, we asked Ms. Mattingly if there was ever any discussion considering other development options besides apartments, such as townhomes, duplexes, small family homes. And she replied, quote, "The price of land that close to the university does not make the market work for anybody to get that type of financing, they just can't get it," unquote. So they are going to build apartments on this land. Okay, fine, but why the need for CD Five D? They're not building accessory dwelling units or townhomes. Residents can live and work from there as it is. There's no need for mixed shop fronts. Shop fronts, as we know, there are many empty retail spaces available close by in downtown. I see no need for a civics building. Is it to gain 5% more impervious cover? Because they said they would only go to 80% from the 75 that's now avail, now allowed. That's a big ask for 5%. The only reason I can see to want to rezone is to push the height of the building to five or more stories, but they have already said that they will only go to four. I'm just not seeing the need for the zoning when the preferred scenario has drawn the line for downtown at North Street. This is where the residents of San Marcos want the line to be. We can't keep pushing the line of downtown over or changing our zoning. I believe they can redevelop this property on North and Lindsay with the MF-18 and still be profitable. And it will also match the rest of, of Lindsay down to Moore Street. I ask you to please separate this property from the other side of North Street going to Comanche and deny the zoning change. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Mr. Smith.
Clay Smith, 434 North Comanche. I, we broke our fast, we had our dinner with our community. I came back because I had one additional point I wanted to make. I lived in Austin in a apartment complex that was what I will call condominium compatible, meaning that they had put enough concrete between the floors that they could retitle the property from one title for the whole property to many little titles and sell off the price in condominiums. I'm not going to ask the city council to require that of this particular property, but I think the city council, thinking about this, would be a good idea. Having properties built condominium compatible, that means the electric service entrance comes in in a little bit different way, the plumbing going out goes in a little, a little bit different way, the water coming in goes in a little bit different way to make it condo compatible and you have concrete between the floors. You might even put concrete between units that are adjacent horizontally as a cinder block wall. This project is so very specific, but at some point, you're going to, you, you will benefit from having people being able to generate revenue for themselves. Our teachers, this is mainly focused on students, but our teachers at Texas State University will benefit from being able to generate equity in a condominium. So my, my ask of the council is to develop a process, is a longer-term thing than this project, but a longer-term thing to allow for the city to, to evolve towards having more condominiums, to allow for individual building up of equity, which will help the economy with people being able to have individual wealth instead of large, broadly developer Final thought, again, I love this project. You only get one chance to build it. Build it big, that'll allow my community to thrive right next door to it. Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate all the work you do. May God bless you in the work you do. May God cause it to be a productive and worthwhile thing for the community as a whole. Thank you very much for your time.
It's Joan Byrd. Does she get here? Is there anyone in the audience or in the lobby who wishes to speak far against or about this item? If not, we'll go with, to Ms. Capoletta. Is she online? I bet she is. Ms. Capoletta? There she is.
Hey, y'all, give me a second. I'm, I appreciate you, Mayor. They, they scared me earlier. Give me one second to set up my windows. You guys are the best. Hold on a second here. I'm sorry, I didn't know you were going to call me so quickly. Hey, y'all, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. They call me LMC. I'm very confused. Your appointees of the P and Z denied it. In my last speech, I read you verbatim what we as a community worked on so hard and diligently with all of the public input, the outreach, and the, the little documents that we gave comments on. I read you it verbatim. And then you have in your packet the outpouring of opposition from students, from renters, from homeowners. Where is your value on equity? It's a real pretty word, is what I'm getting from this dais, but it's not something that you hold dearly in your heart as far as an actual situation. When someone with wealth has more say than all the other people's lives, who will be changed forever and all of the public input and all of the public... This is very concerning of your leadership styles. The spillover of traffic, traffic will result in public safety concerns, the construction will be devastating, and the flooding, yes, the flooding, Mr. Gleason, will impact human lives. I also, quite frankly, foresee a sinkhole because of the cave system, and this would be the first domino to fall in the domino effect. I am very confused where the public outreach was and why that is not being valued, and it seems like Mr. Mendoza likes to pick which neighborhood he values, and I feel that Mr. Gleason is committing the fallacy of a red herring, which the definition is a fallacy occurs when a speaker poses an argument which is meant to distract from the argument at hand. I made a video that was picked up by Al Jazeera when Blanco Gardens got flooded out by the woods, and I didn't see Mr. Mendoza, I didn't see Mr., Mr. Gleason, because I looked at every speech from every speaker and stitched that together. The funding for the school district was the main argument that people made, and it ended up costing our community millions of dollars of flood mitigation and trauma to a neighborhood. The community warned those in your seats of the flooding. In fact, my dear friend, who is a very dear friend of mine, Mayor Guerrero stated, I would, quote, I have this burn in my brain, I have photographic memory for these sorts of things, quote, "I would not vote for it because, if I thought it was flood, because I live in this neighborhood." And what happened when he returned to his house? He opened, he hit the door and all the floodwaters popped in, and that's exactly what Mark just said earlier. Mark, you say it's all concrete, that's exactly what the Planning, zoning commission stated, and it's at the top of the hill, which means it is a flood-ticking time boom that is ready to erupt, and it's going to be the woods times a million. And that, my friends, will be on your soul. It is hurtful for someone who ran to protect the neighborhoods to be so flippant and to attempt to gaslight the neighbors who have legitimate concerns about being victimized for your lack of understanding equity. It's a bizarre form of lateral oppression, and I don't think any of you drive down these streets whenever we have a light rain. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
The public hearing is closed, and...
I want to state, I want to state something for the fact that one of the reasons that I didn't come up here and speak as much as I'd like to, I was living in a motel for nine months. So I'm, I'm not going to sit here and take Ms. Capoletta's accusations or in any capacity. I'm over it. I, I'm, I'm done with it tonight. I'm serious. And this won't be the last time if she keeps it up.
Okay.
By the way, motion to approve.
Hold on, hang on one second. Because the Planning and Zoning Commission and, and their votes are recommendations, when they denied the PSA, they went ahead and took a vote on zoning, I'm going to call it west side, and then the east side are the other two parcels. They took separate votes in case we pass the PSA so that there would be a, a recommendation on, on file. For the west side, there was, it, it failed, 9, 9-0. So a supermajority, it would be needed for us to do the west side. The east side passed 5-4, so it would be like most of them and we can look at it. Now, Mr. Gary, because we have not passed the PSA, help me with this, and, and I will tell y'all, I want to find out if the developer is willing to do Five, not Five D, on the west side, and if so, I would like to revisit, using a reconsideration motion. I can't move to reconsider because I did not vote on the prevailing side, but there's five people here who can, so we could go back and look at the PSA that we just did. Again.
Since, since we're on this item already and we just had a public hearing...
Right.
...on this item, I would suggest you could move forward with your motions, one motion per property...
Right.
...since there are two different recommendations from the P and Z. And then if, if one of them would require that the PSA be approved, I would just make the motions con, you know...
Table it?
No, or you could just make a contingent upon approval of a consistent PSA. So that way you don't have to come back to it.
Got it.
It would be contingent, and actually, by operation of law, it would be that way anyways, because if you don't approve the PSA, you can't have the zoning. So just, you could make your motions contingent upon the PSA being approved.
Okay, I'm still going to do them separately. I think that's...
Right, I think you should.
Because that one's contingent, the other one is not.
Yes, that's correct.
Can we do east side first, Mr. Gleason?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, yes.
So, is that a motion to approve?
I got what you're...
Thank you.
Motion approves east side.
All right. So a motion on the east side, motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by, and that's for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Do you have information to present to us on, thank you?
Just a real little bit of information.
Okay.
So I, I went through and flipped between Five and Five D, plus we have the comparison, which is a summary of what's required in those two zoning districts.
Great chart.
They can allow the, you can allow the additional stories or reduction thereof in both zoning districts. The setbacks are exactly the same, to answer the developer's question. The thing that we would not get if we go with CD Five is the downtown design standards on that portion of the property, and then, as I mentioned, the parking standards are different. It would be per unit instead of per bedroom.
Okay. But that doesn't mean he can't follow the design standards, it just means he doesn't have to, correct?
Correct.
So that would be his choice. And here's my question, because I know about the difference in the parking. So we've had the concern about the Five D requires 1.05 per bedroom. The CD Five requires one per unit, and so there's about an average through here. So my question is, Mr. Kenyon was planning on one parking structure for all, I'm going to say all three lots. I, I know it's different, but what would just work with me here, three lots. E, even if the east side is Five D and has a certain calculation, and this is Five and has a certain calculation, can that all be combined into the one which actually is requiring less parking for him?
They could still share a parking garage, if that was the question. I'm going to find the code section just to make sure there aren't any nuances in there, but yes.
And, and the number would be...
We would have them together.
The calculation here?
Mm-hmm.
The calculation here, which actually will reduce the parking from the start closer to what he was looking for.
Potentially.
Not maybe getting there, but closer. Difference in Five and Five D on the parking is Five D allows parking in lieu of, if a developer chooses to go that way, not for Five, but I think on this project somehow that number is achievable.
I would have to turn that question over to the applicant and see if they, if they've considered that.
But, but the number is determinable?
Yes.
On the Five D versus the Five, once they figure out how many units they're going to put on each and how many bedrooms in, over there? Once again, all like that, because I understand what's in front of us is not necessarily the final plan. I think there was another one that had some park and some other open space there.
Yes, ma'am. And we'll actually talk about parking in the conditional use... And we'll actually talk about parking in the conditional use permit. We put a table together based on your request, and you'll notice in that table, it talks about number of parking spaces per bedroom, number of parking spaces per office, number of parking spaces per retail.
Right.
We do that all the time. We look at the different uses and just combine them, and they can share the parking garage.
Great. Okay. Now, what I'm wanting is the same options that were offered before on the West Side with the three-bedroom, all those things that were offered. I'm still looking at that being on there. I'm gonna have a couple of questions. I'm gonna have one for you, Mr. Kenyon, if I may. And, oh, just as a point for those that are talking about, oh, well, it's already multifamily here, it's multifamily to Moore Street. That's correct, but that is MF12, 18, and 24. It's not like CD multifamily. Someone could build multi MF24 now on some of those lots if they choose to do so, but it's only the 24. People want the CD because it's more density. I get that. So when you're talking about offering a lease per apartment, what we call in conventional leases, if you're renting, and I'm gonna use crazy numbers, but it's just, always use $100, okay? So if you were going to do rent by the bedroom, and the bedrooms are $100 each, what approximately type of pricing would you look at if you're doing a conventional lease? Would it be the 300, the three times the individual that people can get on rent by the bedroom, or would it be more like what we really call conventional when we're talking about conventional paying for an apartment?
That's a tricky question.
Would it be less than the 300 is my question?
Generally, generally, yes. It would be less than the $300.
Yeah, because it's easy to say, I'm not gonna do rent by the bedroom, I'll do the conventional, but if it's a conventional lease, but the price is the same, that's not usually the case. So I just, I'm just trying to get an idea there. I'm not gonna ask you how much you're gonna charge, because nobody knows what they're gonna charge three years from now when it's built.
Yeah. Yeah, it's kind of a tricky question. If students, if students were to lease it and they were to elect to do a rent by the bedroom lease, that's what they wanted, it would probably be one price if a family, say, the parents with two kids moved in, and they wanted to conventional lease, the price would certainly be different, yes. It would be, I think it would be, I, I don't know, I haven't considered that.
Okay.
Probably, I just haven't thought about it.
But you see where we're coming from. Saying it's gonna be conventional isn't really helpful if the price is gonna be the same as the rent by the bedroom. So I, I'm just hoping to hear that it's gonna be less and more in line with what the difference usually is for conventional and rent by the bedroom. That's all I was looking for.
And I think you're right. If it was a conventional lease, it would be less.
Right.
Just, because there would be one or two people that would be paying the rent versus three people, so, yes, you're right.
So if we really want families there, and you've got some three bedrooms, that if you charge the same as the rent by the bedroom, that's not gonna work for people.
That's true.
Okay. Okay, Ms. Hernandez, I need to make sure that I'm together on some of this stuff. And so student housing is available in CD5 and 5D. However, it's my understanding that student housing is not being requested for that West, I'm just gonna call it the West parcel. Is that correct? Okay. I'm seeing Mr. Kenyon say yes. So we're good. We talked about combining the parking, talked about the 24 design standards, conventional lease. Okay. I may say that later. Counsel, do you all see where I'm going here?
No.
Okay. Okay. Ms. Hernandez, can we go through? No, we're not ready to vote yet, Mr. Scott. We are, I wanna see the list of what we're talking about on the West Side. Now, we're not gonna vote on that until Item 10, which is the student housing, correct?
Correct.
But I, we all said, and then I skipped over it, we all said we wanted to see that list before we did the PSA even, and then I didn't say we had to do it, so we'll do it now.
You're talking about the concessions?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, and I also wanted information about the offer for the affordable housing. I think, um-
Oh, regarding the people who want to continue, who are renting from you now, that they would be offered a space at the new apartments, although they're gonna have to have some place to live in between. Who knows if they're gonna come back? They may find another place they want to stay. And so, yes, that was another one I put on the bottom of my, I've got too many pages up here. So, yes, go ahead.
I'm just like adding on. I don't know if that's gonna be covered in that since I think the first-
We wanna hear about it sometime. Now's as good a time as any.
Sure, we can talk about it now. We saw this slide that's on the screen when I was giving my presentation. This comes from the conditional use permit presentation. These are the concessions that came from the previous conversation with the developer, so limit to four stories.
Four stories.
Maximum three bedrooms per unit.
Correct.
Allowing conventional leases.
Correct.
80% impervious cover.
Correct.
And then I'm gonna have Hayden go up one slide, maybe?
There were some others that, oh, go ahead, if you've got them.
Yes, so we have condition number 10 that was recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission that says the current tenants of the existing residential structures shall be given a six-month, minimum six-month notice to find other accommodations. We could include that and potentially modify if Mr. Kenyon is willing to include a condition that, you know, the families be offered or a certain number of units be offered to those that currently reside on the property.
Right.
And then the things that are not listed on the slide, because we just got them tonight, are the one year for moving the homes instead of six in code, and then not, potentially not selling for a certain number of years. Those are the other two I have.
Okay, got that. I believe, and I could've heard this wrong, so just tell me, and this will be from Mr. Kenyon, for the people that are living in Lindsay Oaks in the Elms now, granted, they're gonna have to go somewhere in between because those are gonna be demolished, but should they want to come back, you said that you would make sure that they have a space. I'm sure there'll be have to be a deadline, they have to let you know and all that other stuff.
Yes.
But you said at about the same cost, did you say?
Yeah.
Or comparable cost, maybe?
Yeah, comparable, I guess, to-
Yeah, I don't think you could hold the same rent three, when would completion be? Three years from now?
Yeah, three, four years, three, four years from now, yes.
So that's why I'm saying comparable for-
What does that, what does that mean?
Well, what you, what they would be charged if the Elms were still there, and Lindsay Oaks would still be there? I assume the rent goes up a little bit every year, so it, so it wouldn't be the same as today. It would be a four years from now rent.
Right.
Based on-
So if they had a, so if they had a one bedroom for $800 at the Elms right now, they would have a one bedroom for, say, $900 four years from now?
Okay.
Yes, and I could offer that to, you know, there's not more than five families that live there, I know that, so if all five families wanted to move back over there, I could offer that for, say, the next five years to them in order to, you know, help them out.
Thank you.
As an affordable housing gesture.
Okay. I had picked up in either a letter that you had sent or somewhere that there is also the ability for all tenants to use the amenities which will be provided in other buildings, like if you've got a workout room-
Yes.
-over in the 5, the other two, that the people lived on the West Side could come use that.
That's correct.
Okay, so that was one. And then also that you would be, the West Side, you would be marketing to families, university faculty, and staff. The others would be to students.
Absolutely.
Okay. So, Ms. Hernandez, are those things that we can put in the list also? I know. She's been back there typing furiously, and I know she's a fast typist, so.
Mayor, I have a question on-
Is it on this?
Yes.
Okay, go ahead.
On the taxes, when do we start that? It's gonna take four years to finish that project.
Ah, good point.
When do we actually start?
I presume that was after it was built.
Yeah.
But you're right. If it was as of today, we've kinda lost three or four years of that during construction.
Right.
The seven years that you would not sell to an entity that doesn't pay property taxes, when would that start in your book? And we'll need you to come to the podium, please, sir.
Matthew Kenyon, 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas 78735. I have that starting as soon as the property was approved. You know, it was between five and seven years is what I could do, because, again, in talking to my financial institution, the day that this gets approved is the day I have to start borrowing money.
Okay.
And that's as long as, that's as long as I'll do it.
So we'll just say today.
Today, okay.
Or April 2nd, or whatever. Will actually be two weeks if we get there, but so it's now not the end?
Okay. One other question, restrooms, how many do you plan to have per unit? Let's say it's a three-bedroom, are you gonna have three in every single unit?
Yeah, and I, you know, and I would like to discuss that too. So for the student side of it, it's required, it's almost impossible at least if you don't do one bathroom per one bedroom. On the family side of it, you know, if you have two kids and two adults and you rent a, you know, there may be a jack-in-jell bathroom in some of those, but more than likely it will be one bathroom per one bedroom on the whole thing.
But for three, it'd probably be all three bathrooms?
It's, yeah.
So for the, so for the three-bedroom family, would it be two or three?
I'm just gonna say that I know that we'll build one bathroom for every bedroom.
Okay. Not necessarily what I wanted to hear, but it's, but it's there. Okay. And so we don't need to write that down. Counsel, of all these things that Mr. Kenyon is kindly offering, are y'all good with all of those? All the stuff we just talked about? He's offering.
And with all these extra concessions, this project can still go forward?
Absolutely.
He said absolutely for the record.
So we've kind of agreed on this, but we're gonna put a pin in this, and then we're gonna vote on zoning, and then we're gonna talk about this formally with the student housing and also with the conditions on the student housing.
And Mayor, to clarify, we're gonna vote on the zoning on the East Side first.
We're voting on the zoning on the East Side now.
Yes.
We will do the West Side next.
Yes, thank you. Just confirm.
Thank you for that clarification. Everybody ready to vote? East Side.
Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Sorry, I have a question. Who did you give the second to? I heard two council members.
Hang on a second.
I just wanna make sure.
It was Mr. Gleason and Mr. Prather for the second, for approval.
Thank you for clarifying.
Okay. So now, we'll vote on the East Side.
The motion passes 6 to 1.
All right. Now, I will accept a motion for the West Side.
I'll make a motion to approve the West Side zoning. Am I stating that correctly?
But we need to say West Side CD5 or CD5D?
For 5D contingent on passage of the PSA that we will go back to in a few minutes.
My colleague, Lisa, would you like to state that motion for us? Contingent.
Let's have Mr. Gary state that motion for us. Would that be okay?
I just wanna make sure it's a motion to approve a zoning classification of CD5, contingent upon the PSA request being approved.
Which we'll go back to.
Yes.
Are you still good with that, Mr. Prather? Okay, and I'm looking for a second.
I second it.
All right, we're gonna second that by Mr. Gleason, and this is for approval.
Pending the PSA.
Pending the PSA.
Thank you.
Because we can't.
Yes.
We can't because PSA isn't there. We're right, well, let's vote.
Oh, my gosh, I am so sorry, y'all. We're gonna have to do it again?
That was just a practice. Let's do it again.
It was, the suspense.
It's good to practice.
All right.
Practice is good.
All right, Mr. Scott. Okay, the motion passes 6 to 1.
All right. So now-
I'll go back to the PSA, Mayor.
Mr. Gary, we need to go back to the PSA. Do I need a motion to reconsider?
Yes, Mayor, just, and just to clarify, not a motion to reconsider the overall item, a motion to reconsider the original vote.
Just the PSA?
Yes, on the PSA, and that takes the two-thirds for five votes to carry the reconsideration.
Okay, and so the first thing, the motion is just, do we want to go back and talk about it? And if that passes with the two-thirds, then we go back and talk about it and re-vote.
Motion to reconsider the PSA.
All right. So reconsider, Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather, and we're ready to vote on whether we're gonna go back and talk about the PSA again.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 1.
All right. So now, Item 8's back on the table. Do we, we need a motion to do that, to pass?
So you're, you're, oh? You already had the motion to go back and reconsider it, so you have a standing, you have a motion to approve that failed, and the, somebody on the prevailing side of that, if they're willing to take that vote up a second time, you can make that motion.
Motion to reconsider the PSA.
No, we did that.
Motion to approve.
Exactly.
Thank you.
We're just looking for a motion on Item 8.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather. Y'all wanna discuss it anymore?
No.
You don't need to. We're getting ready to vote, because I don't see anybody wanting to talk about it.
Mayor, may I ask a quick question when you're done with the vote?
Yes, ma'am.
The vote can happen first.
Okay.
Okay, the motion passes 6 to 1.
All right, yes, ma'am.
Okay, we have a handful of conditions that I have not prepared language for, and I think probably 10 minutes, 15 minutes with the applicant, if I can just take them down the hall, we can probably come up with some language that then you have in front of you for the vote.
So how about we go back and do the things that we pulled from consent and give y'all a few minutes? Is that what you're looking for?
That was one of my recommendations. I know I have some counterparts in the back who hopefully are listening, that their items are coming up now, that would probably love to come out and take care of those.
To those in the conference room, we're gonna talk about 2, 5, and 6. Come on back.
Can we take, can we take a five minute and then do their-
These won't take that long, and then we'll take a break.
That's fine.
So if they will come back, in the meantime, would you read Item 2 for us?
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-14 on the second of two readings, omitting Chapter 34, Article 7, rental property standards of the San Marcos City Code by updating the regulations governing short-term rentals, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of conflicting ordinances, and providing effective date.
All right. This is?
Motion to approve.
You may certainly say a motion to approve. That would be fine, and then I'm going to go to Mr. Carr. Yes, I'm gonna go to Mr. Carr for Item 2.
I'm sorry, Mayor, who seconded?
Uh, hang on a second, I gotta write stuff down. I don't think I got a second on this. It was a motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by-
I will second that.
Thank you, Mr. Mendoza.
Thank you.
Mr. Carr.
We're requesting that this be postponed till the next meeting to clear up some little errors that we have.
Yeah, there were still some questions, so thank you.
I'll make my motion to postpone then.
No, we're gonna do, motion to postpone is second to motions to approve, but you can make a motion to postpone.
Motion to postpone.
All right. All right, uh, motion to postpone.
I'll second that.
Seconded by Mr. Prather. Any questions? I'm doing this by the book, so nothing comes back to bite us. Mr. Prather? You're going to have to hit it again, Mr. Gonzalez. Sometimes you got to hit it twice.
All right. The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, so thank you so much, and now let's go with items five. Page is finished now.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-50 approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of San Marcos and the San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District, providing for the shared use of facilities for youth-related programs and activities, and providing for the waiver of starting facility rental fees in connection with such uses, and declare an effective date.
Motion to approve.
Seconded by?
I'll second that.
Motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Can I assume that's for approval?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you, and this is something, do y'all want to just speak to this?
Yes, I would like to address.
Thank you.
We just had one small change that the mayor had brought to our attention. So under six point one, under scheduling coordination, we did specify who with the district we would be coordinating with. So that's the director of maintenance and construction with the school district.
Thank you. I've called the district trying to find information before. It's not easy.
Yeah, or to know who's doing what.
Well, and this actually says who's going to be responsible, which I needed in our contract to know, so this is good. But thank you for coming up with this whole concept and doing this agreement. I think this is wonderful. So kudos to y'all and whoever put this together, and thank you to the school district too.
Of course.
All right, so that is a motion, I'll make the motion to amend to do that. I'm looking for a second. Seconded by Mr. Scott. Let's vote on the amendment.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
And let's vote on the motion as amended.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
Seven oh, seven oh. Item six, please.
Yes, consider approval of resolution 2024-51R approving a memorandum of understanding between the city of San Marcos and San Marcos Consolidated Independent School District aligned for the use of school facilities by the city in response to emergencies and declare an effective date.
Looking for, was that a motion to approve, Mr. Scott? You got it. Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. That was for approval. Mr. Fitch.
Yep, I'm Fitch with the emergency management coordinator. We had a couple of changes, misspellings, not on my part, but I have misspellings on there.
I think that second one was just something funky acrobat did.
Yeah, I just kind of, let's see, the other question that you had a few questions that you wanted answered on the inspections and those issues?
Yeah, my question was simply, when we're going to use their facility, it's sort of like renting, and usually you look to see what might be out of place, so that if it's out of place later, we know that if it was that way when we got there or not. And I understand, this is all on the message board, y'all read the message board, that you're not going to be able to access the facilities until we need them, and then, and like I acknowledge, you're going to be doing other things.
Well, we do, we have a team, we go over, we walk through the facility before it's set up, make sure if there are any damages or whatever, we note those before we agree to open up the, as a shelter.
And before, would you let folks in?
Correct.
Fabulous, okay. So I will make a motion to amend, to fix these items. I'm looking for a second.
Second.
Second to Mr. Mendoza. Let's vote, any questions? Let's vote on the amendment.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
And let's vote on the main motion. I know she got to reset. I got to give her time.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you, thank you all, and yes, we will now take a break. Let's take a break till nine forty. Back at nine forty-four, and we are not ready to do items ten and eleven, so we're going to bump up to item twelve, and we'll go to items ten and eleven, whatever the staff tells us that they are ready to do so. Mr. Vina, would you read item twelve, please?
Consider approval of ordinance 2024-17 on the first of two readings, omitting chapter eighty-six, article two, division two, water conservation. The city code pertaining to the use of water restrictions during drought conditions, providing a savings clause, providing for the repeal of any conflicting provisions, and provide an effective date.
A motion to approve.
Thank you, Mr. Prather.
I'll second that.
Motion to approve by Mr. Prather, seconded by Mr. Mendoza. Mr. Kite.
Paul Kite, Assistant Director, Utilities. We did the work session presentation, it is in the packet, and I'm just here to answer any questions or follow-up that you guys have on the proposed changes.
Okay, are you aware of the concerns that Ms. Parker of the San Marcos River Foundation brought up at citizen comment at three o'clock?
Yes, yeah, I was listening into that.
Okay.
I can go ahead and comment on that.
Please.
So we do include both Edwards Aquifer reductions and Canyon Lake reductions in our figures of total capacity in the new plan. So those are both incorporated. With today sitting at six forty point three on the ten-day average, we're in stage two at Edwards Aquifer, looking at that, knowing that it's six hundred and thirty-eight feet, and we're going to go to stage three very soon with the Edwards Aquifer and Canyon Lake currently in stage two, that would give us a total capacity with Alliance water of thirteen point eight-two million gallons per day. That's total capacity over the average, not total capacity that we could pump, but that's the number that we would use based on the nine point five million gallon a day average that we're using currently. It would put us right at about sixty-eight percent of capacity. If we go with the stage three restrictions we know that are coming, that would put us at seventy percent, which would put us in the stage one restrictions of the proposed new ordinance.
Okay, I'm still, and I'm sorry if I'm not, not following. What eighty-six oh five eight says is the director shall issue notices to implement, implement or terminate drought response stages based on, it says, any one or a combination of the following. And I think her point was we needed to put more emphasis on Edwards Aquifer levels, not let it be just something that's not here and not considered Edwards Aquifer. So does this mean that we're looking at that J seventeen and Edwards Aquifer always?
We are always looking at it. So the current reduction for the J seventeen well, our total capacity is four point eight-five MGD on average. What we would figure since we're in stage two is three point three-nine million gallons. So it's included in our total capacity with the reduction.
Is that in the ordinance, or is that something that, some policy and procedure that you use?
It's what we would propose to use, so if you look at the slide eleven on those proposed.
Slide eleven? Oh, of your presentation?
Yes.
Okay, I will do that, thank you. Slide eleven.
Eleven.
Are you talking about the average daily consumption where it changes the percentages?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes, so the Edwards Aquifer total percentage is actually four point eight-five max capacity, but we would bring that down to whatever stage we're currently in. So if we went down to stage three, that would be a three point one-five that we would use there as our total capacity.
I don't think that's reflected in the ordinance itself, and she was probably looking at the ordinance, and so whenever something is, is not actually in an ordinance, and there's staff changes and other things happen, sometimes it's, things get missed.
Yes.
This is first reading, I think?
Yes.
Okay, counsel, do y'all want to see that change in the ordinance made for second reading?
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay.
I do have a question there.
Is it, is it on that?
Yeah. The only other places, those are the only two places we get our water from, right?
Currently, yes. Alliance will come in online July first is the anticipated date, so there's going to be an extra two point four million gallons of capacity.
Right, we bought a well years, maybe two or three years ago for Willow Creek in Lower States.
The Crystal Clear?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, is that in production as well, or?
It is currently in production. It is currently serves that whole area purely with groundwater. We do have, we do have made tie-ins to both our main pressure zone on the lower side and to our upper zone on the upper side to backfeed in case of an emergency, and we have an issue with that well, so that it wouldn't just be without water. So we've got two interconnects to our different zones.
And it's starting to pay for itself, because we paid a pretty good penny for it.
Yeah, there's.
It will.
Yes.
Okay, that's all I have.
It was a good buy.
Yes.
It was a good buy.
And it did fill a donut hole in our CCN as well.
Exactly, that's what I mean, it was a good buy. Yeah, I think the concern is that if the Edwards gets really low, but we've got other water supply, that we not ignore that, because people are going to say, what happened to the river? But yet, we're not in a drought stage of two or three, so.
So I ran a scenario where we ran kind of our max at ten point five million gallons per day average last year in July. If we did that, and we were in stage three of Canyon Lake, which is probably going to be the case this summer, and stage four at Edwards Aquifer, we would be right at that eighty percent threshold and go to stage three basically. Because we are using both Canyon Lake and Edwards Aquifer levels to help determine not just Edwards Aquifer. Canyon Lake's in a pretty dire situation also.
And that was at the ten million? That was at the ten million?
Ten point five million, yeah.
Yeah, I think that what we're wanting is just for what's in the presentation
Yes.
to be codified, and here however y'all choose to do that, but we, I don't want to do any amending tonight. We can go on second reading. Bishop Battalion, is that okay?
Yes, Mayor, the ordinance reads right now that the director will develop that criteria as a separate document. So I guess I would defer back to the department to see if that's something that they can do within the next couple of weeks. Otherwise, what we can do is, on second reading, provide that additional information, maybe not in the ordinance, but as a backup as far as what the proposed rules are for those triggers.
Would it be an attachment to the ordinance in the grand scheme of things, eventually?
The way it's written right now, it is not. It's referenced as a separate document. I'll defer to legal if, if I'm incorrect on that, but.
I've been here a long time, and things sometimes get lost, especially when there's personnel changes. I'm not comfortable with it.
You wanted to.
But this, but the ordinance does reference that document.
It does.
What do y'all think?
Well, I just have a question, if I can just kind of dumb this down to anybody who doesn't know the gallon maximum capacity and things like that. So what we're looking at doing here for the Guadalupe Blanco River Authority, the Edwards Aquifer, Alliance, and Canyon Region, which we all are going to be taking part in water from all four of those, whichever falls down to the lowest level, or whichever we feel is drought-worthy, we're going to look at all four of them and say, okay, this one's down the lowest, we're going to go ahead and go to the drought stage at this point. We're not just going to kind of collectively take the average, we're going to look at the lowest one and say, okay, we're going to follow that standard now.
Is that what we're doing, Mr. Kite?
No, we would actually take the whole capacity. So if G B R A was in stage two, we're going to use their stage two allocation that would be given as far as reduction. And if Edwards Aquifer's in stage three, we would use that number, and it would be a collective total of all the drought restrictions in a total capacity.
Again, I just don't want the fact that we have Alliance water coming mean that we're ignoring the other two.
Yes, no, they are factored in.
Okay, I still am going to be more comfortable voting for this if I can see what that is. So we can just, we can pass this tonight, and y'all can hold that second reading until you're ready for, you know, a couple of meetings, whatever it takes. Are we good with that? Give them some time to do it, I don't want to rush it. Is that good? Okay, y'all bring it back when you're ready. Okay, counsel, with that understanding, then are y'all ready to vote on this one?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, Mr. Vina will vote? Oh, she's already got a second set up.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right, thank you so much, Mr. Kite. All right, let's go on to item thirteen.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-45R approving the 2024 City of San Marcos Hazard Mitigation Action Plan, authorizing final submission to both the Texas Division Emergency Management and the Federal Emergency Management Agency, and declare an effective date.
Looking for a motion? Motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Mendoza. I assume that was for approval. And are there any questions? Because Mr. Fitch is here to answer anything and everything that we might ask about that. How many pages was that document?
A lot.
A lot, I'm with you on that. I'm good with it. Thank you for being here, in case we had a question.
Before we go, I just want to put on record, this project, by the way, was brought up by my assistant coordinator, Reese Martin.
All right.
He started it, finished it, put it all together, so I want to give him kudos for that.
Thank you so much. Clearly, this was a huge project and a needed one, so thank you so very much.
Thank you very much.
Appreciate it. Mr. Scott? We were waiting on you to vote, sir.
Oh, I'm sorry.
The motion passes seven to zero.
All right, and I think we're going to go on to item fourteen.
Consider approval of resolution 2024-55R appointing a council member to the mental health coordinating committee of the Hayes County Behavioral Advisory Team and declare an effective date.
I'm going to nominate Ms. Garza.
Okay, we have a nomination of Ms. Garza by Mr. Scott, which does not need a second, I don't believe. Are there any other nominations? I'm with it. Are you willing?
Yes.
Okay. Presentation?
I have no presentation.
Here for, here to answer questions?
I can explain it for the benefit of our citizens, but I have no presentation.
Sure.
Can we have a motion? I'm sorry, Mayor.
Well, um.
It's a resolution. Okay, sorry.
Wait a minute, it says, oh, I'm sorry, so we do need a second. So I'm going to give Mr. Scott that, and I'll second it, and now we can move on. Thank you. Is that all we need to do? Okay.
All right, for the benefit of our citizens, stands standards, police chief. In 2021, shortly after I got here, we conducted a SIM workshop. SIM is an acronym that stands for sequential intercept model. It was facilitated by the Health and Human Services Commission. We had about seventy-two stakeholders from across the county and the cities attend. And we mapped out the deficiencies and/or the needs for improvements as it relates to mental health services for clients across Hayes County. From that grew a leadership collaborative in 2021. That collaborative is called the Behavioral Advisory Team, BAT. The BAT has met consistently for well over a year. We meet every month. I chair, along with Judge Elaine Brown, the BAT. The deficiency of the BAT, Behavioral Advisory Team, is it all has a nexus to criminal justice. The problem is, as it relates to mental health, so many other issues are being unaddressed. So we have had conversations internally for probably the last five to six months about how to broaden the scope of what we want to do for mental health. So from that conversation grew this concept of, we want to have three subcommittees. The BAT Behavioral Advisory Team, which will have a criminal justice nexus, youth mental health services, and adult mental health services. Those three committees will be considered the experts in their respective fields to enhance services for mental health clients. But they need to be supported, basically, by a committee that we are calling the Mental Health Coordinating Committee. So the vision is that the Mental Health Coordinating Committee would have a governing entity representative from the cities, from the county, from our local mental health authority, and that they would be willing to meet to determine how best to support the three committees that are trying to get the work done. So in other words, we're trying to engage our government stakeholders, like you, to come together through the Mental Health Coordinating Committee to help coordinate efforts to bolster what we're doing within these subcommittees. So that's what we're doing this evening.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Good work being done, and thank you, Ms. Garza, for being willing to take your time to do this. Appreciate it. I'd have nominated you if Mr. Scott hadn't jumped in there first. Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Scott, seconded by me, to approve this resolution, appointing a council member who is Alyssa Garza. That's what we're voting on. Let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
All right. And it looks like perhaps Ms. Hernandez is here and we're ready to do items 10 and 11? Did I buy you enough time?
You did. Enough time to fill my water, right conditions, and get my charger because my phone's, my battery's almost dead.
Okay.
Yes, I am ready when y'all are.
Okay. Please, y'all, y'all, okay. So we need to read item 10. That's, that's where we are, correct? Ms. Hernandez, we need to read item 10 into the record?
Yes, item 10.
Start talking about that? Okay. Item 10. Ms. Vina.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing to receive comments for or against resolution 2024-53R, approving a request for a conditional use permit to allow proposed built student housing development generally located on the south side of Lindsay Street between North Comanche Street and North Street and southwest of intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street, authorizing city staff to issue a conditional use permit consistent with this resolution and declare an effective date and consider approval of resolution 2024-53R.
Presentation, Ms. Hernandez.
Right, Mayor Council, Amanda Hernandez, Director of Planning and Development Services. This conditional use permit request is for the use of purpose-built student housing, which is defined as multifamily, which is designed, marketed, or used for the primary purpose of housing college students. Approving this use would allow units with more than three bedrooms and change the parking calculation as we've discussed at length in, in the zoning change, and we can discuss it more. The applicant has agreed to conditions related to their leasing structure if the CUP is approved. But I did want to point out that rent-by-the-bed leases can happen anywhere. It's not just student housing. I could rent my house out by the bedroom the same way a, a large multifamily complex rents their units out by the bedroom. So we're not talking about the lease structure so much, even though we will talk about it a little bit. We're really talking about that design market and use for students. Next slide. This is the parking table that I mentioned earlier. At our last meeting, we talked about parking at complexes downtown. And this table shows that our parking previously was calculated downtown with a 30% reduction because it was part of what we called a transit-oriented development in the SMART code. So there was an automatic reduction taken off the top. We've had one property, one project, that has been built under our new development code, which is, we call it Lofts Two. It's the parlor, the south parlor that's on San Antonio Street. They've actually overparked because they are accommodating the parking for Lofts One or the parlor that fronts on Hopkins Street. So they have quite a bit of parking there in that project.
Proceed. I'll address that later.
This request for student housing is for the full three-acre site. Next slide. However, we have been discussing potentially not approving the conditional use permit to allow purpose-built student housing on the west side of North Street. So all of the maps will show the full three-acre site because that's how the project was noticed and that's how we created our maps. But really, we're focusing the purpose-built student housing now on what we're calling the east side of the development. And we'll go to the next slide. We talked about the historic structures. We'll get to that in a moment. This area has some history that I wanted to bring up. In 2017, when the property was zoned SMART code, it was already zoned SMART code as part of the 2008 Downtown Master Plan. We did a rezoning of the area. And City Council in 2017 approved the use of purpose-built student housing through, at the time, what was called a warrant for a portion of the property east of North Street. So not the long skinny piece over by Comanche, but the square, more or less, that is already Character District Five. That approval was actually tied to a specific person who subsequently passed away. And because it was tied to that person, the approval went away because, because there was no one to issue the permits to. So we're proposing that this conditional use permit actually be more of an overlay like they typically are and run with the land. In 2001, a conditional use permit request was denied by Planning and Zoning Commission and was subsequently withdrawn. And that was again for the land east of North Street. Next slide. We have a graphic provided by the developer to show the context of the area, which is Texas State University Student Housing, Multifamily, and specifically those projects we've discussed that had been purchased by Texas State. Next slide. If the zoning ordinance is approved on second reading, the properties will be zoned based on your previous approval, Character District Five D and Character District Five. And a note that I don't need to say because we already went through the zoning. So let's go ahead and skip ahead to the next slide, which is the concept plan, which we've had in the packet for the other proj, the other items. But I just wanted to bring it to your attention at this time so you can kind of see that layout. We had talked about the location of the parking behind the main building, kind of backing up to that other complex. And really, you can start to see that streetscape that this project will provide by moving those buildings up to the street and also providing the streetscape improvements. Next slide. San Marcos Development Code includes criteria for approval that we've included in the presentation. Overall, there are 12 criteria for purpose-built student housing. And staff found the request consistent with seven of the criteria, and there are two that are inconsistent. The first is specifically adoption of a neighborhood character study or area plan, and I'll talk about that in just a moment. If we can go to the next slide. In summary, for those criteria that are consistent, the student housing use is compatible with the surrounding area, which we've discussed. And then we'll also get the downtown design standards, specifically for the property zone, Character District Five Downtown, required by code. Next slide. And the development is near the university. There is a proposed condition related to energy efficiency of the building, which is one of the criteria for this particular request. Next slide. For the two criteria where staff indicated the request was inconsistent, that was in reference to the recently adopted Downtown Master Plan. The plan doesn't speak very specifically to student housing, but where housing is referenced, the plan says that non-student options are needed and housing should be marketed to everyone. So because of that central conflict with the downtown plan, even though the code criteria say we should recommend approval, the downtown area plan kind of gives us another, another way to look at this particular area. So if we can go to the next slide. Staff had made a neutral recommendation, but provided a laundry list of conditions that the Planning and Zoning Commission could consider. And I'm actually going to have Hayden pull up. I just made a quick Word document with the developer of the conditions approved by Planning and Zoning Commission, the additional conditions we talked about this evening, and then one potential modification. I do want to clarify after a meeting with the developer this evening that the concessions that are being made on the conditional use permit for them are contingent on the seven-story approval. So we may need to talk about the height a little bit. And only the height alternative compliance east of North Street. So while the packet will show that it's for the full three-acre property, they're, they only need the additional two stories east of North Street. So if we can just maybe zoom into the, the text a little bit, Hayden. I am going to be running through these very briefly. Condition number one just says the development shall register with the San Marcos Long-Term Rental Registration Program, which is a requirement of Chapter 37 of the city's Code of Ordinances. Condition number two is in reference to the high and medium priority structures, that they be integrated into the development or relocated. And working with the developer, we actually proposed some alternate language that works in that one year that the developer is willing to give for someone to potentially, if, if his agreements fall through, that he would give someone up to a year to come through and try to, try to save those structures and keep them in San Marcos. So the proposed condition, as it's worded, is the developer agrees to a maximum demolition delay of one calendar year from the date of application in the event the buildings are unable to be relocated. There is some concern that the structural integrity of those buildings may not lend them to be moved. They may collapse. They may have serious structural damage. So they would need to go through the process with our chief building official, looking at the, you know, property maintenance code and all of those things to make sure that the, the structures are safe when they're moving them, safe when they place them down at their new location. So if for some reason that cannot be done safely, the developer would initiate the demolition application, but wait a year instead of six months and, and allow that time. The third condition recommended by Planning and Zoning Commission just states that the development has to comply with the development code. So while we have renderings and different things in the packet, they will have to comply with all of the code requirements for articulation and site layout and things like that. As well as the additional condition, we'll talk about 80% impervious cover. We'll double check all of those things at the site permit and building permit stage. Number four states that the project shall not charge tenants a separate fee to utilize the parking garage. There's a star behind that because the applicant would like that removed, and I will let him speak to that. We have in the past heard that students are parking in the neighborhood because they don't want to pay the fee to park in the garage. But since then, and I confirmed with Chief Standridge, even though it's not in his, in his department, that we have in fact increased our parking enforcement. So we're seeing less parking in some of the neighborhoods. Number five, condition number five references the lease language. This comes directly from our development code where it essentially says that if the building is not constructed and leases have already been signed, the developer has to do one of two things. They have to provide housing for the student in the lease or they have to allow the student, or the, the tenant really, to terminate that lease if they've, if they are unable to comply with their end of having the building ready.
And that's in our code?
That is in our code. This is verbatim from the code, just as a reminder that this will need to be in that lease and posted on their website as well, which we will verify. If we can go down to, move six up to the top there. Number six has to do with the parking and the parking fee-in-lue, which we talked about. In Character District Five D, for student housing specifically, the developer has the ability to pay a fee-in-lue for some of their parking. And this condition would state that they have to provide at least one, at least 0.85 parking spaces per bedroom for the property east of North Street, where the student housing would potentially be approved. But for the west of North Street portion of the property, they would follow the development code, which is the one per unit. And they are proposing that all of the parking be shared in the center building. Condition number seven is in reference to the expiration of the conditional use permit. It is common that we put an expiration date on these, and this expiration is within three years. If the applicant is not making progress in going to construction, if we haven't seen a replat for the property or a watershed protection plan or a site permit in three years, then this approval would expire and we would have to come back and reconsider the merits of the case again. Condition number eight is in reference to the leases that the developer, the development shall offer both rent-by-the-bedroom leases and conventional leases where the apartment may be rented in their entirety. So it would be up to the tenant, but they would have the option to be able to choose which lease they would prefer.
And this is for all three?
This would be for the entire project, yes. And we're going to, we're going to, we're going to tie it with a pretty bow, I think, in condition number 13. I, I hope. We'll see. All right. Condition number nine, and nine and 10 also came from Planning and Zoning Commission. We're still on their conditions, that they will be a minimum of silver in the lead green building program. And they have to show that they have done that prior to issuance of certificate of occupancy. Condition number 10 is related to the current tenants, that they shall be given a minimum of six months' notice to find other accommodations. The recommendation here is that we add to the end of that sentence, and up to five families will be offered a comparable rent within the new development. We then have a few additional conditions. The first being that the property west of North Street shall not exceed four stories in height and shall be limited to three bedrooms per unit. The impervious cover for that land shall be limited to 80%. The developer shall not sell the property to a non-taxpaying entity for five years from the date of approval. And the property west of North Street shall comply with all of the conditions above, but shall not meet the definition of student housing, which means it won't be designed, marketed, and all of that for students specifically. So that makes that west side of North Street more traditional student housing, east side of North Street more student housing oriented. And then we also talk about the sharing of the amenities in the alternative compliance. We could add it here, but it was already over there. So I think we are good there. And with that, I will conclude my presentation.
Okay. I'm, I'm going to have questions, but, okay, I need to have the public hearing at this point. So I will open the public hearing on item 10. Our first five will come as no surprise to anyone because I see a pattern for this evening. Ian Roberts, Shannon Mattingly, Terrio, Matt Kenyon, and Joe Erdiljack. And you have up to three minutes, name and address as always. And then I will call the folks after that who are signed up. Welcome back.
Thanks for having me. Ian Roberts live at 111 Peacock Trail in Buta, Texas. I have no further comments, but as always, here for questions. Should they arise?
Thank you so much. Ms. Mattingly.
I'm just going to say the same thing. We're available for any questions. And the applicant has agreed to the conditions that Ms. Hernandez has put before you tonight. We're happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Mr. Terrio. All right. Ms. Kenyon. All right. Joe? All right. I'm going to call their names because they signed up. I'm not sure if they're here. We'll find out. Andrew Salem. Andrew Groeschel. Abby Recelmi. Isla Ruiz. Darla Munoz. Did you want to speak again? Okay. Now's the time. Well, you're, you're next. And then there, there's a few people after you, but you're, you're next.
Darla Munoz, 1128 West Martin Luther King Drive. So what I see happening here is essentially that he is building a dorm for Texas State. Two years after the apartment complex is completed, within five years from now, Texas State will purchase this property. You'll get two years of taxes out of them. It's student purpose-built. If you pass this resolution. It's high intensity. He's going to go up seven stories. And the university has already said that it's cheaper to buy than build. So you're getting two, maybe three years of taxes out of this property. And that's very disappointing. Thank you.
Our next speaker is Jared Chumsey. Oh, he's still here. Good.
I'm here sticking it out with the rest of y'all. I appreciate y'all's time. My name is Jared Chumsey. I live at 114 Lady Bird Lane, San Marcos, Texas. Again, I'm a volunteer with TAG. I'm actually speaking on this agenda item to highlight the fact that I think that the CUP needs to be stronger, not just for this development, but in general. To my understanding, and I'm not an expert, but to my understanding, the CUP is really the only regulatory mechanism for the city to prevent purpose-built student housing from spreading across the entire city, as well as rent-by-the-bed leasing, which is very predatory, and I'll talk about that. And I do, I appreciate city staff's, you know, distinction that we're talking about purpose-built student housing. But I do think that there is a significant link between the two. How are they connected? Well, there's a city ordinance that was passed in 2016, number 201624, that actually defines purpose-built student housing. So this has been a problem at least since then, but probably goes back even further. And I just wanted to highlight that it defines purpose-built student housing as one or more buildings designed, marketed, or used for the primary purpose of housing students. And I think that the key element here is marketing because what we see on Texas State campus is a lot of these predatory complexes coming onto campus and preying on first-year students who have only been here for two months. And they're being asked to sign these leases upfront, oftentimes 10 months before they actually even move in to the apartment complex. And the whole point of having a CUP in the first place for purpose-built student housing is to prevent, there was a, there was, you know, one complex that I'm thinking of in particular that didn't finish construction in time for the fall semester, and those students had nowhere to live, right? And so that's a big concern for this development and for any other development that is going to be, you know, moving forward. But let's back up a bit. Rent-by-the-bed is a leasing model. You all know what it is, more or less. But it's a disaster for students and seriously undermines student retention at Texas State. I'm an employee and I've heard numerous horror stories. But you don't have to take my word for it. According to the Attorney for Students at Texas State, in fall of 2023, 48% of all of the caseload that came before them was leasing disputes. But 90% of those leasing disputes stemmed from rent-by-the-bed leasing. Students are signing these way ahead of time. There's a roommate matching system that is oftentimes random. There's a roommate matching system that is oftentimes random and students end up living with families of three, right? Because regular San Martians don't have any other place to live, other than these predatory leasing models. You, you also sign away your rights to class action lawsuits. You waive security deposits, which actually triggers something in the property code that allows the developers to put four years of damages on you if anything happens after you move out. And the list goes on, I'm not gonna keep going because we'll be here all night. So until the city designs a CUP that truly limits the spread of this, I think that council should really consider.
Your time to speak is up.
Thank you very much for your consideration.
Next is Clay Smith. And he says he'll pass. And did Joan Bird ever get here? Nope, okay. Anyone in the audience or in the foyer wish to speak far against or about? In which case we'll go to Ms. Coppaletta.
You are so sweet, let me go last, mayor. Hi, y'all, my name is Lisa Marie Coppaletta, I live at 1322 Belvin. The students are giving solid analysis and their voices are not being valued, nor is the input from this community. I'm not sure what the purpose of the public outreach for all of these initiatives is and the public hearings, if your minds are already made up. This area should have already been a historical boundary with an expansion and the speaker that talked about this neighborhood losing its character is actually making the argument for us and that is why we were concerned about the domino effect. The approval of the warrant was the type of city council was the reason why many of us campaigned and voted for you. It is a fallacy to divert responsibility that you as elected officials to protect public safety for special interests that slip you cash during your campaigns. Many residents were in motels for six months after the flooding. My comments on that video that Al Jazeera played worldwide were during the public participation process during the vote, when politicians laughed at the citizens, just like you're doing tonight. Our community was mobilized. Some of, some of you, and you know who you are, were nowhere to be found, which begs the question why you would run as an advocate for stopping flooding? Just be honest about it, y'all, I'm pro-developer. We trusted that the trauma would be rechanneled to be a watchdog so that others would not endure what my dear friend Daniel said, which is exact quote that one of you stated tonight. He said, "I live in this neighborhood, it will never flood, I would never vote for that." That was verbatim what I heard from one of the people on the dice tonight. I spliced every speech, I remember Ollie Giles talking about putting kids in boats. I remember Lisa in her spunk, I remember Melissa Derrick in her, her humor. I did not see you, Mark and Matthew. And Shane, I took a risk campaigning for you and telling the public that you had learned your lesson. Alyssa, I'm not sure if you value equity or if it's just a pretty word, I'm very confused. It seems like if we had a nuclear power plant over a cave system, then that would be okay as long as we labeled it affordable housing. The fact that Mark was so angry when he made that, that motion was a bizarre form of lateral oppression and it's very concerning to many in this community. It's a manufactured housing crisis and all of the language like HN 3.1, implementation of transition zones and buffers and other tools to ensure compatibility between buildings and neighborhoods was crafted by people that live in this neighborhood. So just be honest, the public engagement is all smoke and mirrors, it's not an equitable situation. It's a manufactured public input process where those with deep pockets are who you will ultimately vie for. It's not about public input at these public hearings or citizen comments or all of the outreach efforts for the comprehensive plan, the historical resources survey, all the land development code. It is all for naught because when we have elected officials that at the end of the day have their minds made up due to their, their listening to special interests, it's really a waste of our time. Thank you for your time and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing and I await a motion.
Motion to approve.
On item 10, motion by Mr. Gleason, seconded by Mr. Prather. Did you have anything else for us? Ms., Ms. Hernandez, are you waiting for questions?
I think I'm waiting for questions.
Okay. And I wish I had asked for us to each have a copy of the.
I think I can print them from my computer right now to the printer right behind Mr. Pantalian if he would want to go grab them for you.
That would be fabulous.
And mayor, if I, can I get clarification?
You bet.
The motion to approve just the CUP or as presented by staff?
Hold on. I want to do this cleaner. Let's do a motion for the CUP. No, but at least at CUP, and I'm, I'm fine if you want to say all the, what was it, fifteen?
Fourteen, and I was gonna say with CUP with the agreed recommendation.
Would you like to make a motion to amend to add those?
Yes.
Okay, that's.
Oh yeah, because we need an amendment to add those other ones in, thank you.
Glad to, I just wanted to clarify what is intentional.
Thank you for, so we have.
With the recommendations and the additional recommendations.
Good point. Anybody want to second that?
Second.
Seconded by Mr. Prather, okay. So I can go first if y'all are still contemplating or y'all can go first, whichever you like. I've got my list ready, okay.
Mayor, could I clarify the second? I'm sorry, I was printing. Who was the second?
Ms. Prather.
Mr. Prather, and it was approval with all of the, everything that we just presented.
And then amendment to, with, what'd you say, the conditions and the more conditions?
Recommendations and then the additional recommendations.
It's the list that you just showed us, which is why I'm wanting a paper copy to put in my file. Okay, so the reason why I was making faces when you said the parlor has plenty of parking, I've got a friend who lived there and when she moved in, didn't have a car, didn't need parking space. Then they decided they'd buy a car. So they go to the parlor and they say, hey, we need one of those parking spaces, we're willing to pay for it. We don't have any. Okay, waited for a while, noticed there seemed to be some vacant spaces. Go back, say, hey, we would like one of those. This is what she told me, they told her. We're saving those for people who are looking at the parlor to make sure that we can bring in those new people and know we're not going to have one for you. That tells me they don't have oodles of parking available. Now that was year before last? I don't know that that could have changed that much since then. So that's why I was making a face, is I'm not so sure that they have oodles, they may have some.
I, I think, I was trying to state that they were overparked based on the minimum requirement in code. So yes, I, I don't disagree that there may be some parking issues at that particular location. But I had not heard the reasoning for, for maintaining parking spaces before.
Oh yeah, they, they had a, a few, but they weren't going to let their existing person have it because they had her on the hook and they were going to wait and see if somebody else wanted to come.
Thank you, Mr. Pantalian.
Yes, thank you. On the demolition, it says one year from application. Which application?
It would be the demolition permit application.
All right. It doesn't say that, it just says application, but it wouldn't be to their advantage to use an old application because that would give them less time, so I guess that's okay. It's kind of implied, but I, I don't, I hate to leave my pulse.
Do we need to amend that, mayor, and add that in there?
No, be, because if, if, if they wanted to use an older date, it gives them less time. So it's to our advantage to go with, I think we're okay. Parking. If we're gonna go with five D on the west part, which is one spot per unit?
Five, no D.
Correct.
Yes.
I'm sorry, I'm so used to saying five D. Five, no D on the west side. That's already giving them a break on the parking. And we've already said it could be, I'm not gonna say average, but it can be combined with the other. So that's gonna give a really big break on parking. I'm not so sure that I want to do the point eight five, but I don't know what the numbers are. It may actually turn out to be that. I don't know. But I'm not looking at giving a break here when he's actually gonna get a break through the ones.
It was one, one, one oh five on the west side and eighty-five on the east side, I thought, is that correct?
The way code is worded, it's one per unit on the west and one point oh five per bedroom on the east. The applicant's requesting a, the applicant is actually requesting a reduction to point seven five on the east and staff is recommending point eight five, which came actually from the previous approval by council in 2017 and is not quite as much as what we used to give, which was point seven.
But no variance on the west, we're talking about a variance potentially on the east portion.
East side only.
But my, my, part of my comfort level with the, the five, the CD five, was that the parking, we would still have enough parking because if we go with the point eight five, which we think we need for a five D, which is by the bedroom, and they get the one per unit, that's a third because it's an average.
We were actually averaging two bedrooms per unit. If they have, if they have only one, two and three bedroom units, it would probably average out closer to two.
But it's still more than, it's, it's a better deal than the point eight five.
Potentially, without having run the actual numbers, it's hard to tell.
I don't think it's gonna be, we're probably talking a handful of spaces here with it only being three stories. I don't think it's that much of a difference. Yeah, probably a handful of spaces.
But it may be, it, it may be the difference in having enough and not having enough.
The numbers in my head, it's probably like, I don't know, ten or twelve spaces or something.
Okay, so I'm going to ask Mr. Kenyon a question. If you have units available, but no parking spaces and someone comes to you and says, I would dearly love to rent this beautiful new place. I would love to live here, but I have a car. And you don't have a place for that car, what are you gonna do with them? Hold on, let me repeat the question for, from Ms. Garza. If he is, the parking is full, he has no more space for cars, but he has apartment units. And someone comes in and says, I would like to rent an apartment, but I have a car that I need to park here. Will you tell them the same as if you were, the apartment part were full? Or do we have somebody that's gonna say they don't have a car when they do, that's not on you and they're gonna be parking somewhere that we're not happy with?
I mean, they would have, if, if I truly didn't have any spaces, I'd just have to tell them I don't have any spaces available, right?
They could leave their car at home?
They could, well, they probably would go down the road and rent at another apartment complex.
Are there spaces nearby that they can rent individually? I thought they weren't renting to anybody that didn't live there.
No, I'm saying that they may not rent at my, they may not rent an apartment unit for me. They may go down the road and rent from someone else.
Oh, you mean an apartment, okay, I thought you meant a parking space.
Right, a different apartment, so I, potentially I could lose an apartment lease over that. Since I'm up here, can I, can I ask one question?
Sure.
I did, I forgot to address this and I apologize.
Go ahead, that's, that's fine.
It was number five and it was, we, it was suggested that there was no extra fee for parking, right? So that, there was no additional fee for students for parking.
Oh yeah, that's number four now.
It's number four, okay, so, you know what, I, I don't understand that really because that encourages kids to bring cars to school. And like, for example, my daughter doesn't have a car at school, so I wouldn't want her to go lease an apartment and have someone tell her, well, you gotta pay the same as this guy and he has a car. He's using a parking space, you don't even have a car, but the rent's the same.
Didn't apartment management do that for years? You rented an apartment, if you needed, if you need to park, that was fine, if you didn't. I, I know that's where it was when I rented.
Well, that, that's true, when it was, when it was surface parking, when you parked on the surface, right? You just, when, when they just paved the blacktop and you parked out there, it didn't cost anything. It costs thirty thousand dollars a space right now. There's no way that a developer can build these spaces and not try to recoup some of that money. I mean, just the parking garage is twenty-some million dollars to build.
I understand you need to recoup that.
Well, and I'm just saying that, and I, and I, that's not my point. My point is, is that i- if you have a daughter and you don't let her bring her car to school, do you want to pay the same price as Saul's daughter and she has a car?
The problem is, and this happened at the view, was the students were parking all up and down Center Street and there was no place for people to park to get to church. Not because they didn't have enough space, which is what I thought in the beginning, but because the students didn't want to pay the parking. Once they realized they needed to do that, they did.
Okay, and I understand that and I talked with the police department today and they said as of last year, that was, as of two years ago, that was an issue, right? Because there was no, there was no way for them to enforce these parking fees, right? Now, now, they, now they do, and I, and I'm taking this right off what they sent me. Once the vehicle has, has more than one fine, the car will be impounded or immobilized, meaning booted.
No, that's not accurate.
Did, this came from the police, okay.
After one, no, that's not correct.
It's after three.
Okay.
It's after three, unpaid.
Okay, I may be wrong about the number, but, but there is a way to.
Ms. Gleason and I are on the parking advisory board that actually wrote some of those rules and reviewed them, so.
I saw your name on there and I saw you increased fines as well for the.
Well, they hadn't been increased since, I don't know, the eighties?
Yeah, yeah.
I have a question, I have a question. How far away is the two-hour parking from there? Does that two-hour parking go up North Street and then stop there on Lindsay and Burleson?
I don't think it goes that far.
I don't think it does either.
No.
It's weird over there. I went and looked at it because I, I had the same question because I thought, well, is there two-hour parking in front of where we are and would that affect it? And it's very weird, it has like just small little segments, but right in front there on Lindsay, it's not two-hour parking.
And Burleson doesn't have any either, I don't think.
No.
Not on the other side.
I don't believe so either.
No, which means the whole thing about the two-hour violation and all that is moot because it's not.
Well, it would be somewhat moot, I think there's still some no parking signs on Burleson on one side of the street and Lindsay might have that too, I don't.
And I believe there's also in the code a section about like overnight parking. So if it's parked there for a long period of time and not moved, which I know has been the case in the past, there's also something in there. You know, and since I'm up here, I'm just gonna throw this out really quick. But the, the one thing I think for, for this project is just because all of the other projects are, are, are charging and are, are doing the same thing that it, it, it skews your ability to compete with rent and those sorts of things because everybody else has the advantage of being able to charge for parking and not. And in this case, we wouldn't be consistent with everybody else, so.
So I, I think we should be building places for you to live and not places for you to park. And there's been a lot of studies about parking requirements and we're overbuilding parking and everything else. I, I don't see why it would be a problem at all to charge an additional rate if you have a parking pass in the garage. And if you're not, that's a lot of moving the car around for whatever the nominal monthly fee, probably fifty, a hundred dollars or whatever it is. I really think we're making a mountain of, of not really that big of an issue, but I, I think we should make.
It's not moving a car around because that's not two-hour parking.
Well, we could, we, we control that. And now that this area's gonna be more denser, I think that should, you know, it should be two-hour parking. That, that whole, I'm, I'm shocked that it wasn't.
Problem solved.
Yeah.
Well, at least we're talking about it so we can find a solution. Isn't that a good thing?
And also, this, this would help encourage folks, like, hey, I, you know, like, actually I lived off Comanche Street and that's like right across the street from this area. And for a whole semester, my Jeep didn't work, didn't care, you know what, because I walked everywhere. So I totally understand the concept, this location about encouraging people not to have a car or place to park because it's a more walkable area of, of our town.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, the two-hour doesn't go up there, so all that was immaterial. And maybe that's what we need to do. I just need some reassurance that those that have a car are gonna be parking it there onsite, your site, and not on other spaces and certainly not closer to downtown where it's interfering with what I call commerce. We had some people who downtown saying, hey, you know, we want you to approve this project because that's more people to shop downtown, that's great, but it's not good if they're using the parking spaces. That's what I'm looking at, so.
I agree.
Whatever assurance that you can give us, that people who have cars will be doing what they need to do. And I'm willing to wait until next reading to figure that out and give you time to figure that out. Does that work?
Mayor, I've got a couple questions.
Okay. So, Mr. Prather, what that means is we can take this out if he can find a way to assure us, assure me anyway, and we'll see if it's, there's four to do that.
Mayor, may I interject just quickly to say that this is a resolution and not an ordinance? So if we want to.
This is?
Mm-hmm. So it will not have a second reading, which means that we may.
It's not part of the ordinance.
We may need to postpone until the second reading of the zoning and preferred scenario. We may need to postpone until the second reading of the zoning and Preferred Scenario Amendment, if there are changes that you wanna see that we couldn't make this evening.
I'm gonna make a motion to do that anyway, because things that we do, and I know y'all worked and y'all are really smart, but sometimes things get missed, and I would really like to give y'all and the developer time. I don't want you to wake up and go, "What did I agree to, I can't do that," wanna give you some time to do that. So, um, after we've kinda worked on all this, then, um, motion to postpone. Let me see how many of y'all are concerned about item four, whether it needs to stay there or not. Let's just figure that out before they go work on it.
In, in most parts of downtown, I'm fairly worried about it. When I kinda do the math, the eighty-five and one, and then the two bedrooms, I'd like to see what that total is, like, what the difference would be. Um, but also, you know, it's one of those where you can see it from both sides of market forces, where the kids are gonna go, "I don't wanna pay the hundred dollars a month, I'm just gonna go park on the street," and then, you know, um, and take the risk of getting some tickets, and then some kids are just gonna pay it and park it and not worry about it, or not bring a car. I, I don't know, there's a right answer to this. I, I think that, I think I'm fine with taking out the, um, the requirement of not charging. I think I'm okay with taking that out, um, and charging for parking there. It's right across from the university, that's my other thought, is it's not down the street, where it, or across downtown, where they're more likely to have a car, literally right, right there, so I think I'm okay with removing it.
Okay, do you wanna make a motion so we can vote on it and formalize that?
Second.
Okay, so we have a motion by Mr. Gleason, and we have a second from Mr. Prather, uh, and that's just to take it out, not try to work out a compromise. I don't see anybody else wants to talk about it, so we will, uh, vote on this amendment to the amendments.
Yes, is to take it out.
Yep.
Yes, is to take it out. So?
Okay, thank you, motion passes six to one.
All right, so we don't need to talk about that, all right. I'll, I'll use the "I told you so's" later, okay, um.
And you might be right, Mayor, but I don't know.
Well, it'll be too late.
Yeah, I mean.
Okay, um, others.
I had a, a couple questions.
Uh, go ahead.
Amanda, and number thirteen, how did you come up?
How did you come up with five instead of seven? When we talked here, we were throwing both numbers around, uh, before they can sell the property, uh, was there some, were they give?
The applicant had said five to seven, so when we were having the conversation, they said they wanted to offer five, and have the conversation when we got to the full council.
Okay, now I have another question for our city attorney.
Do you want to make a motion to amend that five to a seven?
Yes, ma'am.
All right.
I'd like to make the emotion to change it from five to seven, uh, years from the date of approval.
All right. A date of approval is what they wanted, but that gives them more time, it starts now instead of three years from now. Would you put your microphone, please?
He said there's gonna be four years before he starts to build.
Exactly.
So, you wanna start it now before he?
That's what he's asking for.
Oh, gotcha, that doesn't make sense to me, but.
Well, then we can change that too, but I have a, a motion to amend, to make it go from five to seven, by Mr. Gonzalez, and I'm looking to see if there is a second.
And I will add that the applicant said that they would agree to the seven years, if that's helpful in.
Then I'll second it.
In the motion.
One thing I wanna, I wanna point out too, the discussion on this, on, on the taxes,
Uh-huh.
is that the day we rezone this, or the next year in the assessments, he's gonna get hit with a bigger tax bill. His tax bill's gonna go up whether that building's there or not, because of the change of the zone, and I can promise you that. So to think that we're not gonna collect some additional taxes until he builds the building is not true.
That, that's why I'm, I'm okay with starting it now.
Yeah, that, but that's why I am too.
Which, which, but it's, it's still not gonna be what it is once that building gets finished.
It won't, but it's not gonna be the same as it would.
I don't, I, I don't know, I don't know.
Have you seen the assessments downtown Austin, when they take a building and zone it for high-rise? It instantly takes that value through, the assessment through the roof. It does, I've seen them.
But, but it won't be the same as if the building is built.
No, but it will be, but they will assume a building's going there, and they're gonna assess that land value at, at that rate.
Well, how can they assess it, they don't know what, what's gonna go there.
They, they, they can't, they can't assess it on, oh, they can only assess it on what the value of that is
Right.
on January first.
Mayor, what do you say, you ready to vote?
Get ready to vote.
So, they've agreed to seven, with nobody saying to change the, the date other than from approval, so let's vote.
Okay, the motion passes six to zero with one abstain?
Oh, I'm sorry, I meant to say yes, I don't know what I did here, I meant to put, push the yes button.
Okay, we could do it again, just to make it clear.
I can't even reach that far.
Hold on, Mayor, go ahead, there it goes.
Ms. Gonzalez, we need to vote again, please.
And Mr. Scott.
Man, I hit it three times.
I know, sometimes you gotta, just watch up there, and until you get the red check, keep hitting.
So the motion passes seven to zero.
Okay, so we've got that.
I had two questions, Mayor.
Uh, oh, go ahead.
No, this is for our city attorney. This verbiage that we got here, this is legally bonding, I mean, it's, we can go to court and win this, or let's say they decided to sell it in three years, are we gonna have to go to the court and fight all this?
So it's a little different than a restrictive covenant, which is a, really a contract issue, and you go to court over that, but this would be, uh, this is tantamount to a zoning regulation, and you would have to get an injunction, uh, to, uh, prevent them from doing something that's contrary to this zoning restriction. Uh, I, it's a conditional use permit, but conditional use permit is related to zoning, so yes, you would have to get, um, equitable relief from a court through an injunction to prevent them from moving forward with any action that violates these restrictions.
Okay, thank you.
So it's a little different, though, than a breach of contract, it's a regulation that they're not following.
As long as we got some teeth in it, I'm okay.
Okay, on, could you just call back to item two, please, ma'am? Uh, because there was a two, and then there's a proposed two, and so we need to know which one it is that we're doing. Two is what, uh, P and Z approved?
Yes, that was the original recommendation from staff
Okay.
that P and Z approved.
Okay, uh, but we have the option, and they're asking to do something different, which is maximum. Uh, maximum or minimum? I'm not sure that should be maximum there, we need a minimum.
Yes, I think you're right.
Saying, okay.
The way the code is worded, and I was trying to sort of mirror the code, but it is a little bit difficult, that the commission, when the, when the request goes to the Historic Preservation Commission under current code, the commission may extend the demolition delay for an additional ninety days. And instead of calculating the first ninety days out of a year, we were just trying to say one year
Right.
would be the, the delay.
Right, so, so it's gonna be at, at least a year, but it doesn't have to be a day over a year, correct?
Well, let me, let me think about that again, maybe I do mean maximum, because they, they, right now, the maximum in code is six months. So HPC would have to look at this and say that they wanted to extend the delay one year.
But those are minimums, that ninety days, ninety days, it's a minimum, not a maximum, because if it was a maximum, they could come into mo, not you, anybody could come in, demolish it the next day, it's gotta be a minimum.
Yeah, it's up to ninety days, so the Historic Preservation Commission could say thirty days, or they could say sixty days.
Yeah, I'm talking about the original, ninety.
The original ninety is worded as?
Another reason to postpone this and give this some thought, so, uh, I'm, I'm okay with letting this sit, I'm okay with the, the second one, what, what we're talking about. I just wanna make sure, I think we're agreeing on the one year, I just wanna make sure this says a year. Yeah.
Let me think about that, because the section for the initial ninety days says, "The permit shall not be issued until at least ninety days," so maybe we pull, maybe that language might be more clear, but I can also work with our city attorney on the actual language, to make sure it's something that we can enforce and interpret moving forward.
But for today, we need to figure out, do we want two or proposed condition two, so we can move on? So if, I, because they're both, we're, we're saying we're voting on this document, but yet there's two things, there's, there's one or the other. So I will make a motion that we go with proposed condition two, change maximum to minimum. And I'll take a second.
Second, Mayor.
And if it works out that that's not what we want, and we're not doing what, I think we're agreeing, we just have to figure out what it's gonna say, um, and so we'll, we'll figure that one out, okay. So let's vote on item two, we will, we're replacing what P and Z did with this new one.
The motion passes six to one.
Okay, uh, I'm willing to leave item six about this parking fee and lieu at that point eight-five, but I will be addressing this when it comes back, trying to figure out what that is balance, because this is giving them some, but we're giving them some with the five, not D, so I wanna see where we are, because that, and he may not need to ask for the point eight-five, it may end up being that, may end up being a little more, a little less, I'm not sure. So, we'll wanna talk about six when it comes back. Anything else? I'm gonna make a motion to postpone. Yes, because, like I said earlier, anything you do in twenty minutes under.
But you wanna hash through them, and then, you wanna hash through these and then make a motion, so that we had got it all kind of.
Exactly, so, so they know what they're talking about, otherwise, this whole conversation's gonna happen two weeks from now. And the zoning's not gonna be approved for two weeks, so I don't think it hurts
No.
to postpone this and have it come back with the final zoning. All right, um. Item ten?
Hold on, just a moment, because this, this only needs one reading, and, but.
I'm gonna make a motion to postpone, so that everybody gets a chance to look at it, in case there's any wording problems, they can be worked out either by staff or by the developer. Like I said, I don't want him waking up tomorrow going, "Oh my gosh," and there's something that he's, can't live with.
And then all the other items that we voted on that require a second reading, we can all, that next.
It's gonna come back with that.
That's not.
Yeah, okay.
Because there is second readings for the PSA and the zoning?
Yes, sir.
It was just the CUP that didn't require.
And the height.
And the alternative compliance is a one, okay, yes, ma'am. It doesn't relate to that, oh, this is for the student housing, and the student housing, do we need to modify this, that it's only the east side? Since the original request was for all of it, or did that change at P and Z, and what's in front of us is only east side?
Planning and zoning commission looked at the conditional use permit for the entire property, the entire three acres.
Uh-huh.
My intent in adding condition thirteen was to indicate that the property west of North Street shall comply with all of these conditions, because a lot of them have to do with that property, but that they will not design market and all of that on the west side.
And is that in here?
Item thirteen, it should be the very last, fourteen.
Maybe fourteen?
Item fourteen.
Got it, thank you, so, we don't have to worry about that, it's in here. Okay, the only other concern is item ten, um, there is a, an addition, and I think that's okay, because that's adding, so that's not an either-or, so we're accepting that. Could use some cleanup, but. Counsel, I'm now going to make a motion.
Postpone as amended?
We have a motion on amendments hanging, I think we need to conclude that to say, "We're okay with all these amendments, put in the main motion," and then I'll postpone that, I don't wanna postpone.
I, I thought there were votes on each of the amendments that are on record now.
No, remember Mr. Gleason, after the main motion, made a motion to put all of these in play, and we've been making amendments to that big amendment.
Yes, that's correct.
So, let's conclude these, add it as part of the main motion, and then I'll make a motion to postpone the main motion.
Mayor, could I clarify?
Yes, ma'am.
Did we get a motion on condition two, to accept the proposed language with modifications? You said it, and we read, we marked it, but I.
And we voted on it seven oh.
We, okay.
I made a motion, Mr. Prather seconded it, and we voted seven oh.
Thank you.
Thank you for keeping track. All right, so let's now vote on the motion to amend, which was to put these in as a whole, and we have changed some of these internally, so let's vote on adding these to the main motion.
And do these amendments need a supermajority?
No. No, okay, so now, I'm gonna make a motion to postpone.
To what, you wanna do to the next meeting, or?
To the next meeting, which really only gives them a week, but I, I think y'all can figure all this out in a week. Y'all made a heck of a try in thirty minutes.
I'll second it.
Thank you, and.
Can I refer to the applicant, by doing all this, and we, we're still, this can all still pass in the second or?
Yes.
Yes, it'll all land on the next agenda, we'll, we'll push everything together.
But that's what I was saying, they only really get a week, because the agenda gets posted next, probably Thursday. But still, I have faith that they can get this done in a week. Okay, so, this is a motion to postpone the student housing CUP to the next meeting. No. Did we go back and do the PSA?
Yes.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I know, but we're, we're doing it right, so, we're doing it right. Okay, so let's vote on postponing to bring all of this back on the student housing.
Okay, the motion passes seven to zero.
And this concludes, item ten?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, item eleven, Mr. Vino.
Receive a staff presentation, hold a public hearing, to receive comments for or against Resolution 2024-54R, granting a request in case number AC-23-09 for alternative compliance to the maximum building height requirements in section four point four point three point seven of the Development Code to increase the permitted building height from five to seven stories for a proposed development generally located on the south side of Lindsay Street, between North Comanche Street and North Street, and southwest of the intersection between Lindsay Street and North Street, authorizing city staff to issue permits consistent with this resolution, declare an effective date, and consider approval of Resolution 2024-54R.
Okay, I'm looking for a motion.
Motion to approve?
We are, we're holding a public hearing on this item.
Oh, you're right, I'm so sorry. Presentation followed by public hearing.
Amanda Hernandez, Director, Planning and Development Services, this request is for additional height, and I want to clarify that you will see the maps show the entire three-acre property, but based on all of the conversations we have had, we're only talking about the land east of North Street. We're not talking about the area covered by the Preferred Scenario Amendment, because that is now, with the conditional use permit, if that's approved, will be limited to four stories. Next slide. We are familiar with the context, I believe, at this point, next slide. And we now have motions or actions to approve Character District Five-D on the area east of North Street, which we are discussing, Character District Five, west of North Street, next slide. We have some slides that show the context of the surrounding area. The adjacent buildings are, they range from one story to six stories in height, and the developer is requesting seven stories for the properties that are highlighted in purple, and this is looking south from the university, next slide. This is looking east. And on the next slide, we're looking more or less northeast at the buildings on campus, which range from three to eight stories currently, next slide. Looking at the criteria for approval of additional height in the Development Code, the project is not meeting the criteria related to providing affordable or workforce housing, with the exception of, we have talked about potentially offering some units to the families that are currently living within the units, um, and they are not providing office space or childcare, which are some of the conditions that we are to consider when looking at additional height requests in downtown, next slide. The request is meeting the criteria for the LEED-certified building, and the applicant's proposing twenty publicly accessible parking spaces and a small pocket park in that center part of the project. There is a question about Parkland, and we will look at the fee and lieu and/or dedication requirements during the plating and site planning process. We need to know the final number of units, so once. So once they've designed those buildings, we'll be able to figure out what that Parkland fee in lieu requirement will be. Next slide. For that area that is zone character district five D, the downtown design standards will apply, and the development will have to comply with all of their code requirements. Next slide. We have seen the concept plan. Next slide. Actually have a variety of things to show you. And I wanted to start with, this is what the applicant originally proposed. Seven stories across the entire project, across the entire three acres. On the next slide, we will see the proposal of the seven stories east of North Street and five stories west of North Street. And if we go one more slide, I believe city council just received this in an email sometime in the last 24 hours or so, which shows the seven stories in height on the east and the four stories in height on the west. On the next slide. Staff recommended approval of the height request only for that land east of North Street with the conditions that the building be lead certified, there be a pocket park, 20 publicly accessible parking spaces, and the final two conditions that are there on the screen ensure and reinforce compliance with the development and fire codes. Next slide. Planning and zoning commission recommended denial of the this request, but a super majority is not required to overturn that decision. Counsel is the final decision maker on this item, so we just need a regular majority. And that concludes my presentation.
All right, I will open the public hearing. Somewhere I have a list. I think I've kind of memorized it by now. Open the public hearing and the usual suspects, Anne Roberts, Shannon Mattingly, Ed Terrio, Matt Kenlin, and Joe Erde Erde Erdeljack. First five, anyone? This is on this is on the height change. Anyone wish to speak? Okay.
Okay. Everyone get the my name is Matthew Kenyon, 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, 78735. The honest truth on this is I I made all of the concessions that I made based that I would that the project would get seven stories. Without the projects going seven stories, I don't have a project. You know, I had to cut the east side down so far. I cut so many units off the east side that without the product. And you can see, if you look at it, you can see how much space the parking garage takes up on the east side, right? So all I can do is outline the parking garage with units. And if I only go five stories, it's just not very many units. So I made an enormous amount of concessions. I cut the I cut I more than cut the or I cut the east side or the west side in half. And without without that, I really don't have a project. But furthermore, when you go from when you go from five to seven stories, it changes the type of construction. So you end up I'll end up going with a lot more concrete, a lot more steel. It'll end up being a far superior building in in terms of construction. And the building will look a ton better as well. So that's really all I had to say about that. In addition to what Amanda had mentioned, that in order to get these two extra stories, I agreed to 5% open space to build a public park. And I'm going to put benches in there covering. It's going to be open to the public. You know, there's I have to do if I go seven stories, there's a requirement by the fire department that I have to go compliance with emergency and radio communications, which is which I don't know exactly what that is, but it's a big deal to the fire department. Again, I'll give if with these two extra stories, I have to give 20 extra parking spaces. I'm opening a gym up to the public. And I've I've agreed to provide LED silver certification. And then, of course, only go four stories on the on the west side. Thank you.
Okay, and I'm going to call these names because they signed up for a public hearing. Andrew Salem, Austin, Grochelle, Abby Rickelme, Isla Ruiz, Darla Menos. She's still here? Jared Chumse Clay. Oh, he is here.
All right, once again, my name is Jared Chumse. I'm going to make this quick because I respect everyone's time. I think that I I really appreciate every single one of you on council for really holding the developers' feet to the fire. It's exactly what planning and zoning did. And without your help, we wouldn't have gotten these concessions. It's, you know, with all due respect to council member Prather, it's not out of the goodness of the developer's heart, right, that they're making these concessions. It's because of the public pushback. And I'm very thankful to all of you for for taking that on, taking that responsibility on. One thing that I did want to mention really quickly is that there was some talk of the current residents who are living in these housing complexes to to have the potential of moving back in, right? Having spots maybe reserved. I'm not sure how that would look. I didn't see it on the CUP. Maybe that could be a restrictive covenant. I'm not sure the legality of all that stuff. But will they really be coming back after four years, right? If the project takes four years to complete? My sus- my suspicion is that they're going to be priced out of San Marcos. I live in some very affordable housing, and it is a pain. It is a hassle to try to find affordable housing in the city currently. And so I think we need to think really hard about getting rid of current affordable housing stock in the city. And I would offer to to maybe be placed onto a future CUP, since you're going to be reconsidering, that there should be a relocation payment paid to the current residents so that they could live rent free, pretty much, for six months to maybe a year out in another place in the city. So that if in four years, they wanted to return to the same spot, to the same area that they used to live, some of which probably have been living there for a long time, they could then do that. Anyway, thank you all so much for your time and your consideration. Have a great evening.
And next is Clay Smith.
Clay Smith, 434 North Comanche. My wife and I run the prayer hall there at the corner of Comanche and Lindsay. Across the street from us to the west is the Lindsay Oaks Apartments. A bit of history here. 1982, there are first sightings of Muslims on the Texas State Campus. By 1992, the Muslims had gathered and made an association called the Muslim Student Association. They are mating regularly on campus from 82 to 92, all the way up to 95. In 95, the Muslim community formed our first prayer hall off of campus. And that was in the Lindsay Oaks apartment house. And so our community members will have an affection for that geometry. There's nothing in the religion that says that you have affection for a place as a prayer hall persistently. But people are people. And knowing that that was the first place where Muslims gathered as a formal prayer hall, they will have an affection for that. And I believe that will drive a certain amount of interest in renting those apartment houses once it's built. And again, so my 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 excitement about this project is that my community members will are looking forward to it. And seven stories would do it would make it a lot easier for us to have available space there. And a seven story place would mean a lower cost per unit, which would mean lower rent and easier for my folks being able to afford it. So thank you all for your work and thank you all for listening. May God bless you all in your work. Send peace and blessings on all the prophets from Adam, Abraham, Noah, David, and Jesus and Mohammed. Thank you very much. Good day.
I have Joan Byrd signed up. Don't believe she has made it. Is there anyone in chambers or the foyer who wish to speak? If you do, go to the podium. This is another one of those name and address. Address not needed for citizen comment, but the law says we need it for public hearings.
Thank you, Mayor. Paige Michelle, 2024 Northview Drive in San Marcos. And I just wanted to reiterate our support for the project and for this alternative compliance for the height, which would create a superior building, as the developer said. And then I just I have a question. I had wished to speak in the last public hearing, but it closed before I was able to. And so I have a question, why a the citizens on Zoom, why it closes right after that? Why not allow the people that are here that have been here in person the whole time to have the equal opportunity to speak like I just did? I had to, you know, make sure I got up here before it closed. And moreover, I would like to ask why that citizen that was on Zoom that spoke in the last public hearing, I found violated several portions of the rules of decorum for this meeting. And I really just could not sit here another minute without bringing it to the attention. I know that I and many others get very nervous when we come up here. We read these rules. We know that the speakers must address the presiding officer. It says that right here and that we need to be respectful. And we are doing this so that everyone can feel free from abusive, distracting, and intimidating behavior. And I know for a fact there are several people that I wanted to be here tonight, and they have seen this abusive, destructive behavior. And their free speech is being hindered because they they just don't want to put themselves through it. These matters are important. But I'm sorry, that is a question that I want to leave here with the council. Why is it that the citizens on Zoom that don't take the time to come in here are last in the hearing? You know, I appreciate it being able to be called on right now to have this comment, but I feel that we should have the equal last word. Thank you.
Anyone else in chambers wishing to speak? Going once, going twice, going three times? And we will go to is Ms. Capoletta still online with us? We'll go to Ms. Capoletta.
Hey, y'all, let me open up my screen here really quick. Let me give you one second. Hey, y'all, good evening. My name is Professor Lisa Marie Capoletta. I live at 1322 Belvin. Because the speaker on Zoom attends these meetings religiously every week, including the planning and zoning. And because the speaker on Zoom was one of the last people to sign up for tonight's hearing. And it's been a request because this particular individual, being me, is always present for these meetings. Now, H N 3.1 implementation of transition zones, it's quote buffers and other tools to ensure compatibility between buildings and neighborhoods. This was fought gallantly by people who are involved in the comprehensive plan in this neighborhood. It kept being taken out by city staff and the consultant. And I'm really not sure why you're not being serious about equity and treat this renters' neighborhood the same consideration and dignity as you would single family neighborhoods in other areas of town. This is not about other area town. This is about historic area with a history. And it's been identified by the Historical Resources Survey. Additionally, the developer and city council members stress that this neighborhood is not a single family and consists primarily of student renters. But this implies that neighborhoods of renters do not have the same rights and considerations as single family neighborhoods. What message does this send to thousands and thousands of renters that soon you could have a seven foot high rise looking over your rental area? Again, we have asked over and over for a buffer. You are not engineers. When the flooding happens of a light rain here in this area of town, it will be proof that there of everything that we have stated is true. And I'm very confused. In your packet, there is a massive petition from voters in this community who take issue with that. Well, and we've also had multiple people come up over the past year who have opposed this. Why are you allowing special interests to guide your votes? Clearly, you have not read those signatures of voters who have signed that petition, and those cars will spill over into the neighborhood. I lived in the Elms. I had a car. Most of the students in this community drive cars. The public should know, as we close this public hearing, that over $100,000 was spent on the comprehensive master plan, and now you are throwing it into trash. Equity is just a word that you use to to make it seem like you are valuing the public input. But at the end of the day, those who rarely show up and have deep pockets and influence on your campaigns are the ones whose special interests you will vote for. I want to apologize to this community for asking you to vote for Jude, for Shane and Mark. And I want to beg your forgiveness for defending Alyssa. And thank you all for confirming my concerns, though the Ross saying here in town about Matthew. Thank you for your time, and God bless San Marcos.
I will close the public hearing, and I am looking for a motion on item 11, which is the alternative compliance to go from five, which is allowed by right to seven.
Motion to approve with the conditions.
The height. 11.
Motion motion to approve with the conditions.
A second.
Can we do the conditions separate?
What did we amend? Do you want to work on them?
Well, no.
You can you can I can make my motion and you can amend it. If you've got something you want to amend.
No, it was it would be this list, but well, it's late. We'll just go with the with the conditions as provided by staff. Are these in the packet exactly this way?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, in packet. I'm looking for a second.
I have Mr. Prather down as a second.
Did you second it?
Did you second it? I'm sorry, I didn't hear you. When I keep asking, probably just jump in there again would be helpful. Okay.
I have one question. Are all alternative compliances, they don't require a super majority or just on the height?
It depends. So because city council is the final decision maker, that is the reason that you don't need a super majority on this one? It's a little bit different than the zoning, but that's the way the ordinance is written.
But that's on all alternative compliances?
I I'm not going to say all because there are quite a few, but probably.
Okay.
But for this particular one, no super majority.
You know, that's fine. I just I just was trying to clarify because I thought there was a couple that we did, but I could be wrong.
But for tonight, this one, we don't.
We're good.
We're just going to go with it.
They're good.
Okay. Thoughts, statements, and from anybody?
Height is good. When we talk about walkable communities, this is how you achieve that. You want to go higher, not wider, up and not out. And yeah, and he's there's been a lot of concessions made going seven to five on the on the west side. Is that correct?
Four.
Four. Yeah, and the renderings of it looked great. Let's let's vote on it or if anyone else has any other comments?
So you're speaking in favor?
Absolutely.
Okay. Anybody else? I'm I'm just concerned that there have been some statements made about other buildings that are seven stories, and they're not. And also, when you look at the map, I'm looking at the one where the new project is outlined in purple. We've got six stories. We've got four stories. The engineering building is not seven stories. The the one next door, the point, this says it's six stories, but is it really? I drove by and looked, and is it one of those five with some underground?
It's five with a mezzanine. So it it gives almost the illusion of that six story with those little kind of pods that sit on top of it.
Right, but when you look at it from Lindsay Street, does it look like it's six stories? Because when you drive down Comanche, that's where the parking garage is. So it looks like it's I think it looks like it's five stories.
Yes, because of the slope.
Four, five.
It probably looks like five from one side and six from the other.
Yeah, six from the opposite side. So I just wanted to make those notations. And the seven stories is taller. I'm going to assume six stories is not an option. And we would need you to come to the microphone.
Matt Kenyon, 1200 Barton Creek Boulevard, Austin, Texas, 78735. Six stories really isn't an option because if you go to six stories, I have to change my I have to change the type of construction.
The construction without the extra height.
Without the extra height, and it doesn't make sense.
Had to ask. Sorry.
Thank you.
Well, and one thing I want to point out, too, I think Ms. Hernandez did kind of misspeak. She spoke earlier about all of the purple being seven, and it would just be the one the one. the one side of the street at seven.
Yes.
Just to clarify.
Yes, I, I think I, I did say that.
Yeah, it's okay. I just wanted to clarify since I'm relooking at it again.
So we're still, we're at four on the west side.
Mm-hmm.
Five on the other. Yeah, I wasn't crazy about the four. Okay. Uh, anything else? Then let's vote.
I'm responding to a citizen. Okay. Mayor Hughes.
I hit the button.
Ms. Garza. Thank you.
Sometimes it does take three.
The motion passes six to one.
Oh, wait a minute. I hit the wrong one. My bad. I meant to do a no. I'm so used to hitting a yes. I'm a no. To reach a little further. All right, yeah. No, then I'd hit all of them at the same time. That would really throw us. I mean, would you vote again, please?
Okay, the motion passes five to two.
All right. Okay, and that concludes the public hearing portion of our program, I do believe. And we have two items left, I think. Um, on to item 15.
Okay, receive an update from staff following city council direction to add plant development zoning districts or another similar zoning option to the development code and consider by motion the initial authorization of tax commitments to the San Marcos Development Code for that purpose.
Okay. Ms. Hernandez.
Yes, ma'am. At our last meeting, there was some discussion about bringing back some PDD-type of zoning options in order to regulate developments and, quote, "so people do what they say they're going to do." If they say they're going to do something, finding a way to assure city council and the community that they are in fact going to do what they say.
And can I just say one thing, since this is my deal to begin with? Uh, we, we, we got a, a letter emailed today for someone saying, "Let's not do them the old way." And what I'm looking for is, I'm looking for a way to approve things when we are hesitant because, like I remind everybody, and you do too, that the zoning is the zoning. So if it's light industrial next to residential, there's, we need to be, even though there's things in the code, there's still things to consider. But if that particular project is something that we would accept, then if they, we're good with that project, but not just the open light industrial. And so that's the whole thing, is when, it's not to make somebody do something they don't want to do, it's to say if we are okay with that project and that location, a way to move that along and not say no because we're concerned about the zoning.
Yes, and I hope that what we, what I'm presenting this evening will be that solution that we can move forward with. I wanted to just start by providing some information on the old code. In summary, to say that it didn't work great. And really, the hardest part of, the hardest part of the old planned development districts was really the time-consuming negotiation and then implementing them later when staff has to know this is part of that agreement, this is part of that agreement. Plus, you're vesting to old codes. So we're looking at all sorts of documents when we approve those. But on the next slide, I wanted to show that we do something in our existing neighborhoods currently, which is called an existing neighborhood regulating plan. And this tells us exactly what someone is going to build with the zoning change request. On the next slide, it shows just a summary of the types of things that are on that regulating plan. Zoning, are you going to subdivide into multiple lots? What types of buildings are you going to provide? Are you, you know, putting the parking in the front or the back? Do you have parkland dedication or fee-in lieu, things of that nature? And on the next slide, I broke that two, kind of two-pager into two slides. And we start with the existing conditions, what's there? This is an existing neighborhood regulating plan that city council approved within the last probably four or so months on Minor Street. On the next slide, you can see what the proposed conditions are. So you can see on the existing neighborhood regulating plan, they're adding a multifamily mixed-use building. They're going to set the building back from the existing single-family zoning, which is actually a requirement in code. We told them they had to pick the transitional protective yard. What size, height, material will, will the fence be? What kind of plantings are you going to include? So we get those assurances up front. And on the next slide, I will note that this becomes part of the zoning ordinance. It's an attachment and an exhibit. So this is and holds the effect of the zoning change. There are some opportunities in the development code for minor amendments. It's really that 10% stuff that the code allows staff to do anyways. If a building needs to shift a little bit because maybe there's a tree root in the way, or, you know, they need to move the parking a little bit, we have some opportunities to work with them on that. But any changes beyond that small scope of, of five and 10% changes have to come back through the zoning change process, which means public hearing at Planning Commission, public hearing at city council, and we look at the request on the new merits of the change. Next slide. We also have a zoning district in our code called Planning Area District. City council has seen a couple of these, but we don't really have any that have made it through the entire approval process. The Planning Area District also includes a regulating plan, but it is much more complicated. Next slide. And the list of things that are in that regulating plan is much more comprehensive. Utilities, transportation, where are you going to put your roads? What does the phasing look like? They actually have to allocate the zoning districts within that, um, within that regulating plan. And this is approved by staff. It's not part of the ordinance. So that's a, the nature of that particular zoning district. Next slide. What we're proposing to respond to the inquiry and the, the request for options last time is kind of a hybrid, which we are at the moment calling an optional regulating plan. And what we're thinking is that if someone has a project and they know exactly what they want to do, they could create something similar to that existing neighborhood regulating plan that tells us the use, location of buildings, building heights, and things of that nature, and really give us that graphic, graphic representation of the project. The one thing I want to stress is that through all of this, we do not want to negotiate waivers. We, we, that's kind of the path we went down with our old PDDs. We ended up with a, a ton of waivers in these documents. And sometimes we ended up with developments that probably could have been better had we not gone through that process. So we're not proposing any waivers or variations. We have relief procedures in our code that would be followed for those types of things. Um, next slide. We are proposing that we would have an existing conditions, probably just a one-pager, to show the context of the area. All those maps that I show you during the zoning change presentations kind of combined into one. Where are the existing buildings surrounding zoning? And tell us what part of the land is buildable. So what this would give the developer the opportunity to do is show us where there might be floodplains or creeks or streams that need to be protected and show us up front. We will not build anything over here. We're going to keep our development on this side. And then we'll talk also about utility availability because that's important for some of our newer and larger developments. Next slide. We would then have another page or pages. I would anticipate that this would probably be a multiple-page graphic representation where we show the future conditions. Again, building location and height, transitional protective yard. And we are proposing that the developer could use this tool to permit and prohibit uses. So if they only want two uses on the use table, we say that up front. We say that here in the regulating plan. Um, if they want to cut a couple of uses that maybe aren't appropriate in the area where they're located, we could just cut a few and leave the long list in the code. And it would also look at, if it's for residential, unit maximum. So we know, you know, maximum units per acre. In some of our zoning districts, it's not identified because it's based on a lot of other factors, and this would be an opportunity to show that. Next slide. We're proposing that the process would follow the zoning process. And the great thing about our idea and plan for this is right now, when Planning and Zoning Commission are considering zoning changes, and they want to recommend something for a restrictive covenant, they don't really have the ability to do that because that's something that council approves. And this would give P&amp;Z the ability to ask the developer for, "Can you show me this thing?" Or, "Would you be willing to do this?" And then the developer can consider that before it comes to city council. We would recommend that the minor amendments be similar to those that are allowed right now with the existing neighborhood regulating plans, in that we can get up to that 20% and just shift things a little bit as the site needs that to happen. But any major amendments come back through the full zoning process, as this would be an exhibit and an attachment of the zoning ordinances. And we would make a statement in that document that all other codes apply. Again, I don't want to do waivers and variances and negotiate if we don't need to. I think our, our code is actually in a really good shape right now since we have amended it along the way, and we should really encourage people to follow that code. So on the next slide. If city council thinks that we are on the right track, we have worded the caption to allow you to take a motion for initial authorization, which means that we don't necessarily have to come back with a lot more information or, you know, a red line. We could just go ahead and start that process through the Planning and Zoning Commission. Um, if you want to see this again, you want to see something more concrete and a red line, then we'll just seek that direction at this time, and we'll come back for initial authorization. And then our other recommendation on this slide is that we would propose that this amendment to the development code come after the comprehensive plan. And I will pause there for any questions or discussion.
Why wait till after the comp plan?
Because I really, really hope the comp plan will be adopted in the next couple of months.
But one wouldn't be dependent on the other?
No, ma'am, but we would.
Is this just a workload thing?
It, it's partially a workload thing. Also, you know, the multiple vesting dates. But we know that when the comprehensive plan is adopted, we are going to have immediate, have-to-do-it-right-now amendments that aren't comprehensive. It's changing terminology, so the code matches the comp plan. It could probably come with that, which I think would be within a month or two of
No, I'm, 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 I'm fine. I was just curious why. Um. So do we need a motion or direction?
If you'd like to consider initial authorization, a motion. If you'd like to see this again, direction.
I'd like to see it again because, and, 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 and I, I respect your, your knowledge of all of this, and, and I'm probably going to say fine. But I think this is maybe doing even more than what I was looking for, which might be fine. But before P&amp;Z starts looking at details, I would like to see it again. How about y'all?
I think it's fine for us to see it again. Before P&amp;Z sees it, there might be some recommendations in there that...
Yeah. I'd like to see it gel a little more.
And it's not, we're not in a huge hurry on this, so I, I think it's fine for us to...
Except I can think of five times in the last six months it would have been handy.
I know. Well, look, the, the, the regulation plan recommendation from P&amp;C, I'm all for, like, that's great. So there's some good stuff there. It's just, I'm fine with seeing it again if you want to.
But, but in New Braunfels, it's not this complex, is it?
They have a similar PDD ordinance, is what I found when I researched, similar to what we had.
I was told it was a, a SUP.
SUP is a conditional use permit, which is a different...
I know.
Process specifically for use.
I think Mr. Gary may have more information than I do.
What I'm, what I'm familiar with in New Braunfels, it's a completely different setup, though they just have a, a process to allow conditional zoning approvals where council attaches conditions to its approval.
Really?
Uh, so it's a little bit different than what we've done with restrictive covenants because it's just part of the ordinance itself.
Yeah, but I'm, I'm happy to look at these extra things because Ms. Hernandez knows a lot about things that I don't know. And she knows where maybe some of the unintended consequences and loopholes might be. So I'd like to see what, what you're going to bring. But I'd like to see it before we get to P&amp;Z and they spend a bunch of time on it. I'm going to want to see it again, Mr. Blaiseniz, Mr. Mendoza.
Good.
So, yeah.
Okay, perfect.
So when it comes back, it comes back.
Thank you.
Okay.
And do we need a motion to do that?
No.
No? Okay. All right, just checking.
No. Um, and does, was there anything else on that item?
No, that's all for me.
All right. So we're on to item 16.
Okay. Discuss and consider appointments to various boards and commissions to wit A, Citizen Utility Advisory Board, B, Construction Board of Appeals, C, Convention and Visitors Rural Board, D, Economic Developments and Markets Board, E, Human Services Advisory Board, F, Neighborhood Commission, G, Parking Advisory Board, H, Senior Citizen Advisory Board, and I, Veteran Affairs Advisory Board.
Counsel, I'm going to suggest we postpone this. Okay. And I think that, I'm sorry, somebody down here seconded it?
Oh.
You did, okay.
I think we got a citizen in the, in the audience that...
I stayed here all night for this.
Stayed here all night for this.
I warned her, I warned her, sorry.
Sorry. Unless you want to go through it. But if everybody read all the applications and they're ready to put, put names in, that's great, but... And there may be some information that, um, Mr. Vino may have for us at the next one. So, okay, so, uh, let's vote on motion to postpone.
I'm going to throw it out there that, uh, Ms. Johnson kind of moved up my food chain for sitting through the suffering tonight.
Hey, she gets points for endurance.
Very much, Ms. Johnson. Yeah, I don't blame you. But I will remember that you were here.
I will, too. Uh, Ms. Prather, Mr. Scott, hit the button again.
Okay, the motion passes six to one.
All right, so now we're to executive session. Ms. Trevino, let's read this one, and then we'll get out of here shortly. We'll get out of here before midnight.
Okay, yeah, sorry. Okay. The city council will convene in executive session pursuant to the following sections of the Texas Government Code. A, Section 551.072, real property, one, to deliberate regarding the possible acquisition of land in the Blanco Gardens neighborhood for use as a park. Two, to deliberate the possible acquisition of land for cemetery purposes. B, Section 551.071, consultation with attorney to receive legal advice regarding and discuss a possible settlement in the matter, caption, as the Tex, State of Texas versus the City of San Marcos, case number 24-0267, in the District Court of Hayes County, Texas, pertaining to the city's enforcement of marijuana laws under Chapter 54, Article 4 of the City Code.
Um, and as we generally do, we post this also on our agenda for the three o'clock work session, and we did have these discussions then. Counsel, I believe we have concluded those. Is there any need to go back? Okay, so we will not be going into execution at this point in time because we don't need to, so we can move on to the next item.
Okay, um, the city council will convene. Sorry, is that right? Sorry. I, I, I'm looking for the consider of action.
Well, this is direction, action from the stuff you just said.
But it's just the verbiage, so just as stated as above.
Okay. And what I will report to you is on A1, we gave direction to staff, A2, direction to staff, and B, direction to staff. And so that concludes that item. And we are now to question and answer with press and public. And I put my page away. Ms. Trevino, who is first on that list?
Yes, Darla Munoz.
I don't think they're here. Uh, Mr. Smith, I don't believe is here. Um, Ms. Michelle is not here. So is there anyone here who wish? You may certainly go over to the podium and speak.
Uh, Manda Rodriguez. Uh, this is my first time doing Q and A, so please correct me if I'm wrong. Um, I just have one question since I've been here this whole time, and I missed the public hearing portion of it. My apologies. I doubt y'all will say a good job for sticking around with me because you probably won't like my question. But, um, my only question is, after everything y'all heard today this morning, or, no, it seems like a morning ago, what, that was at six? Um, everything y'all heard today, my only question for each of you, and I would really like a, an answer from each of you, just out of respect for me being here this whole time, is hypothetically speaking, if a resolution was in front of you today to take a vote on, if you would, all I need is a yes or a no. And if your answer is no, that you would not vote in favor of that, then why? So that's my question for each of you.
And I'm just going to make one point, Mayor, that Q and A is for items on, that are on the agenda due to the Open Meetings Act. Uh, Q and A is supposed to be limited to items on the agenda.
Well, and...
Sure, and I hear that argument, and I did read the, the portion stating such. that is in fact on the agenda, one could argue that it would be sufficient.
But I was going to say, Mr. Gary, that we cannot, we cannot respond to something that's not on the agenda.
If you want to comply with the Open Meetings Act, it's a slippery slope, let's put it that way.
Well, it's not, it's not on the agenda, so I'm not saying how I would vote because there's...
Right, there's certainly no obligation to...
Sure, that's why I said hypothetically.
I also think we pick and choose when we are going to be strict when it comes to answering questions from the press and public, when, like analyzing whether it's on the agenda or not. Like, we have been inconsistent with that. I'll answer the question, and it's, I would vote yes. If nobody else is comfy answering that, that's on you.
My point is not about that she's asking a question that's not on the agenda for the Q and A. It's that it's not on our agenda, therefore, we're breaking the Open Meetings Act if we're voting or indicating a vote on something that wasn't posted for the public to see.
Unless I misunderstood what the city attorney said, he did say it was a slippery slope, but didn't confirm whether it was a violation of the Open Meetings Act or not. So if it's not a violation, y'all have every right to answer the question that I waited, what, five hours?
Well, Mayor, I'm going to, again...
I mean, I would be happy to set a meeting with each of y'all individually to get an answer to that question.
So a couple of things, the Q and A, a couple of things, Mayor, the Q and A is not intended to be a debate with the council. Q and A is something unique to San Marcos for the most part, where we are allowed to ask questions in relation to items on the agenda due to the Open Meetings Act, and why is that? Because the public has no idea that the council will be discussing policy matters on items that may be of great importance to them that are not even posted for them to be aware that this is going to be. I think the public could have a lot to say about knowing that the council is taking a straw poll on a major policy matter before a meeting has been agendized. That's my advice to the council. I hate to give advice in open session like this. If any of y'all want to state your position, but y'all have my advice on the Open Meetings Act. Thank you.
So no one? So I'm waiting to see if anyone wants to speak on this.
Hell, I'll sign anything that says peace.
Thank you.
I already answered it.
Thank you.
I'll answer it when it's on a posted agenda so the public knows we're going to have a discussion or indicate our response on it.
Thank you, Sol.
Short answer is no. And it's very simple. It's not the purview of this body in any capacity with any tax dollars to be discussing and spending time on this. We just spent six hours, five hours discussing a zoning case that was extremely important.
To who?
It was extremely important to the whole community. It was extremely important. It showed by the output. I'm not going to sit here and waste time, spending time discussing something of international matters. You want to put, you want to put, you want to put something on there that says world peace? Go ahead, but I'm not going to be, I'm not going to be spending time discussing.
And a reminder that this is not a debate with the public. This is a question and answer. I think the question's been asked, and so just to remind our citizens of the limitations.
Did you have any other questions?
No, ma'am. I think I got all my answers. Thank you.
Okay. And anybody else wishing to ask a question? And with that, we have reached the end of our agenda. I would accept a motion to adjourn.
So move.
I'll give that to Mr. Gleason and Mr. Scott. Ms. Trevino, let's see who wants to go home. I was waiting for her to call my name.
Ladies.
Hit it again, Ms. Mendoza. Nope, hit the button, please. I know, that's why I was waiting. All right, and we are leaving at 11:43.